All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of March 25th. Welcome. We will start with the roll.
Kamay?
Here.
Campos?
Present.
Salas?
Here.
Cohen? Ortiz?
Present.
Mulcahy?
Here.
Dwan? Candelas?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with the loudest of praises.
Thank you. We're on to our invocation. This afternoon's invocation will be provided by Opera San Jose. Welcome. And Councilmember Salas will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it quick. Shauna Lucy joined Opera San Jose just a couple of years ago in 2022. She is the Opera San Jose CEO and Executive Director. But before that, she's been all over the U.S. bringing in great talent. And she's going to share a little bit of the San Jose's talent from Opera San Jose with us today. Take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember. We are proud to be an arts partner with the city for more than 41 years, bringing more than $7 million of economic impact downtown every season. We're also very proud at Opera San Jose to bring our arts partners onto the great operatic stage. And today, you'll hear an excerpt from a local composer, and in fact, the Executive Director and founder of Opera Cultura, the incredible masterpiece Zorro. And we are joined today in person by the composer himself, Hector Armiento, and his wonderful mother. Please join me in welcoming Maria Brea, Javier Prado, and our Head of Music Staff, Veronica Agronoff DeFoe.
Abrásame, de mi vida, te prometo que siempre estaré por aquí. No puedes olvidar, no puedes olvidar lo que ves en tus ojos. Un fuego de amor, una gran emoción, que mira el cielo, no va a dar. Abrásame, mi hermosa, y me amas.
Wow. That was incredible. What a way to start the meeting. If you haven't been to Opera San Jose, now you know. Check them out. We are transitioning to ceremonial items as we do that. I understand we have a group of students here. Councilwoman Candelaus would like to welcome, coming all the way from Evergreen, Councilmember?
Yeah, we have some students from my district at Evergreen College, the Aspire Plus Program, first generation college program. So shout out. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. Thanks, Councilmember. Welcome, everybody. Okay, we are going to move to our first ceremonial item. Vice Mayor Foley, if you'd join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
I'd like to invite Councilmember Kamay and Councilmember Candelaus to join me as well. Well, this is a tremendous group here as we proclaim Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. So I'm going to give them an opportunity to come down and join us at the podium so we can celebrate them. Good afternoon. I'm Vice Mayor Pam Foley, and I am joined by two of my colleagues and all of these members of the disability community. Today, we come together to proclaim March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of San Jose. This month serves as a vital opportunity for us to reflect on the importance of inclusion, accessibility, and empowerment for individuals with developmental disabilities in our community. I'd like to begin by recognizing two of my council colleagues who have joined me in presenting this proclamation. Councilmember Kamay has been a leader in organizing Disability Awareness Day along with my office for the past several years. And Councilmember Candelaus recognized World Down Syndrome Day last week. Both have demonstrated our ongoing commitment to uplifting and celebrating all members of our community. Since Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month was first recognized in March 1987, it has served as a time to raise awareness, foster understanding, and advocate for the inclusion of individuals with developmental disabilities. This is not just a month about... This month is not just about recognizing challenges, but it's about celebrating the talents, perspectives, and contributions that these individuals bring to our community. Whether in the workforce, the arts, education, advocacy, or volunteerism, individuals with developmental disabilities strengthen our city. We must, however, acknowledge that far too many individuals with disabilities still face barriers to full participation in our society. From access to education and employment opportunities to community resources, these challenges can hinder the ability of individuals with disabilities to thrive. As a city, it is our responsibility to continue helping to break down these barriers, advocate for resources, and ensure that every resident has the opportunity to live with dignity and independence. San Jose and the Greater Bay Area are fortunate to have incredible organizations, advocates, and families who work tirelessly to support individuals with disabilities. Their efforts help create pathways for greater inclusion, and we are grateful for the work they do every day to make our city more inclusive. To accept today's proclamation, I want to take a moment to acknowledge one of the outstanding individuals joining us. Evan Barnwell, a 12-year-old resident of District Nine, is a shining example of advocacy and empowerment. Evan, who has cerebral palsy and autism spectrum disorder, is an active public speaker and passionate advocate for both himself and other individuals with disability. And he's 12 years old, and he has a podcast. I'm sure he'll tell you about it. At last year's Disability Awareness Day, Evan took on a leadership role as our emcee, introducing our guest speakers with confidence and enthusiasm. It is... His voice is a powerful reminder of the importance of self-advocacy and the impact of inclusion. I'd like to invite Evan to say a few words before Mayor Mahan presents the proclamation. Evan?
Hello, everyone. My name is Evan. I am 12 years old, and I live in San Jose. I am in the sixth grade, and I love going to school. I also love going to other cities to talk about my life, and I love being a president and an emcee, too. I am also a YouTuber. I love going around San Jose to make videos about how stores closing and how places change in our city. I have almost 4K subs in my channel, Evan the Target Fan. So my picture over here was the party city in San Jose before it closed. Now that one's closed. Sometimes my life is a little different than the life of other children my age because I need support or accommodations. When I was in my mom's tummy, I had a big headache. They told me that that headache is called a stroke. Because of that, I have a scar here. Right here. Because of that... Wait, never mind. That scar gave me something called cerebral palsy. I also have autism. Autism and cerebral palsy are developmental disabilities, DDS. DDS are conditions that start before age 22 and last a lifetime. They affect the way a person learns, moves, or takes care of daily tasks like walking, living on their own, or doing things without support. Autis... Besides autism, and cerebral palsy are Down Syndrome and fatal alcohol spectrum disorders. So thank you to Vice Mayor Pam Foley, Mayor Matt Mahan, and to all the council for this proclamation and for supporting our community. But there's one more thing I want to tell you. There's a lot of children like me in our city, children with DDS. They want to be able to play in the parks, to attend after-school programs, and to be around other people. There's some friends. Those are my friends, I guess. More friends? There's also a lot of autods with disabilities. They want to be able to have jobs that pay well, to study, to live in the community, to be independent, and to contribute even more. And even though March is DDS Awareness Month, don't forget that we are here all year. Please meet us, know us, involve us. Thank you.
Mayor, will you present the proclamation to Evan?
Yes, Evan, well done. That was perfect. Great job. Proclamation is on behalf of the entire city council. You and all of the...
He had such good words.
No, no problem. We'll squeeze in here. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being here. Yeah, of course. There you go. All right. Thank you all for coming.
Hi, I'm Albert.
Nice to meet you, Albert. Thanks for being here. Hey, how are you? Matt, nice to meet you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ross Meyer.
Ross Meyer, Matt, nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
No problem.
All right. Thank you.
He's a rock star.
All right.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Take care. Nice to meet you. All right, have a good day. All right. Thank you all for coming and joining us. We're on to our next ceremonial item. Councilmember Ortiz, if you would join me here at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim March 31st as Cesar Chavez Day. Oh, there we go. Okay. I didn't want to break it. All right, all yours.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's my great honor to proclaim Monday, March 31st, as Cesar Chavez Day, where we recognize the birth and legacy of civil rights and labor movement activist Cesar Chavez. And what a better day than to have so many labor leaders in the audience as well. So that seems like that worked out. As a representative of East San Jose, the legacy of Cesar Chavez, as well as fellow farmworker leaders, the Lors Huerta, Larry Itliong, and Philip Vera Cruz, means a great deal to me, as East San Jose was the birthplace of a movement that changed our country forever. Cesar first began his storied career as an organizer with a community service organization, which was located just off of Jackson in my district. He was mentored by Father Donald McDonnell at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church in the Mayfair neighborhood. Years later, he began his first of many famous boycotts at a former Safeway supermarket around the corner where the Mexican Heritage Plaza now stands. Cesar's organizing campaigns of farmworkers throughout the state under the banner of the National Farm Workers Association, and later the United Farm Workers, became a major inspiration to Latinos across the country, infusing the nonviolent direct action of civil rights leaders with the Catholic social teaching with which he was raised, and of course militant unionism. Cesar led many successful campaigns that changed California, including the Monumental California Agricultural Relations Act. These victories permanently shaped how the country viewed and treated farmworkers, Latinos, and Filipino-Americans, and immigrants of all stripes, building a lasting foundation for the movements that followed. It's my honor today to present this proclamation to the Chavez family members, Gemma Chavez-Garcia and Diego Chavez-Garcia. And I'd now like to pass the mic to Gemma to please say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gemma Chavez-Garcia, and I stand here with my husband, Diego Chavez-Garcia. I am here on behalf of the Chavez Family Vision and the Chavez Family. Thank you, Peter Ortiz, for this acknowledgement as especially special to us and our family because this is where we had the opportunity to have our home here in... Grandpa Librado Chavez, and our home has since been sold to Amigos of Guadalupe to be a community center for that to continue on the legacy in District Five. This is also the community where I grew up in, my kids grew up in, and the home that Librado Chavez owned, who was brother to Cesar Chavez, just like Peter said, where he started organizing... Cesar started organizing with the CSO. Chavez Family Vision started with honoring the legacy of Cesar Chavez by his brothers and sisters, Richard, Vicky, Librado, and Rita. And it was to celebrate his legacy and continue on their values that their parents, Juana and Librado Chavez, taught them. Through their principles and the philosophy of nonviolence, volunteerism, and public action to effect positive changes that will enhance the quality in the community. Our vision, my vision, and our family's vision is to continue on with that legacy of nonviolence, volunteerism, and public action to create a safe, engaged, just, and empowered society by leveraging servant leadership and resourcefulness. We strive to enhance the quality of the life and inspire individuals to embrace the Chavez Family values, leading to positive change. Cesar Chavez started his organizing here in San Jose, here in District Five. And we will continue to promote and celebrate his legacy for years to come. Thank you so much for having us here today.
I ask the mayor to please present the proclamation. And then, of course, if any of my colleagues would like to join us, you're more than welcome to please stand with us.
Thank you, State Attorney. We'll see you Thursday.
Thank you, Shauna.
All right. Last but not least, Councilwoman Candelaus is already here, and we are about to recognize The Villages Golf and Country Club. And any guests should feel free to come on down.
All right. Good afternoon. Today is a wonderful day for emergency preparedness. I'm happy to recognize The Villages community for being the first Firewise USA community in San Jose, and now the largest community in Santa Clara County to receive this certificate and special distinction. So a lot of you may be thinking, what is a Firewise community? A Firewise community is a program that encourages neighborhoods to take collective action to reduce wildfire risk and prepare for potential wildfire event by implementing techniques such as minimizing the risk of home ignition with careful landscaping, selecting ignition-resistant building materials, and positioning structures away from slopes. I'm always excited to collaborate and play a proactive role with The Villages community in regards to wildfire. In fact, we first partnered back in 2023 to host a fire safety workshop in partnership with State Senator Dave Cortez, our very own San Jose Fire Department, our Office of Emergency Management, and CAL FIRE, of course. our very own San Jose Fire Department, our Office of Emergency Management, and CAL FIRE, of course. You know, due to its popular demand and much fanfare, we hosted another successful workshop the year after in 2024 with a fun yet informative fire extinguisher demo done by our very own Fire Station 11 right outside the Villages. But it was in 2022 that the Fire Safety Committee was formed, and the idea of becoming a Firewise community was sparked, pardon the pun. But partnerships with CAL FIRE and the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council were instrumental in conducting the critical preliminary risk assessment and laying the groundwork for the Firewise process. While the program is rigorous, earning and holding the Firewise USA certificate is a source of immense pride. Not only does it bring peace of mind, but it also provides an opportunity to reduce insurance costs for both the Villages community and individual homeowners. This recognition is results of years of hard work, dedication, and collaboration with so many of the board members, committee organizations, and management as well. What once started as a dream of a community committed to being prepared for a natural disaster has now become a reality. And thank you to everyone who contributed to bringing us to this point and to the entire Villages community for being part of this wonderful journey. Although the Firewise initiative is new, the commitment to keeping the Villages safe has been rooted in over 50 years of dedication from the neighbors. Let's continue to work together to move forward, ensuring that our community remains prepared and protected for generations to come, given what we've seen in the last year, and especially the devastating fires that happened in L.A. This is especially important. I hope highlighting this achievement serves as a reminder for everyone in District Eight and beyond to be proactive in wildfire prevention and preparedness. And that being said, I'd like to introduce Mary Mary Lee Tatum, the Director of Special Projects and Sustainability for the Villages, to accept the honor and say a few words. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor Mahan and Councilmember Candelaus. We sincerely appreciate the support of Councilmember Candelaus and the City of San Jose Fire Department. On behalf of the Villages Golf and Country Club, we are honored to be recognized as San Jose's first Firewise community and the largest in Santa Clara County. With 2,536 homes, the Villages is uniquely positioned at the base of the Evergreen foothills, within the wildland-urban interface. Our community remains deeply committed to preparedness, resilience, and proactive wildfire safety. We encourage other communities in similar environments to join us in becoming Firewise, strengthening wildfire safety throughout San Jose. We value our collaboration with the city and appreciate your continued support in this effort. Thank you again for this recognition.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Will you present the proclamation or commendation?
Just to commend you all on your efforts. Well done. This commendation sounded...
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
...of your accomplishment. Thank you both. All right. We are on to orders of the day. And we do have a request, but before I get to it, do we have, is Nancy Klein here? There she is. She's hiding up in the back. Hey, Nancy. I just wanted to quickly recognize, as I mentioned during the study session for KIP, that one of our long-serving public servants here at the city, nearly 30 years, Nancy Klein, Director of Economic Development, is retiring. And I wanted to just say, on behalf of the council, that we greatly appreciate your years of service, that have really helped shape literally the physical landscape of the city we all live in, whether it's PayPal Park, Coleman High Line, the Samsung North American headquarters, the Conservation of Coyote Valley, Japan Town's mixed-use development, and just so many, well, and then the future Google Project Development Agreement. Nancy has worked to bring stakeholders from across the community together to find win-wins and move us forward, but bring much-needed investment in jobs, housing, and community spaces into our city. So Nancy, incredible career here at the city. We're grateful to you. You will be missed. Please don't go too far away. We're going to want to be able to pick up the phone and phone a friend from time to time, because you're just a wealth of knowledge and experience. So thank you for your service to our city. We appreciate it. In terms of the request, a few of us on the council have requested that we drop Item 7.1 for now, and the administration is supportive of dropping this item to allow for further briefings and research. May I have a motion to drop Item 7.1 from today's agenda? Thank you. That's, okay, great. All right. Do we have any public comment on orders of the day? Tony?
We have no cards.
Okay. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. We are on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
All right. Thank you, Nora. Appreciate it. On to consent. I understand that Councilwoman Candelaus would like to pull Item 2.11 for comment, and Councilmember Cohen would like to pull 2.12 for comment as well. Is there any other, are there any other requests to pull items? Okay, we will start with Councilwoman Candelaus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, first of all, thanks staff for their work on this master plan and for bringing it forward today. I know it's been a long time coming for this historically underserved neighborhood. And, you know, when I first took office, you know, it was a real mission of mine to restart and re-energize that neighborhood association in Meadow Fair. And this park and this project was one of the pivotal points that helped do that. So, you know, I do know that the board is watching, and I do want to give them a huge shout out for the time they've spent, you know, into their own neighborhood and, you know, creating a stronger neighborhood through their involvement. Stella, Rogan, Raj, Gracie, and Fay, shout out to you. They've been instrumental in advocating, not just for this park, but for cleanups, monthly beautifications, especially through the Adopt the Park Program. And I know the mayor and I were actually out there last, what was it, October was, we had like a costume cleanup. Remember that? And so that, it's important to bring attention to this, and this master plan is going to help us improve the neighborhood. And I do, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my predecessor, now County Supervisor Sylvia Renes, for her work in pushing this master plan forward years ago. And I was happy to take the reins and see it forward. So I fully support this addition, and it's great to know that our Parks and Recreation Commission also unanimously approved this master plan back in June. So those are all the comments I have for now. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for those comments, Councilmember. Let's turn now to Councilmember Cohen on Item 2.12.
Yeah, thank you. I have some questions for staff. Eric, are you going to handle it? So I just wanted to ask a few questions. Obviously, we've been talking about this item for a long time in the city. It's been years in the making with an ordinance to make sure that our residents that live in soft-story buildings are safe. It's very important to us. Obviously, we know the next earthquake's coming. Even though it's been a while, we don't want to get complacent. I fully understand that there are some concerns about whether we're ready in terms of our ability to help fund some of these changes. Can you, I just want to ask a few questions about this. This proposal, this item would postpone by one year, our ordinance that starts, puts in motion all the things we've been talking about. Is that correct?
So Eric Solivan, Housing Director. Yes, that's correct, Councilmember.
And so there's multiple, there were multiple sources of funding for city assistance to property owners. One is federal funding. Have we, have we had any official word that federal funding is, that we thought was coming is not forthcoming? Are we just concerned about the possibility? What is the current status?
We have had limited contact with FEMA, so we are unclear as to what funding will be available as FEMA goes through its purported changes.
Do we expect, so, I mean, we're postponing this by a year. Are we expecting that within a year we'll have more clarity and be able to move forward? Are we, do we anticipate if we, if this funding doesn't come that we're going to be continuing to postpone this for the next few years?
So we're hopeful that in the next year that we will have clarity on where FEMA stands. We're also pursuing alternative sources of funding within the state of California that could potentially provide an alternative gap funding to this, based on the overall structure that we had proposed back in October of 2024. So we're pursuing both routes, clarity on the FEMA side, as well as an alternative sources of funding to leverage city dollars.
And I saw a message of Measure E funding. Obviously, we, we talk about Measure E for lots of different purposes. I'm not sure that Measure E, that even last year we had funding in Measure E particularly earmarked for this. Are we expecting some Measure E set aside to be able to move this forward in the future?
Part of the conversation in the October session was to look at ways in which we can leverage in a preservation component of Measure E with federal dollars, with state dollars. And now that we're deferring this for a year in implementation, as we pursue federal dollars, as we pursue alternative state dollars, we can revisit what the overall structure looks like, depending on, as council and mayor kind of move forward with Measure E funding.
And is there any plan then in this ensuing year to work with property owners and continue to encourage them to move ahead on this, rather than postpone and wait? I mean, our, since our primary interest is obviously getting some of these most serious, buildings in serious need done?
So we're going to continue the education campaign with our property owners, as well as pursuing, there is a group of local funders, including foundations, as well as banks through CRA, who are interested in being a part of this program, as we had originally discussed it back in October. So we'll continue to pursue that, and where that funding becomes available, we could look at running some small forms of small pilot programs to at least get the process going. So in the event that there is clarity on federal or state funds, and we're able to scale up the program, we have the mechanism in place to do that.
It would be great to, obviously, for the ones that can be done, to get them moving and not wait a year to get started on them. So that's my interest. Is there any external driving force behind this as well? Are we, is there a mandate from any other, from state and federal government to do these? Or is this strictly a local initiative?
For the soft story? Yeah.
Yeah, for the soft story retrofit. I mean, are we being mandated to do this externally?
Originally, it was a FEMA mandate, as discussed during the October meeting. However, there hasn't, there's been a gap in communication with FEMA at this point.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. I think it's also important for us all to be aware what this means. I mean, you know, we, many of us, I've been very nervous about the fact that this is, well, this, we clearly need to do this carefully and make sure that people have the resources. When the earthquake hits, you know, there's, the longer we wait, the more likely we are to have more risk of property loss and injury. So I just want to be sure it's clear. All right. Thank you. I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Okay. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar, Tony?
We do not.
All right. Let's come back to the council. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ortiz, was your hand up? I apologize.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Put it on a little bit later than the others. But I do have some questions in regards to the new revised timeline. Sorry, Eric, if you just went up there. Sorry about that, man. So Measure E has been identified as a funding source for the retrofit. With the delay in the ordinance's effective date and the uncertainty surrounding FEMA funding, obviously, there may be implications with how Measure E funds are allocated. Is this going to result in, you know, any sort of changes with how this year's allocation will be utilized?
So Eric Solivan, Housing Director, I cannot answer this question, as that is part of the decision of Mayor and council about where to direct Measure E. So that's why we're continuing to pursue what is the best ways to leverage as much funding as we can from known and unknown federal sources, known and unknown, and being pursued of state sources, to best leverage our dollars to try to begin an implementation process, so we can pilot some form of execution for this program. So when funding sources become available, we can scale up much quicker.
Great. Appreciate that answer. Yeah, I understand that at the end of the day, it's our decision, but would, essentially, the dollars free up, would we be able to use them theoretically on something else, given that we're pushing it back a day, a year?
We would have to make an amendment to last year's Measure E resolution to add in preservation, because right now, last year's resolution on Measure E is only focused on new construction and shelters. So there would have to be some additional language that would have to be structured in order to make some funding available.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that, that walkthrough. I know that landlords and tenants who were preparing for April 1st, the deadline obviously is going to be impacted. What is outreach going to look like for both of those parties moving forward?
So we're going to send out notification in working with our colleagues in PBCE that this is being delayed for one-year period, that the ongoing reviews are still happening, and that the city is continuing to pursue options to figure out ways to try to pilot a program.
Okay. No, appreciate that. Thank you. That exhausted my questions.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Apologies for missing your hand there. Tony, I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you all. We're on to the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have no report today.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. On to Item 3.3. This is a status report on open audit recommendations. And we'll be joined in a moment here by our city auditor.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Joe Roy, city auditor. I'm here with Brittany Harvey from our office to present our report on the status of open audit recommendations as of December 31st, 2024. The city auditor's primary responsibility under the city charter is conducting performance audits that include recommendations to correct deficiencies, strengthen accountability, improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and equity of city programs. Over the past 10 years, our office has issued 100 audit reports with nearly 680 recommendations, covering many aspects of the city's operations. We monitor progress toward implementing recommendations from past audits and provide regular reports on the status of those recommendations. And this report provides the recent, the most recent status update of those recommendations. The report shows progress, the progress on 186 audit recommendations, 56 of which were audits from audits issued or accepted by the city council between July and December of 2024. Those projects included our audits of encumbrances, the tenant protection ordinance, and animal care and services. One audit, the audit of access and use of neighborhood blight reduction programs, was not included. And though we issued the report in December, it was not heard council until January of this year. It will be picked up in future status updates. Since the last update, 41 audit recommendations were implemented or closed, and currently another 102 are partly implemented by departments. As I noted earlier, over the past 10 years, we've issued nearly 680 recommendations to improve or enhance services, and of those, 80% have been implemented or closed. I want to highlight a few implemented recommendations, both to highlight some of the important work that's being done across the city, as well as to show the breadth of the types of recommendations that we have. The Housing Department, in September of 2024, presented the Final Rent Stabilization Program Strategic Plan that originated from an audit of the apartment rent ordinance back in 2016. Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services developed reporting and monitoring requirements for the Neighborhood Center Partner Program, which is formerly the Community Center Reuse Program. They also presented actual hours served by agencies to the Neighborhood Services and Education Council Committee in December of last year. That was from an audit related to Community Center reuse back in 2018. And the Police Department has begun collecting 911 data related to individuals with disabilities or homeless residents. It also continues to work with the county on alternative responses for certain calls. This was in response to the city council direction and aligns with an audit recommendation that, from our audit of police staffing expenditures and workload in 2021. Code enforcement, this past year, implemented a periodic case review policy to ensure consistent case reviews. They've also developed reporting tools to review and manage inspector workloads, and they are nearly up to date on all inspector performance evaluations. That was from our audit of code enforcement management controls in 2021. In the area of children and youth services, the administration created a centralized portfolio to track programs and services that's cross-referenced with the Bill of Rights for Children and Youth. Metrics from the Children and Youth Services Master Plan are also now presented annually to the city council. That closes recommendations from our audit of the Bill of Rights for Children and Youth in 2022. In 2018, the city council directed the city manager to identify and prioritize work on 12 outstanding audit recommendations, while continuing to make progress on all other open recommendations. I'll quickly run through the current 12 priority recommendations. In the area of potential budgetary savings, we have two partly implemented recommendations from the Police Department, from our Police Staffing Expenditures and Workload Audit in 2021. This is improving overtime controls and adding community service and adding community service officers to address lower priority police calls. One recommendation was implemented in this area, and that's requiring departments to liquidate old and unnecessary encumbrances from our encumbrance audit in 2024. The Finance Department worked with departments to review and liquidate old encumbrances, and Finance estimates about $32 million in liquidations, which is still pending verification, with about $9 million in the general fund. The three recommendations in the area of potential operational efficiency include one partly implemented recommendation around the construction demolition diversion deposit, and two implemented recommendations. One was for the real estate services to implement a database platform to better manage the city's real estate assets. Real estate went live with their new software just recently, which will give them a foundation to compile a comprehensive list of the city's real estate assets. Next was adopting city policies procedures by the Office of Retirement Services from our audit of retirement services in 2023. The retirement boards have adopted various city policies to address information systems, technology, ethical conduct, fair employment, and others. They've also developed a procurement policy which included feedback from the Finance Department. In the area of citywide and risk, citywide security and risk mitigation, we have three partly recommended, partly implemented recommendations. One is to develop citywide administrative guidelines or procedures for managing federal grants, updating the emergency operations plan to ensure segregation of duties and formalized procurement tools, and improving the accuracy and usefulness of reporting tools for encumbrances. Three priorities in the areas of improved service delivery include one implemented recommendation around procuring a software solution and providing sufficient supervisory staff. To support wage compliance reviews, that was from our audit of the Office of Quality Assurance back in 2017. The final piece of this recommendation was the software piece, and that went live last fall, which will help administer prevailing and living wage compliance, or the, the prevailing living wage, wage compliance programs in the city. The other two, increasing language translation of vital documents, including language translation options for sjpermis.org, and updating the San Jose Animal Care and Services Manual to align with Association Shelter Veteran, Veterinarian Guidelines are still in process. More information about all open audit recommendations is available in the appendices of the report as well as online in our interactive dashboards, which you can see on the slide. They're found on our website. With that, I'd like to thank all the city departments for their efforts to implement audit recommendations and for their assistance in compiling this report. I'd also like to thank my staff for working with the various departments to document and verify the information in the report. Happy to answer any questions and then as they accept the report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate the update. Let's turn to our city clerk, Tony. Do you have any comment cards?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. No public comment on this item. Coming back to the council, turn to colleagues. Colleagues, do we have any questions on open audit recommendations? Councilwoman Duane.
Thank you, Mayor. Joey, I just want to say thank you to your office to, to, to keep this city honest, to point out the deficiency, the effectiveness, and the performance measure. If we don't know our mistakes, then we can't fix it. And I, and I appreciate that you're impartial and that sometimes it takes guts to say what it is. And it's difficult, but you say what it is, we're deficiency. And, and I appreciate that very much and continue with the good work. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, council member. Others? Okay. Maybe I'll ask a couple of quick questions. Chief Joseph, I could just ask a question on CSO hiring. I noticed recommendation, this is from audit number 21-01, one of the recommendations was to increase CSO hiring. I know in last year's budget, my understanding is we allocated enough funding for six new CSOs and were able to hire two. It's curious if you could just comment, are we seeing the same challenges around hiring CSOs? My, I think our assumption has maybe been that it's, it's maybe easier to attract applicants to CSO academies, but I don't know if that's true. I thought I'd give you an opportunity to comment on that item.
Yeah, Mayor, Paul Joseph, Chief of Police. They're not, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, so it's hard to say. It's a, it's a much smaller force for one thing. So we have 67, I believe, budgeted authorized positions, and I believe they're all full. The requirements to become a CSO are far less rigorous. The job itself is, is, you know, there's, there's significant differences. So we have not had the same challenges, but perhaps if, you know, we had a thousand of them, maybe we would.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. And then one other question. I know that the, my understanding at least was that the time card system that we were planning to pilot to better track overtime ran into some technical issues. Is that, is that back on track? Do you have an estimated timeline for being able to get that one done?
We're, we're still working through that. There's been some significant technological challenges with it related to the efficiency and how easy it was to make the kind of entries we need to make to, to document our work. So we're still working through that.
Okay, that sounds good. And then one final question in the, in the community safety focus area. This might actually be for the city manager's office, but the work that needs to be done around recommend updates to the secondary employment unit, I know those are still open. Do we have an update on when those would come back to council? Those were other open audit recs, and I think that's on the administration's side.
I think that, I thought it was on the Police Department's side, the secondary employment unit audit?
It, as it relates to the cost recovery.
Yeah, there are two components. There's, there's cost recovery and then recover, 100% recovery of the SEU liability policy. There were two open items. I just was curious about the status on those.
Jim's going to help us out.
Hi.
I'm going to get bailed out here.
No, no. Hi, Jim, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. We've been working with the Police Department on the policy change for this, for the SEU for some of the cost recovery pieces. That's sort of stuck in my office, actually, for a piece of that, but we do plan to bring that forward before the end of the fiscal year.
Great. So that'll be part of, that'll come back through our, through our budget process? Will that come back during the study session or is it a separate item?
I think it'll just come back through a normal council meeting.
Got it. Okay. Okay, great. I was just tracking that one. Thank you. Appreciate it, Chief.
I am familiar with that one. The, the cost recovery model just significantly increases the cost, obviously, for anyone hiring the officer. So we're trying to find the, the right balance.
The right balance, exactly. Yeah, we've just been tracking that one. We're curious where it was. Thank you. Appreciate the updates. Let me turn to attracting investments, one of our other focus areas. Our March budget message gave direction to streamline our implementation of CEQA locally. We already have a number of open recommendations related to CEQA. Joe, do you know if, if you or maybe a member of the administration, maybe PBCE, has reconciled those two? Does the new direction given by the council, it sounds like Lee's got an answer to this, does it obviate the need for any of the eight recs or are they completely aligned? If we, if we do what we just directed in the March message, can we check off some of these recommendations?
So some of them are aligned, yes. I will say, it is the administration's intent to come forward with a manager's budgeted item as part of the budget process and lay out all the policy work that, that are in these audits as well as what was in the March budget message, as well as what we're legally required to do by a federal and state government, and lay that out in prioritization for the council.
Okay. That'll be helpful. Okay. Thank you. And I think those were my main questions. Let me turn to Vice Mayor Foley.
Hi, Joe. Thanks for your presentation. I, I'm always grateful to have the briefing from you and your team, Brittany, and, and listen to what our open audit areas are and of course, the new audits that you, you bring forward to us. And, and I always like to ask you this question, so I'm going to ask you again, what, or ask you publicly, what keeps you up at night in relation to these open audit items?
So that's a great question. So a couple of things kind of stand out this cycle. One is overtime costs in the Police Department keep going up. My understanding was over $60 million in '23, '24. Now, there's different drivers of that. When we did our audit in 2021 on police staffing expenditures workload, we had recommendations to tighten up controls around discretionary, discretionary overtime, things like report writing and training and things of that nature. We did look at the, what the drivers were just to see what was going on with the 60 million. And a lot of that was driving at this time were mandatory minimum staffing requirements. That would be driven likely probably from vacancies or something of that nature, or individual jobs. And so these would be jobs that are just staffed on overtime. And so the, these are things, just looking at that balance of what the expectations of work and the balance and the available officers. And I think Jennifer's going to pop in, but if I could follow up, just one other thing that catches my eye. And one of the other priority recommendations is around how we manage federal dollars. I expect with the, we had, just had a conversation with the, the, putting back the, the work around the
Soft story.
Soft stories, exactly, about some federal funding, not hearing from FEMA. Concerns about potential future, the administration taking a hard look at dollars flowing down to local governments. Want to make sure all our Ts are crossed, Is are dotted in terms of some of those federal, the uses of federal dollars.
Thank you.
And, and thank you, Joe, and thank you, Vice Mayor. So I always want to put on the record that the administration shares the same concerns. And I'd like to ask Paul Joseph to come down to talk about some of the controls he has put in as chief related to overtime because we've been working closely with his department to help control those overtime expenditures, which, you know, are challenging on the minimum staffing side, but he's also put in a lot of other controls. And I just want to reassure the council on that.
Thank you. We, we have put a number of controls in place. All of our, all discretionary overtime has to be approved by a supervisor. We make our captains report out regularly on overtime usage within their divisions. We have eliminated units that were excessive spenders of overtime that we didn't feel the productivity matched the cost. We'll be enforcing a policy that we'll have people that are at a balance of 480 hours of comp time. If they didn't take a requisite amount of time off to get to their, to a lower balance, we will be sending them home so that they can burn that time to, so they won't be getting paid out in cash on, on subsequent overtime. But, you know, again, we're, we're looking at a police department that has 120 sworn vacancies. In order to just do the general functions of policing this city, it's really difficult to do without overtime. In order to strike a balance between adequately staffing, all of the specialized units within the department, the detective bureaus and such, so that they function, we have to maintain a balance of regularly scheduled overtime slots within patrol to meet our minimum staffing. So it is absolutely a challenge, one that we're well aware of, one that we're working our hardest to control, and obviously working extremely hard to recruit and get to full staffing, which will relieve a lot of this pressure.
Thank you, Chief. And then with respect to the FEMA funding and other funding, we are watching that very carefully. Our Budget Director, Jim Shannon, and I have been talking about that as we're putting together this budget to try to protect, protect us from any non-payments that are coming through the future. So you'll see more of that during this budget process.
Thank you for that. And, and of course, we, Chief, we, we want you to be able to hire more officers, and we know that that's where the pressure for overtime comes from. So thank you for your commitment. And Joe, thank you for the presentation and your response to my question. With that, I will move acceptance of the item.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands up. Tony, we already went to public comment, did we not? Okay, great. We're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you to our city auditor. We're on to item 3.4. This is the annual summary of labor negotiations. And I don't believe there's a presentation. We'll go to public comment first.
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Coming back to the council again on item 3.4. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. The second from Councilwoman Cohen. All those, I'm sorry, Tony, let's please vote. I was about to call the roll.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to item 3.6. This is Settlement of Paredes versus City of San Jose. Tony, do we have a public comment?
None for this item.
Great. Coming back to the council. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Great. Second from Comay. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. We're on to item 4.1. This is the Fire Department Emergency Medical Services First Responder Fee Program, and we do have a brief staff presentation. I see our chief coming down. We'll start in just a moment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Fire Chief Robert Sapien. I am with Deputy Chief Steve Bowey, who oversees the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services and Training, and Deputy Director Athena Treaty, who oversees our Bureau of Administrative Services. We will present on item 4.1, Fire Department Emergency Medical Services First Responder Fee Program. Following a brief presentation on this item, we will be available to respond to questions along with staff, including Deputy Chief Aaron Freyler from our field operations, Matthew Chaco, our administrative officer, Mary Ann Fritz, our revenue manager, Eric Warner, Department of Finance Revenue Management Program Manager. The San Jose Fire Department deploys resources from 34 fire stations across the city to respond to all hazards, including fires, floods, collapses, hazardous materials releases, rescues, and others, and provides emergency medical services. The department's role in providing medical care has evolved with the industry from first aid level care to basic life support level with all responders trained to the emergency medical technician level, and in July of 1995, elevated service to advanced life support level, expanding this capability in 1996 to all fire stations with a firefighter paramedic assigned to each unit. Today, each of the department's 47 response units, including engine companies, truck companies, and rescue medics, are staffed with paramedics and equipped to provide advanced life support service 24 hours per day, seven days a week. Fire-based emergency medical services have evolved over many decades. In 1966, the first federal standards for emergency medical services were legislated by Congress, and by 1967, several large urban areas were developing advanced field emergency medical care programs using firefighters, including Miami, Seattle, Los Angeles, and Pittsburgh. Today, fire-based EMS or emergency medical services are prevalent across the service, leveraging fire agency deployment to rapidly deliver highly capable first responders and equipment directly to the location where medical assistance is needed. Fire-based emergency medical services are vital to the community because firefighters solely are trained and equipped to operate in any environment, allowing them to access patients, affect rescues, and initiate lifesaving care under all conditions. First responder paramedics are trained and equipped to deliver a scope of practice that includes treatments such as endotracheal intubation, intravenous therapy, administration of pain and therapeutic medications, electrocardiogram analysis, synchronized cardioversion pacing, manual defibrillation, and differential diagnosis. Thus, the department is able to initiate advanced life support care independent of the 911 ambulance provider's arrival. In fiscal year 2324, the department responded to 110,255 calls for service, including 68,410 that were classified as medical only. Medical-only classified events increased 39% over the prior 10-year period. It is important to note that emergency medical care is often a component of other response types. For example, vehicle accidents are often classified within the rescue hazmat, USAR, and other non-fire hazards call type, yet frequently involve one or more patients per incident. In fiscal year 202324, motor vehicle collision, collisions resulted in 4,106 patients. Responding to well over 68,000 requests for emergency medical care, including some of the highest acuity patients seeking assistance via the 911 system, the department has evolved into a substantial medical care provider in the city, and in recent years has continued to strive to meet service demand, serving effectively as a safety net for the community where other where other providers have reduced services. As such, the department seeks to align with medical care providers to access medical care payers as a means to recover costs for services. To ensure sustainability of emergency medical services relied upon by our community, the department recommends implementation of a first responder fee program similar to 23 programs in place across the state, including nine charter cities such as San Francisco, Sacramento, Long Beach, Anaheim, and others. Many cities across California have implemented cost recovery models to help sustain their emergency medical services amidst increasing service demand and evolving scope of practice. Legislation has evolved in California to enable jurisdictions such as the City of San Jose to implement fees for emergency medical care. This is not an entirely recent evolution, as the City of Alameda implemented its first responder fee program in 1991. However, Proposition 26 passed in 2010 and specifically cited emergency medical care and ambulance transport fees as allowable to be imposed for a specific government service provided directly to the payer that is not provided to those not charged and does not exceed reasonable cost for providing the service. In evaluating existing first responder fee programs, the department focused on charter cities programs to best align with the city. To achieve cost recovery, a preliminary initial per-incident fee rate of $785.78 was determined using baseline data including direct and indirect personal services and nonpersonal equipment, as in equipment supplies and maintenance, costs associated with providing emergency care, plus proposed staffing resources and third-party billing bender fee divided by the number of emergency medical incidents. The department analyzed similar emergency responder fees across 23 agencies within the state of California, ranging from $225 to $753 per incident, and are estimating an initial fee level of 427 per incident that is based on the average of these agencies, placing San Jose in the 70th percentile for the comparable nine charter cities. This estimate is approximately 54% of the calculated per-incident rate, with the final initial fee amount and cost recovery rate recommended as part of the 25, 2425, or 2526, excuse me, proposed operating budget and 2526 proposed fees and charges. Medical and automobile insurance collection rate assumptions were applied based on statewide industry standards, with the estimated medical payer mix cited by the Santa Clara County Emergency Medical Services Model from their 2022 financial analysis report conducted by TAP International Incorporated describing ambulance transport revenues. A payer mix is the percentage of patients in a healthcare organization who are covered by different sources of payers. The four primary payer sources typically include Medicare or Medi-Cal, commercial insurance, and private payers. Upon implementation of the first responder fee program in San Jose, experience will determine actual revenue collection rates, and subsequent adjustments will be recommended through future proposed budgets. Based on these assumptions, it is anticipated that the annual projected revenue could yield $4 million annually, with one year of the fee implementation starting at January 1, 2026, yielding a prorated amount of $2 million. Implementation of this fee will not impact the Fire Department's existing standard of care protocols. When a resident calls 911 to access medical care, first responders arrive on scene to obtain consent to provide emergency medical care. Upon consent, all appropriate medical protocols will continue to be applied regardless of the patient's insurance status. Again, ability to pay will never be a factor in patient treatment. Should the initial response include a vehicle collision where EMS care was rendered, first responders will attempt to obtain automobile insurance information to collect the vehicle collision response fee segment. If there was no vehicle involved with EMS care provided, the first responders will attempt to attain medical insurance to collect the first responder fee segment. In either scenario, the department would only pursue one fee per patient treated. Common amongst the majority of first responder programs across the state are compassionate billing practices. The compassionate billing approach recognizes that not all residents are enrolled with medical care payers and may have difficulty in paying fees. As such, the first responder fee program implementation would incorporate a compassionate billing program identifying hardship waivers, which is fees that may be reduced or waived for individuals who qualify, flexible payment plans, fee forgiveness programs, and proactive outreach. Staff will be finalizing details on the first responder fee program policy for compassionate billing. If today's recommendation is adopted, the City Council will have an opportunity to review staff's recommended emergency medical first responder services and fee collection ordinance in June of 2025. The department engaged agencies with first responder fee programs to hear about their experiences and identify best practices for implementation. Generally, the most successful program implementations were transparent and included efforts to inform the community prior to implementation. Building on others' rollout experience, the Fire Department is preparing to move forward on this program implementation through education, targeted information efforts that are detailed month by month, including the department's internal efforts to train first responders on this fee and prepare for its implementation. This concludes our presentation. We are available to respond to questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief, appreciated. Tony, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have none for this item.
Okay, great. Coming back to the council, I'll just briefly say, Chief, Deputy Fire Chief Bowie, thank you very much for the thoughtful, community-centered approach to implementing this fee. I think what we're trying to balance here is making sure that we can appropriately bill for lifesaving medical care and make our department sustainable and continue to staff the services that our community needs without putting an undue burden on our residents. And I think you all have done a nice job of striking a balance there. Since the pandemic, emergency medical calls have increased by 16%, and our Fire Department is taking an ever-increasing role in providing advanced life support beyond fire suppression. We want to make sure that we can continue to provide those services, but we have to have a sustainable department. So this fee protects our response system in a way that I think is fair and sustainable by being able to bill insurance companies for the kind of medical care one might get from a doctor, nurse, a clinic, a hospital. So this is, you know, billing insurance for appropriate medical care, but taking a compassionate billing approach, which I really appreciate, and being sensitive to the financial realities of many of our residents, and focusing on what's billable and recoverable under insurance, not going after individuals and further burdening folks in a, in a city that is, has a high cost of living and where our residents, many of our residents are struggling just to pay the bills each month. So I appreciate that you've worked hard to strike a balance. Councilman Candelas has recommended that, once the program matures, that staff should emergency medical care, and I appreciate and support that recommendation. So thank you again to our firefighters, you Chief, and the entire department leadership for your dedication to this work. Look forward to rolling out this program to ensure that our emergency medical response system remains strong for all of our residents. I'm going to turn now to Councilmember Candelas for comment, and then we'll, we'll go around the dais here.
Now, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation and staff in the box for, for this, what I think is also an equitable fee program for us to consider, and, and, yeah, I, I, the mayor alluded to the blue memorandum that I, I put together, and I'll talk about it shortly. I, I think the compassionate billing and our approach to making sure that our community members' ability to pay is not a factor, and that's critical in knowing, is, is, is really, really important, stressing, you know, we have to do everything we can to protect our most vulnerable while assuming some cost recovery for the city. I think that's, that's really important as well, and, and to that point, the communications plan is, is going to be absolutely imperative to that, to that precise and robust engagement, and, and, I mean, feel free to, and I know our council offices are a part of that, but, you know, the better we are of communicating, the better we're going to be when we go back, if we go back, to, to voters and to residents that were imposing this fee on, on a potential revenue mechanism in the next year, two years, three, four years, who knows? But I think if we do this right, it has, you know, it's an opportunity for the city, and so I, I look forward to that, and I know there's, there's some concerns that, you know, if, if, if not done correctly, there's some negative ramifications. So I, I trust the department to be very, very surgical in that approach and, and the tact, and, and so to, to the blue memo that I introduced, you know, a couple of years ago, I actually took a ride along with Med 30. And to my colleagues who are newer on the council, it's, it was a, a, a captain on shift, it's three captains total, I believe, if I got that right, that provide auxiliary support to, to all, all acting fire stations in the city. And so, for example, there was a fire in my district, burned down somebody's home literally two weeks after I had knocked on that home while I was on the campaign trail. The house burned down. I had a 20-minute conversation with her. I remember talking to this person, and sure enough, Med 30 was there. Captain Lowe, who, who took me on that ride along, was there providing reassurance, not just emotional reassurance, but also what resources were available, available to the Red Cross, making sure that they had all the necessary forms, making sure that, that they were communicating and, and literally providing that, that support system on scene while the dozens and dozens of, of men and women from our Fire Department were, were putting out that blaze. And, and so, so that's, that's the impetus behind my thinking for a, an approach that, that takes some of the, the revenues potentially from, from this fee in the future and, and doesn't, doesn't force the administration or doesn't bind the administration's ability to, to, to act. And so I look forward to seeing that, that program mature and, and seeing how we can support, not just from the dice, but on the community as well. And with that, I'll, I'll move my, my memorandum.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Let me turn to Councilmember Dwan, who knows a thing or two about the fire service.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and the Fire Department for putting this together. I greatly appreciate the fact that our Fire Department working with our local 230 and working with our council to put this program together. As a former fire captain, I'm, I'm very supportive of our Fire Department to have more funding in order to support our constituent, because every single second, every single minute, and every single lives that we save, it counts. On page, I, I know, I, I'm glad that you have that compassionate billing, and on page six, we also have, our number one is the hardship waivers, and I appreciate that because a lot of our underserved communities worries about this type of fees. And I just want to make it very clear to our constituent that the billing is for individuals who have private insurance. Am I correct on that?
Yes, the, the billing will be applied universally, so the service will exist across the board. What we've observed across the agencies in the state that have adopted a first responder fee is that early recognition in their program, and in fact, in policy, that, that recognizes that not everyone is aligned with a pay, a medical payer program, and there are mechanisms to work payments down or forgive them entirely, depending on the circumstance and the criteria established in the policy. And so some agencies are small enough where, believe it or not, it's the Fire Chief who determines what that hardship is on a case-by-case basis. Others are more policy-driven. We intend, with our volume, of course, to have a policy-driven approach that would, that would very much be able to be accessible to the community for someone to say, I just can't pay, and then we'd work through that as a matter of policy. And, and so, you know, the, the, there's no emphasis whatsoever on collections in this program.
Thank you. I just want to make sure our constituents who are underserved and, and lack of funding not afraid to dial 911 when they need the service. And, and I think you, you explained it pretty clearly that no one should go without services and not, they don't have to worry about the fees if they cannot afford it.
Thank you, Councilmember, and if, if you don't mind, I, I do want to underscore that point you just made, which is, we did make that a point to discuss with other agencies who implemented the program. None reported a detrimental effect to 911 access. We didn't hear anyone say that we implemented this program and then people became fearful or, or leery of calling. Really, the whole intent of, of why this program is recommended is to sustain those services so that they continue to be available to anyone who, who needs them. And we, we made it a point to make sure that we understood that other agencies did not experience that.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Councilmember Candelas. Put together that, you know, when, when this program is fully implemented and the funding should go back to supporting our Med 30, which not only the Med 30, they're first on scene, they can be the IC, the eyes and the ears for our oncoming engine and trucks. They also support our medics out there in the field and also resupplying the necessary medical supplies and drugs. And not only that, when, for example, if some of our medics or firefighters got needle pricks and so on, they, they're there to support and guide them through a process to go to the hospital and keeping them safe. And, and I appreciate, again, is extremely proud to, to be part of the San Jose Fire Department, and thank you, Chief, for working with our local 230. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate you focusing on accessibility and people's willingness to call for the help that they need. Let me turn to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to thank the Fire Department, of course, Fire Chief, for your ongoing commitment to protect our residents in the worst emergencies, as well as local 230, our firefighters, and for the thought that you put into this proposal to ensure the sustainability of emergency services as we move forward. So while I support efforts to protect our most critical services in a difficult budget year, and I understand that the vast majority of these fees will be paid for by insurance or subject to the compassionate billing program still being designed, I wanted to ask a few questions, just so that I know that we're not saddling our most vulnerable residents with more debt. When studying the use of these fees by other municipalities or regions, did you look into how often insurance companies refuse coverage of the fee?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, and in fact, the, for the private insurance, we assume only an 80% pay rate. That's based generally on, on expert advice, and the, the entire concept of payer mix is somewhat of a question of, of unpredictability of payability, right? So individuals who have no insurance, no, no coverage, may not be able to pay at all. That's part of that calculus of, of trying to estimate what revenue potential is. Medicare, Medicaid, for example, will, by policy, will not cover this type of fee, so we know that on the upfront.
Oh, really?
And would not be, you know, there'd be no mechanism to pursue payment. We wouldn't, we, we wouldn't require that person to, to come up with money they don't have to, to fill that gap, right?
Okay, so, just so I can confirm, so we already know that Medicare and Medicaid will not pay any of these fees, so if somebody with that, with those two solutions, they wouldn't have to pay, or what, walk me through what would happen?
What we see in, in other agencies is, is that person can advise the, the, through whatever policy was established, advise a city or the department that that's their circumstance and, and they, they can't pay, and then that's it. That's kind of how they run their policy of, of collection, is they recognize what that payer or that individual resident has reported to them and has made the statement that they have a difficulty in paying and reported to them and has made the statement that they have a difficulty in paying. And in some systems, that runs out, is a terminal point in the billing process.
Okay, so he won't, won't be able to pay. Does that mean that the city stops pursuing those funds? Does anything happen to that individual's credit?
So, most of the agencies that we talked to work with third-party billing firms that are familiar with their policies, and they don't pursue collections pathways. And that's what our intent is, is we develop our policy.
Okay, so then the city just stops pursuing then altogether? Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I know that you're still designing the compassionate billing program. How are we going to make sure that it's as accessible as possible?
So, on the front end, so in terms of, of making sure the community has an awareness, we're going to spend quite a, quite a few months in trying to get the information out there before the program is ever even implemented. And then what we will use is a, is an open platform, much like we offer on, on our webpages, for people who live in wildland areas, and so to speak. So the resources will be readily available online for, for individuals to work through their, their billing questions. Most agencies we see have very robust FAQ pages for, for the first responder fee. And so individuals can maybe find their circumstance and, and, and figure out what would happen to them. But we would intend to have all those things in place as well.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Fire Chief. And then I know that this program is mostly cost recovery. Is there any idea how much the city should expect, should be coming back from these individuals receiving services?
So the, the estimate that we have, based on what we know about the payer mix, is a very rough estimate at approximately $4 million annually. However, it should be noted that we don't have experience in a San Jose-specific payer mix billing process. So it would really take time to understand what the, what the real revenue would be. We, we're basing our information on a report that was driven by ambulance service fees and their experience. So I think we would say our, our best estimate is $4 million.
Okay. Would those dollars be allocated to already lined-out services? Or could we make a decision on what to do, like, as we've asked for Med 30?
It, it would be revenue that, that typically would be, if, if no other direction is given, it would go to the general fund, and then the budget process would drive the outcomes of those dollars. But as, as the memo that we presented by Councilmember Candellis, obviously, there's council direction that can happen as well.
Wonderful. I mean, it sounds good. I know Med 30 is very important to our, our men and women in the fire service. So I'm going to support the memo. And I want to thank the author for, for introducing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's turn now to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Ortiz, for helping me start my next question. It was about the fees, and I really appreciate the presentation and helping us understand how this policy is going to both support the revenue needs of our Fire Department and also is paying particular attention to the needs of our residents, to still feel free to call 911 and access those services. We know that our Fire Department could benefit from revenue that, that would support recruitment and retention efforts. And so I'm curious if the memo and maker of the motion on the floor would be amenable to a friendly amendment that would direct these fees to go to the Fire Department rather than the general fund. And I don't know if we need other staff to chime in on that, but just wanted to ask.
Well, no, thank you. The, the reason I, I, I made it, made it more of a, an open direction is to provide maximum flexibility to, for the administration to be able to, to work with the, with the Fire Department themselves on, on, on what, what would be the best mechanism, if you will, within, within the department or not, that, that could play a role in bolstering, you know, the, the men and women who are actually out on the front lines. So I, I didn't want to be too prescriptive for, for, for a reason. And, and not to say that in future council discussions or direction as we, as we come, come up with the budget, that we can't be more prescriptive. But at this point, I think it's, it's better to be, to be a little bit more fluid and allow for, for, for this project to, or this program to mature. And then we can direct funding and, and be a little bit more prescriptive, if that's all right.
Yeah, totally makes sense. And I know that with a new program, we definitely do want to give ourselves flexibility. So I, I appreciate you hearing me out. And I, I think the other question I had, again, is related to the FAQs. And there's a question on here, "What happens if I don't have health insurance?" And the answer on the FAQ is that may reduce or completely waive fees for uninsured patients. So I'm a little hesitant with the "may reduce" because from what, from the conversation we've had, it sounds like we're, we're really leaning towards helping neighbors and residents who don't have the financial means to pay for this know that they are not going to be financially liable. So is there a way that we can address that "may reduce" so that residents have more confidence? Or is there a reason why we're choosing "may reduce"?
The language is the way it is because we do see across the state, and certainly our early, frankly, early review of, of what would be required by law, is that there would be some algorithm to how we distill down to that level of, of payment forgiveness. And it would be the services provided, everyone is subject to billing, and then we go through that process to stair-step down where it's appropriate. But I think it, it would not be, it may not be appropriate to simply say, "We're only going to bill some and not others." I don't think that's what I see in programs across the state. But I do see a lot of emphasis on the compassionate billing components that does step down exposure to cost for residents who can't, simply can't afford them.
Okay. If that is included to give us a little more protection, then again, I just want to emphasize the conversation my colleagues and I have had around communications and making sure that residents are well-informed about the spirit of this new fee, and that it's, it's not an additional burden to our residents. Because, again, we, and I'm glad to hear that the trend hasn't been that folks are not picking up the phone and feeling comfortable to call 911. And that's what I hope we will see when this is implemented. And I know it's going to take a strong campaign, communications campaign and, and trust with the residents. So just want to, again, emphasize how important the community feedback and monitoring community response once this is implemented is going to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. I'm not seeing any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you all very much. We're onto item 5.1, the San Jose DeRidon Station to Airport Connector feasibility validation report and Phase 2A recommendation. Take just a moment to change the box.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Risto, Director of Surface Transportation. I'm just going to let the team get seated here. We are here to provide a presentation on the DeRidon Airport Connector. With me here today is Mookie Patel, Aviation Director, Ramzes Madu with the Department of Transportation, and Ryan Shealan from the airport. Also in the audience is our partner on the project, Connection Partners. So if there is a need for them to answer a question, they're available. I think it probably is important to actually provide some background and history as to how we got here today. So I wanted to go through this slide. The orange-colored circles are designated for city council actions. And then the other teal-colored ones are actually other events that occurred in the timeline. Probably the most important and the first key initiation of this project was the 2000 VTA sales tax measure that was put before the voters in, in 2000. In that measure, did include a number of transit projects, including this Airport Connector project, along with BART. Airport, the Airport Connector project was the second most popular due to polling, and that sales tax measure proved with over 70% of the vote. And of course, does provide sales tax funding for those projects, including Airport Connector. Secondly, probably the next set of actions that occurred that were important to this project was the city deciding to actually take on this project. With direction from, from city council, we actually did a request for information in '22. We then issued a request for proposal authorized by council, and then awarded a contract and an agreement with Connection Partners to begin the project. We are here today now as we have completed the first phase of that agreement, and we're going to go into a little bit more of what that is. This slide describes where we are in the overall project timeline. We have completed Phase 1, as you can see, for, for today. It was a feasibility report that performed the conceptual level engineering route analysis, conducted a technical evaluation of the transit vehicle and systems, and then conducted financial and ridership forecasts and models of performance feasibility. Phase 2A, which we are recommending to move into, and the Phase 2 are the next phases of the project that actually dive a little bit deeper into all of those technical and financial analysis. And then the total time for the, this next phase, Phase 2 and Phase 2B is one to three years. The remaining phases are, are out three to four years from now and would include an implementation agreement if we get that far, and then actually construction and operations by the Connection Partners. It's important to know what the objective of this project has been. And these objectives or goals of the project were actually laid out in the request for proposal. And it is what we built the agreement on and the analysis of the project to determine if we are meeting these goals. I think probably just the, the top ones that I'm going to highlight are, the first one, just to make San Jose Men and International Airport a more connected to the regional transit hub, which is DeRidon Station. What we're seeing here, what we're really intending here is that with this project, we actually really make a real, true transit connection, a very convenient, easy-to-access, easy-to-use transit system that actually connects these two transportation facilities as one. And we see that as really important. Number two, provide a new and reliable travel, travel option that avoids traffic congestion. And as I'll show a little bit later, this will have travel on its own dedicated guideway, so it will not have to stop at my traffic signals or getting caught in congestion. It'll have its own route to its destination. Number three, we're really testing out and hoping to prove a scalable new technology for future transit expansions across the city. It is entirely possible, if we move forward and, and get this piece of the project connected and done, that we could make some other connections into other areas of downtown or into north, north San Jose along North First Street. Just to describe the project, there is a, a base project which connects Terminal B with DeRidon Station with some interim stops in between. And then we did, with council approval, add an intra-airport loop connecting Terminal A, which is also very important. If we're going to connect to downtown, we want both terminals connected. And also provides a connection into long-term parking. The Phase 1 feasibility, or, excuse me, the Phase 1 feasibility report included all of this analysis that, that went into this. And we have completed that Phase 1 feasibility. And I'm going to just go in to highlight a couple of those results and findings. On this slide, the left side of the slide is what we, the feasibility report determined as findings. In other words, we answered our questions whether or not there was feasible technology and, and, and other analysis. The second, the right-hand side of the slide is what we will be studying in addition to that in Phase 2A and 2B. So we did find that the vehicle systems development has made a significant strides in getting to their second generation, and, and they're now testing that. We have found that the technology looks like it's going to be doable, and the conceptual design for the alignment, although it needs a lot more work, is still something that looks like it is doable. For the Phase 2A, we have to continue that development of these vehicles to ensure that that system is actually going to work flawlessly. Public agency and emergency services coordination, whenever you put anything in a guideway, that you have to have that involved. And refine the route alignment to mitigate any of the conflicts that may be in our way there. The next thing I just want to highlight is the financial feasibility. We've done a lot of work on that. We did find that the construction costs, we did, we did compare this type of transit system with either existing transit systems connecting airports or new ones that are now being built. We found that it is actually a lower level of initial cost and probably a lower level of ongoing operations as well. For the base project, we're estimating now in its conceptual level up to about $600 million. And if we add the inner-loop connector, somewhere over $800 to $821 million. We do know that it is possible, depending on what the future development around airport and downtown looks like, whether or not subsidies may be needed, just like any and all transit systems in the country do have some sort of subsidy. In some of the scenarios, it does look like that would either be zero or a very small amount. Fair revenues, there will be fares for this system. So we are going to be analyzing that further in Phase 2. And that is, the right-hand side of this slide is the key areas that we're going to be looking at, which is really digging in deeper into the refining ridership and revenue forecasts for the project, developing funding strategies for the capital portion of the project, and to incorporate value engineering into any of the preferred alignments that we're going to look at. Last slide here, just to reiterate, the recommendation is to, it's on the slide, negotiate and execute amendment for the pre-development agreement to move into Phase 2A, and also secure funding for the project, negotiate a new agreement with the Valley Transportation Authority for assistance with funding this. It will not be the only source that we will try to secure, but it'll be a, a major one. I also want to acknowledge that we did receive blue memo signed by Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, councilmembers Mulcahy, Kame, and Cohen. And also in your packet is a supplemental memo that was prepared to describe the discussion and the vote of the Airport Commission that occurred a couple of weeks ago. It was a 10-1 vote in support of the project. I will pause there and be ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you to everybody in the box for your work on this. Tony, do we have public comment?
Yes, I do. I have 20 cards. I'm going to call five names. The first person, you don't have to come in any particular order. Just whoever reaches the microphone, go ahead and start, state your name so we know who you are. We have the front row reserved. It says "reserved" on each of the seats. So if your name's been called, please come down and take a seat in that front row. I do periodically check back to see if, how many speakers we have waiting. So I'm going to start with Elliot. It looks like Jamison, Joe Head, Ben Tripouses, Shelley Doran, and Mariah Ray. Come on down.
Great. And as you all are coming down for public comment, I'll also just take the opportunity to say welcome to Scout Troop Pack 281 Den 4 Weebloos, who are visiting their city government. Welcome, Scouts. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Elliot Jamison, representing Plenary Americas and the San Jose Connection Partners team. We're here today to continue our investment in the project and answer any questions that you may have. In meeting with your offices over the last few weeks and months, we've heard many great questions about costs, ridership, funding, and more. We have preliminary answers to those questions, and most importantly, sort of look forward to hopefully moving forward to Phase 2A and getting more detailed answers and updated answers to all those same questions. To provide a little more background, my company, Plenary, is a P3 project developer. What we do is co-design projects with public sector clients and then operate them over the long term. We're fully committed We're fully committed to working with the city, including the airport, to design and develop a project that best meets your needs. If that involves making some changes from what was shown in our Phase One work, that's something that we welcome and expect at the next phase of the project. Our company is excited about this project because of its strong fundamentals connecting two major transportation facilities and we believe in the long-term growth of San Jose and the South Bay region and that's going to increase utilization of both those facilities and the need for connection between them. So the specifics may change as I described and we're committed to working with you all on any of those changes, but we believe the fundamentals are strong. And I just want to emphasize that advancing to the next phase is not a commitment to implement the project or construct the project, it's the next phase of study and project development and, and we hope you'll consider making that decision today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I'm Ben Tripousis with HNTB. I'm a thirty-year resident of the city of San Jose and as some of you may recall, I had the privilege of spending fifteen of those years with the City of San Jose's Department of Transportation, where we began the early planning for connecting Duradan Station and Manetta International Airport with an automated transit system. As Director Risto correctly pointed out, it's vitally important to connect the continued growth of the airport and the future expansion of the Duradan Station area. As the capital of Silicon Valley, San Jose has maintained a longstanding focus on innovation and this project advances those goals. We have an opportunity to lean into the fact that San Jose and Santa Clara County have a legacy of leading the way in transportation innovation in the Bay Area and throughout California by supporting the deployment of innovative transportation systems and effectively partnering with companies like Glideways and Plenary to deliver the Airport Connector project to San Jose. San Jose can continue this legacy. I urge your support for this item.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Maria Ray. I lead Government Affairs at Glideways. I'm joined today by Glideways Chief Technology Officer, Blake Barber. Glideways is proud to be the transit technology provider on this project team. For over eight years, we have developed our solution with a few key principles. Access to mobility provides access to opportunity. Transit should be low-cost to build, operate, and maintain, and an exceptional user experience will bring people out of their cars and into transit. San Jose was the first city to select our technology as your chosen solution and we are honored to partner with the community. This year, we opened up our Glideways San Jose office where our embedded hardware and vehicle engineering teams are developing, testing, and assembling components for our glidecars. We believe that San Jose residents need a fast, reliable, and accessible transit connection, not just for convenience, but for equity. Ride share, whether it's with or without a driver, remains a private, high-cost option that adds congestion, congestion to the existing road network. This project is a fiscally responsible approach to public transit and it's delivered with an affordable fare and an exceptional user experience. This is a moment to think beyond today's challenges and make a decision that will shape San Jose's future. The airport will grow, downtown will experience new development, and the need for a transit connector will be evident as the roads become more congested. And transit projects take time. We are committed to working with our partners and with you all at the city to shape the best project for this community. Blake and I are available to answer any questions that you have this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Dan Costenbauer, Francisco Nunez, Alejandro Martinez, Dario Salgado, and Kobe Lopez. Come on down. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, and members of the council. I am Joe Head, Chair of the San Jose-Manetta International Airport, Airport Commission. We had a special meeting on March fifth and spent a little over three hours in energetic discussion. Every member of that commission, all eleven of us, spoke at least three times. So it was, and we provided to you a recommendation and a list of concerns, a fairly lengthy list which reflected our, our discussion. Let me focus briefly on some things I think you should take into account. First of all, the connection within the airport, the intra-airport connection, is much better served during airport expansion planning and the focus there should be, I, we would suggest that focus is on the connection from SJC to Duradan back and forth, but not the second part of that. Also, the anticipated growth of the airport, the number of passengers, needs to be thoughtfully and currently with current data understood. Historical use of the airport has, looks to be changing and if it is, then the answer of who would use the connector and why would also be changing. If we're going to more leisure travel, you would see an increase of families with children, those kinds of demographics and the small pod might, might or might not be adaptable to that, but that level of detail needs to be done now before I think you move on to the exact technical accomplishment of how the neck, how the connection will be made. From an environmental point of view, the right-of-way should not be in or under the Riparian Corridor. And from a safety point of view, the elevated trackway cannot...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm Shelley Doran and I'm here representing the builders, Obiashi, WebCor Obiashi. We have had decades here in San Jose of being part of your built environment, from high-rise downtown to the Convention Center, to the San Jose Athletic Center, as well as we are infrastructure builders throughout the state. We are the largest employer in the state of California of carpenters. I wanted to talk a little bit about what this project will provide to our union labor community. We have estimated that there will be about two hundred thousand hours per year of union labor on this project, as well as feeder jobs for the several apprenticeship programs throughout the state, which of course, as you know, are very important for these apprentices to get their hours in to become journey person laborers. We also are going to be a very large supplier of local labor, which is so important that our labor universe here gets to live and work closer to their home instead of having to make long commutes to find those very large construction projects. So we urge you to support this project and as we can supply jobs and labor for our people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Dan Costenbauer. I'm the Vice President at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, which has been a champion for transportation investment in Silicon Valley for over thirty years. SVLG strongly supports the Airport Connector project. We think it should move forward to its next phase of due diligence. The business community sees this as a vital infrastructure investment that will enhance both regional mobility and economic competitiveness. There are numerous benefits that this project will have for San Jose and our region. It offers a modern, autonomous, electric transit solution that will improve connectivity between SJC and Duradan. It's a public-private partnership that brings private investment into our public transit system, which is smart and fiscally responsible. And this project will modernize our airport and showcase San Jose as a, an innovative leader in transit solutions. So for these reasons, we urge your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Francisco Nunez and I'm a Director of Field Operations for the Northern California Region of the Laborers International Union of North America. On behalf of over thirty thousand hard-working Launa members in Northern California and sixty-four hundred members of here local two-seventy, I'm here to express my strong support to the Connection Project. I had a prepared speech, but I, I can't do better than, than the presentation with all the features and the incredible feats of construction that we can build. It's amazing the stuff that we're going to be able to accomplish with this partnership between the city, a responsible contractor, and, and both that feel that, and are responsible enough to bring in labor as part of a component that is, is a partner and being a partnership where labor doesn't have to be exploited and, and, and the project doesn't have to be built at the cost of lower wages and exploiting workforce. I can't express how much it's important that we have union projects that promote apprenticeship programs, we just heard from our previous speaker. We have an apprentice coordinator here on site. I mean, we, we, we have opportunities and we have the ability to create opportunities for women, single mothers, previously incarcerated people returning from service or from prison and people returning from, from military service to a career. The reason I say that is because that was my story. This union job, the apprenticeship program was, was saved my life. That was twenty-plus years ago and I can't stress enough that we have an opportunity to pay that forward. We talked about the airport and I don't know how many of you guys are here, maybe most of you, twenty-plus years ago, my, one of my first jobs was Coleman Airport, that cut-and-cover tunnel. And back then, we were talking about moving San Jose into the future and the ability to show the world what we can do together as a partnership with the city, the building...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dario Salgado and I am a member of the Laborers International Union of North America. I am here today to express my support in the Airport Connected Project. As a local resident and a member of Launa Local Two Seventy, projects like these are the foundation of my construction career. They allow me to send my two daughters to, to college so they could pursue their own dreams. WebCor has established itself as a valuable partner dedicated to collaboration and meaningful investment in our city and our residents by providing cutting-edge equipment and infrastructure. This project is estimated to generate, generate over two hundred thousand man-hours a year for the next, for the phase of, of the four years of the construction project. This represents a valuable opportunity for apprentices, providing them with livable wages and healthcare for themselves and their families. We will all benefit from this investment for generations to come. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, City Members and Mayor. As I was mentioning, my name's Alejandro Martinez. I've been a San Jose resident for the past twenty-four years and a Launa member for the past ten years. I want to voice my strong support for the San Jose Airport Connector Project. This project will bring more jobs, better opportunities to our community. It will provide good-paying jobs with benefits, especially for young adults and anyone looking for a fresh start through our apprenticeship program. When I was younger, I had big dreams of going to college, starting a career and a family. Life didn't go as planned. I found myself struggling, making ends meet while raising a family in San Jose where the cost of living is so high. After years of hardship, the laborers union gave me a second chance to start a career and be a skilled laborer. This long-term project so close to home will create opportunities for others like me who are looking to have a better future for themselves and their families. Having projects like this that provide reliable transportation option would just, is just a smart public planning decision, but also offer residents a high quality of life by opening new jobs, recreational opportunities that might not otherwise be available. It will be my honor to work here in San Jose for my citizens and other travelers. I urge you to please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like, I'd like to call five more names. I have Julian Lake, Kenneth Doe, Juan Hernandez, Maria Felix, and Laura Drosek. Come on down. Go ahead.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Antonio Kobe Lopez. I'm today speaking with you on behalf of the South Bay AFL-CIO Labor Council and over a hundred thousand working families across Silicon Valley. We understand that extensive time has gone into bringing this item before you all today. However, given the current state of our city budget, to spend fourteen million dollars studying a privately-owned transit project that could cost the city more than eight hundred million dollars to build and millions of dollars every year in ongoing subsidy afterward, instead of other, instead of our other most pressing concerns, is truly concerning. We are fresh off an hours-long discussion of how the city should prioritize its budget. You heard the needs for affordable housing, homelessness solutions, public safety, and pub, and public services. Not a new way to travel from the airport. If this council is truly interested in securing airport users' transit options from the airport, the more immediate task everyone on this dais should take is directing your VTA board members to support our bus and light rail operators with a fair contract so we can return bus service to the SJC flyers and transit riders across the region by bringing an end to that strike, not preparing to spend nearly a billion dollars in public money to automate transit workers out of a job and benefit a private corporation. If we want to further equitable transportation initiatives, we need to fight for our operators, prioritize budgets that move our entire community, and focus on real transformational projects such as BART Phase Two. Rather, we are focusing on dedicating millions of dollars towards studying a project that requires a massive, ongoing corporate subsidy and minimal benefits to residents. To this end, Labor Council would like to make clear and acknowledge and express our support of good union construction jobs and that we look forward to further conversations about this project. We urge this body to focus on transportation work that will support our entire community as these matters continue to come before this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Julian Lake and I serve as a Policy Director for the Bay Area Council and also a proud resident of downtown San Jose. I'm here today to express our strong support for advancing this project to the next phase so that due diligence can continue. This project represents a crucial investment in our region's infrastructure and public transit, enhancing both mobility and boosting economic competitiveness. It introduces modern, autonomous, electric transit system, one that is green, sustainable, and significantly improves connectivity between the airport and Duradan Station. Additionally, this initiative exemplifies the power of public-private partnerships, leveraging private investment to strengthen our transit network in a fiscally responsible way. By embracing this model, San Jose is setting a precedent for smarter and more efficient transit development. Finally, this project will not only modernize our airport, but also reinforce San Jose's reputation as a hub of innovation. Visitors that arrive at SJC will immediately experience the cutting-edge technological spirit that defines our region. We urge you to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Juan Hernandez and I've been a proud union member for the past ten years, local four oh five. San Jose native, father of five, and where I begin. This project will bring many benefits to our city. The Connection Partners Project means a stable, well-paying jobs and skilled union workers for our community. Approving this project means that the council has been, has had an opportunity to support local families with high-quality paying jobs and strengthen our connectivity through the additional transit options. Please make it forward without delay and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Laura Drosek. I am a field representative with the NorCal Carpenters Union. I've proudly been a union member for twenty-five years and have lived in San Jose since two thousand fifteen. On behalf of thirty-eight thousand members, I am here to speak in favor of the San Jose-Duradan Connection Project. In Northern California alone, we have twenty-two affiliated local unions and represent eleven appringtonable crafts. These crafts represent anywhere between forty to sixty percent of any average construction project labor needs. Our union participates in the largest labor management apprenticeship program in the state. This includes... public transportation, easing some of the stresses of commuting every day in traffic. I respectfully urge you to support San Jose's working families and the community of commuters that commute in and out of our beautiful and thriving San Jose with moving this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
I'd also like to call Elliot Rogers, Olivia Navarro, and Forrest Peterson. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, council members, and all the present. My name is Maria Fila Salgado, and I proudly serve as a union member for eight years with the Local 9144 here in the city of San Jose. I was raised here in Eastside. I have beautiful memories of this great city. I attended elementary at Thomas P. Ryan and for middle school at Okala and so on. I have great appreciation for the many resources this city has provided for different families. For example, on a scorched day, my grandfather would take me to, would take me and my sister to have a refreshing good soak at the Seussar Chavez Fountain Park. And on early Saturday, we would go to the Veriasa Flea Market and eat fresh roasted peanuts here in the Mariachi, and not to mention my most favorite, Christmas in the Park. My family had the resources thanks to my grandfather being part of the laborers' union, which means good salary and good benefits. My grandfather was part of many outstanding projects here in the city, which I feel very proud of. Many things are getting better in the city. Some things we will probably never see in, like the old Vera Ranch, where we will go and buy a five dozen of eggs for the most $10. This city has many opportunities, good salaries, massive projects like the Durdon Station Plan. I have great desire to be part of this project and also all my brothers and sisters' union members. We have worked hard to obtain our careers as carpenters. We have completed four years of apprenticeship. We are educated to be professionals with integrity, loyalty, and to build with safety. We build with passion. Union jobs are the backbone of our workforce, and the San Jose Connection Partners will create more of them.
Thank you, that's your time.
Good evening, mayor and council member. My name is Kenneth Doe, field rep for Local 405, representing the Carpenters' Union. I live in District Six, and I've also been a resident of San Jose for over 40 years. So I know how critical this Airport Connector is to our city's future. As a field rep, from what I see, we're out in the valley building the high-speed rail that's going to eventually connect to the Durdon Station. We're working on the BART that's going to connect to the Durdon Station. We're working on the VTA that's going to connect to BART. So this infrastructure is another piece of the puzzle that's going to bring back business to San Jose, strengthen our local economy, bring traffic back to San Jose Airport. You know, tourism equals money. Hey, maybe bring back the Google project. I know Google has a good, or WebCor has a good relationship with Google. We've got to do something. I am here to kindly ask that you push this project to the next phase and onward to the finish line. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Alex Stadinski, Waskar Castro, and Jason Su. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Elliot Rogers, a recently journeyed-out apprentice. Been with the union for five years from the Local 405. And union jobs are the backbone of our workforce, and this project will help give us even more jobs. And this project will also create more stability and opportunity for those of us who are looking for work, as it is slow right now, and we really do need the influx of work. So we please ask that you move ahead with this project to the next phase without hesitation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Stadinski. I am the CEO of the San Jose Downtown Association. I'm here in strong support of the proposed airport connector. The success of downtown is directly tied to its accessibility. A seamless connection between SJC and Durdon will enhance mobility for residents, workers, and visitors. We are thrilled to see this team willing and eager to invest in our downtown, and we applaud the city for putting out the RFP for this connector and for challenging the private sector to come forward with ideas about how to do transit differently. This project delivers on all the goals the city set forward and should move to the next phase. With autonomous, all-electric vehicles and a point-to-point ride, riders are treated to a high-quality, on-demand transit option that rivals the car or other transit options like Lyft or Uber, but at a fraction of the cost. We urge the city to vote yes and move this project forward to the next phase of study. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, council members. My name is Olivia Navarro, and I'm a lifelong San Josean. I'm also a proud resident of District Six and a working mom and a proud Launa Local 270 member. As someone that spent years, over the last couple of years especially, listening to neighbors, navigating our city's transportation system, and advocating for solutions that work for real families, I strongly support moving the San Jose Connection Partners Project into Phase Two-A. This isn't just a transportation investment, it's an investment in our community. The project, as you've heard from my other brothers and sisters in union, does bring union jobs, fair wages, and it also connects the Durdon Station to the airport and reduces congestion and improves air quality. But beyond that, it creates accessible transit options for working families, seniors, and like today in the morning, I mean, earlier today that you guys recognize, our handicapped people individuals. It also supports them getting to and from the Durdon Station. And a lot of them rely on public transportation every single day. As someone who understands the importance of reliable transit, local jobs, and inclusive planning, I see this as an opportunity to move San Jose forward in a way that reflects our shared values. I look forward to continuing to show up for projects like this, ones that help strengthen and connect our communities. And like my brother from the AFL-CIO, I'm also a delegate. I don't speak on behalf of them right now, but I have to say, yes, and, we can do both. I respectfully urge the council to keep this vital project moving forward and allow it to advance into the next phase of study. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and esteemed council. My name is Dr. Forrest Peterson. I was born in San Jose, where I'm raising my family in the greater. The Connection Partners Project is a win. It brings union wages. That wage is what breaks down social walls, allows a healthy, productive life, and supports our children as the next generation, as you've seen here earlier. Union wages stoke the economy as those dollars multiply across businesses here in San Jose. They don't leave. Study after study at Stanford Engineering has found benefits to the union workforce here in Silicon Valley. While I've tried, I haven't found, I've found nothing to suggest otherwise. The type of trade unions here is a feature of the Silicon Valley economy. Also, the airport-rail connection provides a mode of public transportation that is needed. I rely 100% on public transportation, and I believe in transit. I took the Caltrain here today. These last-mile connections are critical to the system, as well as fairly-paid transit maintenance employees. And so I also want to comment on my colleague from the Labor Council. I don't want to diminish anything that they commented on, but I also like to reemphasize what Olivia said previously is, yes, and, because I have to remember that Public Works is what brought me here, and I have to always remember that I also want to have Public Works to be able to build and be able to, you know, those projects are the lifeblood of our trade, and when you don't work, you don't earn. So with that, I thank you, council, and please approve this project, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and city council. My name is Jason Su with the Igualpa River Park Conservancy. We envision a river park where people connect with nature and each other. We support this item because connection is what we are here for. When the River Play Garden opened 10 years ago, it was the premier space for accessible play. Along with other unique features such as the Heritage Rose Garden, celebrating its 30th anniversary, we have in the middle of San Jose spaces that are the first or the most unique of its kind in our region. Hidden gem is often used, which often means the space needs more access and more connection. This project with a station at the Igualpa Gardens will support that. Cool. And since I have time, I invite everyone to join us at the Heritage Rose Garden on Saturday, April 5th, for our 30th anniversary. By me, the Parks Guy with the purple hair, and I'll be happy to show you around the gardens as well as what connection will mean to us. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Waskar Castro, Director of Housing and Transportation Justice at Working Partnerships. And we understand that extensive time has gone into bringing this item before you all today. However, given the current state of our city budget, to spend $14 million studying a privately-owned transit project that could cost the city more than $800 million to build and millions of dollars every year in ongoing subsidy is particularly concerning. We are fresh off an hours-long discussion of how the city should prioritize its budget. We discussed affordable housing, homelessness solutions, public safety, public services. Not a new way to travel to and from the airport. If this council is truly interested in securing airport users' transit options from the airport, the more immediate task everyone should be taking on the dais is directing your VTA board members to support the bus and light rail operators with a fair contract so we can return bus service to SJC flyers and transit riders across the region by bringing an end to that strike, not preparing to spend nearly $1 billion in public money to automate transit workers out of jobs and benefit a private corporation. If we want to further equitable transportation initiatives, we need to fight for operators, prioritize projects that move our entire community, and focus on real transformational projects such as BART Phase Two. Rather, we are focused on dedicating millions of dollars towards studying a project that requires a massive, ongoing corporate subsidy and minimal benefit to a broad amount of residents. We urge this body to focus on transportation work that will support our entire community as these matters continue to come before this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker.
Thank you for the chance to speak on this item. My name's Efren Batris. I'm a union member for eight years, went through apprenticeship program. I'm here today in strong support for the Connection Partners Project because of the opportunity that it'll bring to this region and working families. With one of the laborers' biggest construction jobs on pause, this project guarantees union skilled labor, bringing good jobs and economic benefits to our community. I ask you to move this forward without hesitation. Thank you once again.
Back to council. Back to council.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you to all of our public speakers. Appreciate everybody coming out and voicing opinions on all sides of the issue. I want to thank city staff, John, Dolan, Rosalyn, Jessica, Mookie, Ramses, and everybody else who has worked with the Connection Partners to advance the project and help us get to a point where we can determine whether or not further analysis is warranted, which is really the question before us today. I appreciate all the advocacy kind of on all sides of the issue from various labor partners. I do want to assure members of the audience that if we are to move forward, transportation project with public dollars, there will be, there will be union work on that project, whether it's whatever form of an airport connector, Durdon Station project, BART project. I think the main question before us today is where we are with this particular version of an airport connector that, as you saw from the presentation, is something that was, in some form at least, promised to the voters many years ago at the ballot box. I think the question we've been grappling with, along with VTA or transit agency and congestion management agency, is how best to fulfill that need and how much of a need is there? And so what's before us today is a staff recommendation to move forward a modified or scope-down Phase Two, Phase Two-A, which is something I support because while the current feasibility report provides a pretty bright outlook on the future of travel patterns and riders taking transit and the kind of innovation we expect, and that's a future I'm very hopeful for, as I think all of my colleagues are, I think the reality is we still need a deeper analysis to really know whether or not this is the right investment for our community, the right technology, the right approach at this time. A lot of things have changed since we started this analysis from the growth trajectory of the airport to where we were with Downtown West planning. And that's not to say those, some of those things won't change. Once again, we may see tremendous growth in the coming years, but I think we're at a moment where we need to focus in on an investment-grade analysis of the likely demand, what, that bless you? Where, where those potential riders want to go. Getting to Durdon is almost certainly a transfer point, not an end destination, and I think we have to acknowledge that. And, and then really understand this emerging technology landscape. There is a tremendous amount of innovation happening in the mobility space, which is exciting, but it also means a lot of uncertainties, a lot of different possible outcomes. And I think it would behoove us to, and we talked a little bit in our group memo, about engaging VTA on this topic, to maybe refresh our analysis of the full range of technologies that are out there and what they might mean for us, including those that, like the proposed project here that might require dedicated right-of-way and may have certain advantages due to that, but also has extra costs. And there are other technologies that would utilize existing right-of-ways. So I think there's more to understand. And then another major topic, which again is mentioned in our group memo, is the council's need to deeply understand the implications for the future growth of the airport, which we hope to see expand in the coming years and provide more service and potentially have a hotel or other amenities. So there are a lot of questions still to answer. I think we're at a moment where it's prudent to get more information, but to do it in a way that is extremely rigorous, data-driven, and limits the impacts on our already strained budgets, both at the city and VTA. Right now, at least until VTA goes out for a revenue renewal of some kind, the Measure A dollars have been committed to the BART project. I think we need to acknowledge that. So this is a moment to, to learn, do more analysis, and see where we are, but not to put at-risk additional general fund dollars. It is worth noting, there's a small amount of funding that was previously allocated to the project, including from a federal grant. Those dollars would still be expended. That's the 3.7 million. But beyond that, in our group memo, we're requesting that any additional funds be found outside of the city, perhaps from state or federal grants or other sources. I want to thank members of my Brown Act, Vice Mayor Foley, council members Kamay Cohen and Mulcahy, who I'm sure will have more to add on what's in the group memo. and Mulcahy, who I'm sure will have more to add on what's in the group memo and their thought process. But I think a, um, measured, uh, approach, measured, modified, uh, Phase Two A that really focuses on giving the council the deep analysis we need to be able to make an informed decision is, is the right step. So I'm going to turn to, uh, Councilmember Mulcahy and then we'll take it from there.
Mayor, before you do.
I apologize. Vice Mayor, you had, uh, you had mentioned to me, uh, at the top of the item, and I failed to bring this up, you have a brief Brown Act disclosure, is that correct?
Yes. Before we, before we proceed with this item, I need to disclose an inadvertent Brown Act violation. As I had a conversation with a representative from District Three who is not in my Brown Act, at that time, I did not realize that this involved the majority of the council. And so I disclose.
Thank you for this closure. As folks may know, a Brown Act violation, uh, the remedy to a Brown Act violation is disclosure. So we appreciate that, Vice Mayor. And let me now turn to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to all those who came out to speak today. Um, appreciate you taking the time to do so. Um, as a newish, uh, city council member, it's taken a lot of time and study to catch up on the Airport Connector Project, to understand its background, why this technology and approach was championed in the first place, and how much history and policy is involved. I want to recognize John Risto, Director of the Department of Transportation, and his team, including Ramses, uh, Mookie Patel, Airport, uh, Director of Aviation at SJC, and his team, including Ryan as well. I continue to be impressed by the depth and knowledge of our San Jose staff. You have tremendously, you know, sort of educated me, and I appreciate all that. You've been a great resource, as I've worked hard to catch up on the merits and the challenges of this project. And so I, you, I have no further questions of you today, so you're off the hook. Um, but I also want to thank, um, San Jose Connection Partners, the teams from Plenary and Glide Ways. You've been informative and patient. We appreciate the investments you've made to date, the technology you're creating as part of this project, and I'm hopeful you'll commit to move forward on terms that we outlined today. I share a vision for creating reliable and sustainable transit options connecting San Jose and the Greater Bay Area, particularly this focus on linking Diradon Station and San Jose International Airport. I'm very proud to represent District Six, where both connector destinations reside, SJC and Diradon. However, our city and region have faced significant challenges, including uneven airport employments, delayed infrastructure projects, and financial pressure. One of my main concerns has been this project's impact on SJC. The system needs to be designed around the needs of the airport, not the other way around. The system cannot dictate where we can grow gates, parking, hotels, or other sources of revenue generation. As the liaison to the Airport Commission, a stalwart champion for airport success, I want to thank the commission members who really dug in, as you heard earlier, to consider this project and next steps, led by Chair and former San Jose City Councilmember Joe Head. The commission deliberated and shared their thoughts in a supplemental memo from the March, from March 20th, 2025. Joe, thanks for your testimony and representing your commission well today. So to move us forward in the memo authored by Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, council members Cohen, Kamay, and our District Six office, we recommend conducting a rigorous investment-grade ridership study for Phase Two A to assess demand and compare options like autonomous vehicles. The study should be conducted alongside evaluating emerging technologies with Valley Transportation Authority. There's no question in my mind, the project's success hinges on understanding long-term airport growth needs and securing external funding, as the city of San Jose cannot and should not allocate additional funding at this time. Our goal is to ensure SJC to Diradon Connector can be competitive in a rapidly evolving technological landscape while supporting SJC's economic benefits to the region. With that, I move for approval of the memo dated March 21, 2025, by the aforementioned colleagues.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Second by Vice Mayor Foley. And, um, I was remiss in not noting, um, thank you to the Connection Partners, who, by the way, have put substantial private dollars into the analysis, and I just wanted to thank them for that and, and note their commitment. So thank you to the San Jose Connection Partners, who have worked closely with city staff. Let me turn now to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to staff for being here and for all the analysis that's gotten us to this point and for all of the people who came out today to talk about the project and those who have been working on it so far. I just wanted to sort of talk a little bit about how this project differs from other projects that we're doing in terms of public transit and also, um, differs from technology that's expanding in our cities, such as autonomous vehicles through Uber and Waymo. There are, I think, distinct, um, value, um, in, um, there are distinct, uh, benefits to having, uh, what, what I would consider to be, um, public transit as opposed to, uh, private, um, point-to-point travel, which is what Uber and Waymo are. Uh, this is more of a public transit line, and this, this actually has, this type of technology has become the favorite approach, favorite approach for transit advocates because it is the cheapest, uh, technology to build from mile by mile compared, far cheaper than fixed rail, which is what our traditional public transit has been. We've, we are still expanding BART, we're expanding light rail, I'm a big supporter of that, of what we're doing in both those cases, but we're not going to be able to continue to expand BART and light rail to all of the destinations where we need transit. We're going to need other approaches. Um, this kind of dedicated roadway has some distinct advantages. First of all, our, uh, autonomous vehicles that are coming and expanding use our roadways. Our roadways, we know, are becoming more and more crowded. They have a lot of stops due to traffic and, uh, stoplights. This, this is a dedicated line. It also is a dedicated line that allows riders to, to bypass stations that they don't want to stop at. So it's not, it moves continuously from point A to point B without stopping in between. However, I want to point out that this is, you know, while this is billed as a, a Diradon to Airport Connector, it also would be connecting other destinations. We heard from Guadalupe River Gardens Park, and it certainly occurs to me that the ability to get from, uh, downtown to Guadalupe Gardens back and forth on a short, uh, transit ride might also be something of interest to the public, especially with the, um, uh, Accessible Play Garden right there where the stop would be. So there are some other benefits, um, to this as well. The other piece is, is the, um, modern connectivity within an airport. And when you travel, of course, to airports, you see, um, connectors, autonomous connectors between terminals. I think an important part of this project will be the ability to do the intra-airport piece. Obviously, the, the comments and concerns of, uh, Councilmember Mulcahy are important. These, this, we shouldn't be building this and then having to build an airport around it. It should all be built together. Of course, we're still many years away from the stage in which we're building this project. We're still doing a lot of analysis. But in my opinion, for the project to work, it also needs to include the connection between terminals, the connection to the parking lot. You know, getting, uh, um, inefficient, uh, less environmentally sound buses off the road is important. Um, being able to have people get quickly from place to place is important. Now, ideally, in my mind, I've always said that, as we've had this conversation in past years, that the ideal thing would be for this connector to go right into the terminal and right through the terminal so that people are in the terminal. If you go into Detroit Airport, they built, they retrofitted their airport with, uh, automation, automated vehicles in the area above the, uh, the shops and restaurants. So you go up and you ride between the terminals in that manner. That would be the ideal configuration. Obviously, we don't necessarily have the ability to do that at this point. We, we, we've moved past that with our airport design, but, um, having intra-airport connectivity is important. The other piece is that the long-term expansion does envision a hotel at the airport, and people are going to need to not only get to the airport for their flights, but if they're staying at that hotel, to get downtown from the airport. So there's other potential traffic that we need to include in this study moving forward. I am, having said all that, I am certainly, at this point, still deeply skeptical of ridership projections that are being, that are rosy in this case. We certainly need to understand whether this, whether this is going to, um, pencil out. Having said that, though, several of us sit on the, uh, the Diradon Station Expansion Committee through, uh, through VTA and Caltrain and, and the city. We're talking about a billion-dollar expansion of Diradon Station, which I also consider to be one of those things that may or may not happen in the future, but we're still moving forward with the planning, with the design, with the work. And if, in fact, in the future, Diradon, um, is the home of stops for BART and for high-speed rail, along with Caltrain and current light rail, there will be a different pattern of traffic coming in and out of the airport and in and out of Diradon than we currently have. And we hope that Diradon will someday be that Grand Central Station of the West like we're envisioning. Um, and, and then the last thing I just wanted to, to mention is, um, that certainly there's been some concern about how this fits into the budget. That's why we did certainly work really hard in this memo here to say, look, we're going to move forward, but we don't want public dollars. We don't necessarily have public dollars available at this point due to some of our other priorities, certainly from the city, but also even, as was mentioned by the mayor, VTA has swept that money to try to make sure BART happens, which I think we all agree is primary, uh, primary importance. So, um, if we can find the resources outside of those public dollars to move forward with, with, um, Phase Two A, that'll, that would be really great. So I want to thank all the partners, um, for their hospitality. I've visited twice up to the, to Glide Ways to see the technology. I've ridden in the vehicle. Um, certainly, it's a, I think, uh, until you've really experienced it and seen it or even done the, the, um, their virtual reality version of the ride, which shows what it would look like to get on and off the train and ride to the airport, um, it, it's really hard to envision what this will look like. I think there is, there is a lot of potential in this technology. So, and, and, and I don't think anyone pointed this out, there are other jurisdictions moving forward with this technology. I think, I believe by the time we finish this study and get to a point where we're making a decision, we will have other examples to draw from. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Uh, Ramses Madu DOT, um, yes, that's correct. There's a pilot project being built, uh, in the Atlanta area.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate it. Let's go to Councilmember Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report and... I just had a couple of questions for you. The $3.8 million that, that came out, general fund, am I correct?
Uh, Councilmember John Risto, Director of Transportation. No, it was not general fund money. It was actually either from our, uh, capital improvement program funds, which is not general fund, or part of it is from the previous agreement we had with VTA using Measure A dollars. And then we also were successful with a small federal grant that's included in there as well.
Yes, I see that. The, the federal grant, uh, for $12.9 million?
It, the one that we've secured so far is only about a million and a half. We've submitted another new one we haven't heard yet back from the federal government for about 12 million.
And so what is the outlook on, on getting that $12.9 million with the current federal administration?
Yeah, I don't really have, that's a hard one to predict. We're waiting for existing grants that we were awarded to be authorized by the Federal Department of Transportation, so any new ones is even less, uh, certain.
So if we didn't get the grant, would, would put a, um, a stop to, to this study?
It, uh, it would certainly, uh, delay us from completing Phase Two A. In our original recommendation, we did, um, include that we would seek other funds, including Measure A funds from VTA that are directed towards this project. But as the mayor pointed out, focus that VTA has right now is, um, on the BART Project and getting that project full funding and into construction. So we fully acknowledge that their focus is on that, plus stabilizing their current existing transit system. So we totally understand where VTA is right now, but we were still, because this is a multi-year project, we were still recommending that we would seek other funding from VTA for Measure A dollars as well as outside grants as well, so.
Let's say the worst-case scenario, they didn't get the, the grant funding at $12.9 million. Will you be able to move some of this grant fund to be diverted to other projects within the city?
If we were to receive the specific grant that we applied for, uh, the 12 million?
No, not the 12.
Or the VTA funds?
Yes.
The, the VTA funds are dedicated via that sales tax to a specified list of projects. The Airport Connector is one of those, as well as BART and some other light rail projects. So we would not be able to, or VTA would not legally be able to use those funds for anything else that was not included in that Measure A sales tax.
Thank you, and I, I really appreciate, uh, the mayor and, and our colleagues, um, thoughtful into the memorandum. I think it's, it's made very clear that within the budget deficit, that we shouldn't put any more funding from our general fund, um, unless there, there's our other option like grants and so on. And, um, I will be supporting the mayor and my colleagues' memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? I'm not seeing any other hands. Okay. Thanks again to our, uh, Brown Act for the group memo. Thank you to staff and to the Connection Partners. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you all very much. As a reminder, thank you. As a reminder, we, uh, dropped item 7.1, so we're on to item 8.1, which is the Peddler Permit Ordinance Amendment. And we do have a staff presentation.
Ready to go? Okay. All right. Uh, I'm Paul Joseph, Chief of Police, and I'm here to talk about an amendment to the current, uh, peddler ordinance. So just a little bit of history brief. Um, in 2018, uh, the state legislature, uh, loosened the regulations surrounding street vending. Uh, there are no outright, no outright bans on street, uh, peddling. It can only, you can only regulate the time and place for such activity. And more significantly for us, there are no criminal penalties associated with street vending itself. The only remedy is, um, uh, an administrative citation, which means essentially a fine. Um, so we have administrative citations, public health, the county's health department can seize food and do other things, and we can remove items and equipment under certain circumstances. Uh, in order to be a street vendor in the city of San Jose of food, uh, you have to get a peddler's permit from the city, a food permit from the county, and then there are restrictions, uh, within those city permits. You cannot be within 500 feet of certain areas. Those are city-owned venues and city-permitted temporary special events, farmers' markets, flea markets, and schools. I will turn it over to my colleague Nancy Klein.
Thank you very much, Nancy Klein, City Manager's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. Just want to mention that we began work on evaluating what could or should be done, uh, to amend ordinances related to unpermitted vendors by our staff, meeting with staff from other California cities, as well as researching, uh, ordinances and policies from those cities. We found that San Diego serves as a useful model for our efforts, and you'll hear a little bit more about what came of that in upcoming slides. Thank you. Uh, we began our work, um, actually earlier on unpermitted vendors by working with the San Jose Arena, and the, our Arena Management Agreement requires the city to enforce vendor distances and keeping, um, ingress egress areas clear and safe.
This further mentions the outreach in 2024 at Roosevelt Community Center, in addition to some of our other efforts. And then lastly, a highlight from Prosperity Labs, where the Mimi Hernandez and Prosperity Labs has graduated a cohort of those food entrepreneurs participating, 12 of them, and there's a new cohort of 14 food entrepreneurs. And just wanted to add a note in saying that this effort requires a tremendous amount of work from many departments, including Police Department, DOT, Fire, Mayor's, Manager's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, Fire, and, and Code Enforcement. In particular, want to again mention Nancy Rueda, Kalen Kenny, Nathan Donato Weinstein, Nellie Torres, and Melina Iglesias for their very, very good and dedicated work. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Nancy. So let me talk a little bit about some of the outcomes that we saw from the pilot. So we, we did work both at Christmas in the Park and at SAP. There were, there was a really high volume of peddlers outside SAP, causing some ingress and egress and other safety issues. And so what we did is we launched a cart impound pilot and then increased our presence to create a deterrent effect. And what we did from the, from those two things, we seized, well, we didn't seize, but the County of Santa Clara, with our assistance, seized 1,245 pounds of food. Our Code Enforcement Unit issued six administrative citations, and the Department of Transportation issued 695 parking citations, because many of the vendors would park in unpermitted locations. Just as a way of showing kind of the difference, so the photo on the left is the carts and the tables that were set up, many of these chained to public lamp posts and things like that in the area of the Christmas in the Park. So you see the same street the year later after the, the pilot, and if the sidewalk is free of those obstructions, people are free to come and go. Similarly, in these photos, a difference between 2023, where the street and the sidewalk is just completely cluttered by vendors, there's no real way to pass by, and in 2024, the attendees to Christmas in the Park are able to walk to and from the event. So the proposal is threefold. The proposed amendments, the first adds a requirement that goods, equipment, goods, wares, merchandise, food, products, and other peddling equipment shall not be left unattended. And, and actually, any of these things would allow for impoundment where they to be violated. The second change would be, would be to require the peddlers to carry liability insurance with a waiver and a release of liability indemnification and hold harmless and an acknowledgement of the risk. The third is again some more impoundment options. If you're peddling in an area that's prohibited for safety reasons, blocking or obstructing the free movement of pedestrians and vehicles, blocking ingress and egress or fire hydrants, peddling food without the county health permit, chaining equipment to structures, utilizing any structure in the right-of-way as an extension of the mobile unit, leaving items unattended, peddling apparent violation of the ordinance, and peddling in an unsafe way, and to include unapproved equipment and discharging of grease and hot grease. So those are the changes that we are proposing. That's the end of our presentation, and Nancy and I are both here for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the presentation and all the work you and your officers and Code and OED and others have done. I'll say just a little more after public comment. Tony, do we have any comment cards?
Yes, I have a few.
Great.
When I call your name, please come on down. The front row is reserved for those who have been called. You do not have to speak in this particular order. I have Ryan M., or maybe N., Debbie, last name starts with the D., Chris Shea, and Armando Ricardes. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for taking up the Peddler Ordinance Amendment this afternoon. My name is Chris Shea, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Government Affairs at Shark Sports and Entertainment. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment of my time to thank the countless hours spent by the talented team at Economic Development, City Manager's Office, the Mayor's Office, members of the Fire Department, and the Police Department for their dedication to solving this vexing problem. In short, how do we keep our patrons, venue staff, and our unlicensed vendor community safe? How do we pay respective individuals attempting to make a living, all while ensuring that large crowds remain safe while attending our large events? By focusing on potentially explosive equipment that blocks venue fire exits, parking, and streets rather than individuals themselves, our focus remains on safety. To a location throughout your city, the venue and event operators in your town welcome everyone in our community and city visitors alike. As you can imagine, we unfortunately cannot welcome equipment that blocks fire exits, that inhibits life-safety corridors, nor the equipment that blocks lots and streets that provide exit to our events. We are sincerely asking the Police Department to be given the tools to make our venue and crowd safer. By adopting the Peddler Ordinance before you, we strengthen the tools available to our Police Department, we minimize staff time dedicated to this topic, and we keep our venues and the places of celebration safe in San Jose. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Next speaker.
To our honorable mayor and esteemed city council. Hi, my name is Ryan McInahan. I'm the Director of Communications for the San Jose Earthquakes. We are here to, in, in support of amending Chapter 6.54 of Title VI, the Peddler Permit Ordinance. PayPal Park has been the home of many great events over the past decade. However, unpermitted peddlers often end up in areas that make it difficult for fans to enter and exit the stadium safely, in terms of ingress and egress issues. This ordinance amendment will allow for a more comprehensive way of enforcement that puts public safety first for peddlers and fans alike. Therefore, we support the staff's recommendation and urge the passing of the ordinance amendment to facilitate a safe and more organized environment for both peddlers and our local community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, esteemed councilmembers. My name's Armando Ricardes, and I am here to advocate in behalf of our local street food vendors. As you heard, I am with Prosperity Lab, and we have had great success in mentoring and helping street food vendors apply for their permits, guide them through the whole process, and with the Health Department. However, resources are needed, along with collaboration from the City Finance Department, Police Department, and County Health. This would allow us to process their applications in a timely manner. Also, the Micro Home Kitchen Operation Program from the State of California will allow them to use their house as a commensary kitchen and allow them to vent out of a cart if the cart is approved by the city's planning department. Also, outreach before enforcement is crucial, so that we don't disrupt the ability for these vendors to, that rely on their food sales in order to play, pay the rent and lose their dwelling place. I'd also like to highlight three street food vendors who were out there selling, peddling out in the streets, and now have their brick and mortars. One of them is Paleta Planeta. They were out there selling, you know, you had the honor of doing their ribbon cutting. Also, Rosario's Tacos, another ribbon cutting that the mayor came to, and Pollos Asados El Trebo. They came through our program, we helped them, and now they own their brick and mortars and employ plenty of people. So I'd strongly urge you guys to, for, for one is outreach before enforcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Debbie DeGudis. I am the Managing Director of Christmas in the Park, and I work for Santa, and thank you all for your time today. And thank you for considering this amendment. Very simply, families tell us that they feel unsafe coming downtown during the holidays. The sidewalks are crowded, they can't negotiate through the narrow passageways that are created by the unlicensed and unpermitted vendors. It becomes unsafe. We are pleased that the ordinance allows legitimate vendors to operate within a fair and structured framework. We support the proposed measures that include the education, outreach, and phased enforcement that transitions these unlicensed vendors into licensed vendors. I also want to say there were several times last year during Christmas in the Park where I could not get Santa from the hotel to the park because the sidewalks were so crowded. Even when I was saying, hey, Santa coming through, I could not get him safely through. We had to walk out on the street. And if Santa has to do that, that means our kids and our families have to do that, too. So thank you very much.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Thank you to everybody who came out and spoke today, very thoughtful comments all around. Want to, once again, just express my gratitude to our chief and Police Department, Nancy, you and your team. I know Nathan Donato Weinstein has been very on top of this, Kalen Kenny and Code Enforcement, and the Santa Clara County Department of Health, who's been a great partner in this effort. When you compare, and you showed the before-and-after photos, but I think we all acknowledged in our Downtown Safety and Security Ad Hoc Committee, after 2023, was quite concerned and realized that during the holidays, we had some very serious obstructions of public right-of-way, potential noncompliance with ADA, I mean, just risks all around, and knew that we needed to do something. I think the team did a really nice job this year of collaborating across departments, across jurisdictions, with our county partners, to take a very proactive approach, do a lot of upfront engagement and outreach, but set clear boundaries and do the appropriate enforcement to keep everybody safe. We still had vendors. We still had a number of successful vendors, but we had safe, clean sidewalks and accessible public right-of-way, and it was a much better experience for everyone. So I think, I think we have a model here. I really appreciate the updates to the ordinance. Thank you to Sharks, Quakes, Christmas in the Park, and other stakeholders who have been communicative with, with us here at City Hall and voiced your concerns, but also helped collaborate as we craft the right balance, because we certainly want to enable folks to be entrepreneurial. It's one of the great things about our city is we've welcomed immigrants from all over the world. We have an incredible entrepreneurial spirit. We have 60,000 small businesses. I was just reading Prosperity Lab has had 12 entrepreneurs complete the Mesa Redonda program, and have, you have 14 more entrepreneurs in the current cohort, which is awesome. So helping people get on that path to sustainable, successful businesses, and hopefully eventually getting into their own brick and mortar space, as you were highlighting, I think is, is super inspiring and something we want to enable, but we also know that there are some real serious safety risks out there that have to be managed. So I think, I think this strikes the right balance of helping people comply with all relevant laws, from public right-of-way to public health, all of which are important, but creating pathways for entrepreneurs to still sell their products and, and be successful and thrive in our city. So appreciate all the staff work on this. I know it's going to be a continuing and evolving issue. It's not like overnight we're going to have fixed this everywhere in the city. I also want to acknowledge that. But I think we're making progress, and I'm grateful to everybody who has moved us forward here. Let me turn to colleagues, and I'll start with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to thank Chief and Nancy for their dedication and work on this amendment to our Peddler Permit Ordinance. I think that the intent behind this policy is clear, to protect public safety and support our brick and mortar businesses and other festivities, like, of course, our SAP Center or our other stadiums, our Earthquake Stadium as well. I just want to make sure that as we take this step, we also recognize the realities faced by many of our street vendors, hard-working individuals trying to earn an honest living. The unfortunate truth is that while some bad actors disregard public safety and create unsafe conditions, they do not represent all of our street vendors. And there are vendors who are simply trying to make an honest living and want to comply with the law, but they often face barriers that make it difficult to navigate. And that's why I give a shout-out to Prosperity Labs. I was able to give them a small, modest grant this last budget cycle. Definitely recommend to the, the councilmembers, if you haven't met with Prosperity Labs, meet with them, especially if you do have concerns about vending in your district, because they do do a great job. And I know Armando leads a lot of that work, too, so shout-out to you, Armando. But at the same time, we also must acknowledge that vendors themselves face risks. In just the last month, two vendors of my district have been assaulted while trying to make living, make a living, simply just selling flowers on the street. And I think this underscores the complexities of this issue and the fact that we need a balanced approach, when that enforces regulations while recognizing the difficulty and realities many vendors have to navigate. That's why I do appreciate that this ordinance doesn't simply just focus on enforcement, but also removes barriers for peddlers who want to operate legally, because I truly believe that if given the means, many of these individuals, if not all of them, will operate in a legal fashion. By limiting the costly insurance requirement and replacing it with an indemnification agreement, the city is making permits more accessible. Additionally, partnerships with organizations like Prosperity Labs provide training in Spanish to help vendors navigate the permitting process. We may have to explore Vietnamese, though, by the way, Armando, if we could look into that, that'd be great. But as we move forward, I urge us to continue balancing enforcement with compassion. Of course, we need to hold bad actors accountable, but we also need to recognize that we are supporting those who play by the rules and just, or working people who probably work multiple jobs just to put food on the table. All right? So I just want to make sure that our enforcement is fair, our policies are inclusive, and that we keep working to support all small businesses with storefronts and street vendors who contribute to the vibrancy of our city, you know? And just be mindful, if, if you are putting up, setting up an event, be mindful what the barriers are to participate in those events, making sure that you're looking at diverse vendors, right? You know, from different backgrounds, right? These type of immigrant vendors deserve to be in all communities, deserve to be at all events. And so I don't want people to think, oh, we don't want those type of vendors in our area or in an event that we're planning. But I know that's not the case with many of you. But unfortunately, we do see demonization. And then, as you know already, we're hearing a lot of things from the federal government targeting immigrants. So with that, with, with the combination of those sentiments, it creates a unsafe environment for our, our community. But thank you. I do, I do have a question, I guess a couple of questions. Why are we using the language "peddler" instead of "street vendor"?
I believe that's the historical term that's been used in the ordinance, and so we're amending the ordinance but maybe not changing the name. Nancy, am I correct on that?
That's correct, and, and we can double-check with the attorneys.
Okay. I just want to make sure it doesn't, like, allude to illegal activities. I mean, I just Googled it and said a peddler is somebody who sells illicit items. That could just be Google. That's why Google isn't necessarily facts. But I just want to make sure that the language we're using to describe these people, which I know you guys are doing.
Yes.
I just wanted to, to, to highlight that. And then I know this is set, like, sites. Are we, because I know we've had conversations about Arlady, Guadalupe, and I'm sure there's other sites in the area where we need to be sensitive and strategic. What, how are those conversations going to shape out? Is there still going to be discussions around that?
Indeed. And, and we recognize the things that you mentioned. Those are all super valid points. This is a gateway opportunity for many people for, for, you know, an economic better life and et cetera. And so that, our, our desire is not to shut down
our area or in an event that we're planning, but I know that's not the case with many of you. But unfortunately, we do see demonization, and then, as you know already, we're hearing a lot of things from the federal government targeting immigrants. So with that, with, with the combination of those sentiments, it creates a unsafe environment for our, our community. But thank you. I do, I do have a question, I guess a couple of questions. Why are we using the language "peddler" instead of "street vendor"?
I believe that's the historical term that's been used in the ordinance, and so we're amending the ordinance, but maybe not changing the name. Nancy, am I correct on that?
That's correct, and, and we can double check with the attorneys.
Okay, I just want to make sure it doesn't like allude to illegal activities. I mean, I just Googled it and said a peddler is somebody who sells illicit items. That could just be Google, that's why Google isn't necessarily facts, but I just want to make sure that the language we're using to describe these people, which I know you guys are doing.
Yes.
I just wanted to, to, to highlight that. And then I know this is set, like sites, are we, because I know we've had conversations about Our Lady of Guadalupe, and I'm sure there's other sites in the area where we need to be sensitive and strategic. What, how are those conversations going to shape out? Is there still going to be discussions around that?
Indeed, and, and we recognize the things that you mentioned. Those are all super valid points. This is a gateway opportunity for many people, for, for, you know, an economic better life and et cetera. And so that, our, our desire is not to shut down street vending, period, and, and truly, I mean, our bandwidth to be able to expand that kind of enforcement.
Yeah.
Citywide is, is pretty limited, so I think, just practically speaking, that's, shouldn't be a huge concern.
Okay, great. What, what about, because I know this, this policy, my understanding is it's only for a few set local areas like downtown, or is that citywide? Is it citywide?
The, the rules would apply citywide, but I'm just, just pointing out that, you know, it took a tremendous effort on our part to do the enforcement just in these few locations.
Downtown, okay.
And there were factors about those locations that made them prime for us to work, you know, the ability to, you know, first of all, they were especially hazardous, because like at SAP Center, you've got just a few exit points, and you've got a whole bunch of people funneling into an area where the sidewalk was being blocked by vendors. I mean, it was pretty egregious. Christmas in the Park, the same way, there was, there was such a large crowd, and then when you had the streets and sidewalks blocked to the extent that they were, it just really was a hazard, and so I think that's why we focused there.
Okay, so is it, I guess, the responsibility of the person putting on the event to reach out to you guys for enforcement, or how does that, how does that go about, if it's outside of these, I guess, areas where you focused on initially?
We'll, we'll collaborate with anybody that's got a large event going and make them aware of these rules and regulations, should this, should this be passed, or the, you know, the current regulations for that matter. And again, we want to work with all the vendors to help them become permitted, make sure they understand how to get to that point, and whatever we can do to assist.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate you guys taking my questions. I also appreciate my colleagues listening, you know, to my, to my statement, and then I guess I'll, I'll move in support of the amendment.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Salas, great. Thank you, council member. Let's go to council member Duane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Nancy and Chief Joseph, and including our fire department and the health department that, that collaborated to, to make this happen. And, and to council member Ortiz, I agree with, with a lot what he, he said, and including, maybe we can change the, the peddler into a, you know, non-permitted vendors, or whatever other wording that would make it versus sound like a peddler, if you will. So this ordinance amend to streamline the enforcement by aligning the best practice, ensuring the public safety to these unpermitted vendor. And I think it's important, as you can see, Christmas in the Park and many, many other events that I've, I've gone to, that, you know, including the San Jose Tom McHenry Convention Center, Plaza de Cesar Chavez, SAP Center, PayPal Park, Excite Park, Shark Eyes, Powell Stadium, the CEFCU Stadium, the Tech CU, including the West Wind Capital Flea Market, where, and many other location that have serious public safety concern. I have vendors that really taken over the street, blocking hydrant, being out in the middle of the street, people get run over, and we're not only talking about the safety, we're also talking about public safety regarding the food, right? There, there could be fire hazard. If, if one particular vendor is some type of, of violation that could cause two, three people to get sick, or more, that, that could be a huge problem for our, our community. And I think our responsibility to make sure that we, we, you know, protect our public, number one. And secondly, some of these vendor do block our, our exit and entrance, including ADA access, and I think it's important that we look at all side. By, by, by this amendment, it's encourage our unpermitted vendors to obtain permits, right? Remove the barrier to permit, to permitting, and provide tools to operate within the legal framework within the city. And I think with Prosperity Lab, you know, the program called Mesa Redonda, I believe it's called the incubation kitchen, right? You know, it's incredible that we can, can help not only educate, but help these vendors to, to have permits in order to operate. And not only that, I, I met multiple, multiple non-permitted vendors in my district, and I tell them, I go, listen, we have a program, we can help you to get your permit, and then you can make a heck of a lot more money, when you can go like, for example, the night market, the Ted Festival, Villa Caye, you name it. Those are, they can have access to thousands and thousands of vendors, and I, and I believe that we, we should put some funding in, in there, and, and, and we're not talking about, this is not about penalizing our immigrant to make a living. It's about empowering and inspiring to follow the process. For example, at the Tropicana, a lot of our immigrant restaurants and shops there, they operate, but they can't compete with the non-permitted vendors. Dennis Fong actually allows some of those food trucks and some of those vendor, and they're permitted, and it's create an environment almost like over Mexico. It's fantastic. But I do understand the fact that our immigrant businesses or suffer, they can't compete against some of these non-permitted vendor, because they're brick and mortar, they have to pay the rent, their insurance, their liability. For example, if you have a vendor out there selling flowers at a, a, maybe Class C type of flower, that you sell five or $10 per bunch, where our business is getting Class A, and it costs them a lot of money in order to provide the best quality products, they can't compete. And, and I, I get complaints from immigrant businesses that their business have dropped And, and it's concerning, and I don't want them to go out of business, because if, if you support one, you, you're not supporting the other, somebody's going to go out of business, right? And we're here as a community to live among each other, to support each other, to make a living. And it's a win-win. I believe this, this program, it's a win-win combination. We're not banning, banning people from operating, but we're just setting a guideline where they can and where they cannot do. And, you know, I, I empower Prosperity Labs and council member Ortiz and others, if you see our non-permit vendors, hey, tell them, we're here to support them, we're here to help them to make a better living, to support their family. So this approach, it's create a safer, a more accessible environment, and that while supporting our, our vendors, to become fully permitted, to make our public safer, and legally operating within our city parameters. So with that, council member Ortiz, did, did you move my memorandums or just?
Sure, what's in your memorandum? Sorry? Is there, what is your memorandum doing?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just, let me bring it up and, give me a split.
Oh. Happy to, if it's mostly keep it in there for the record?
Yes.
Yeah, happy to, happy to include it.
And, and the rec, as I understand it, is moving the staff recommendation. There's no additional direction. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and my memorandum is just merely moving the staff recommendation.
Well, happy to include it.
Okay.
And who, that was councilor Salas, you okay? Including councilor Duane's memo? It doesn't add any new direction to staff.
Okay, as long, it does, yeah, when I read it, I read the background, it implied that it extended it to the whole city, which it does anyway, it sounds like, so I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. Sounds like the maker of the motion, the secondor, okay, including councilor Duane's memo? That's what I saw. Okay, great. Councilor Duane, did you have any other comments?
No, I, I just want to say thank you very much for your support. It's a win-win for the city, it's a win for our businesses, it's a win for our non-permitted vendors to have a, a process and access to our city, and be able to operate and make a great living right here in the city of San Jose. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let's go to council member Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy and Chief, thank you for the report and the effort to follow prior council direction on this item. I know we've got budget limitations, but I would and will in the future push for broader enforcement and greater accountability of our vendor community. This is an issue I heard about loudly and clearly on the campaign trail, having seen it with my own eyes when it's gone wrong, and definitely know this has plagued our sports and tourism venues. But the issue really does extend citywide. It extends to our parks, neighborhood business district, private property owners who don't know their rights, and Chief, I'm going to get to that in just a few minutes. But I just, it's sort of greater context, and council member Salas, listen up. Do I have it right that we're amending the city's Muni code to address the proliferation of unpermitted vendors, but that we will only be able to focus on certain events and venues due to budget priorities?
Council member, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. So I want to just point out, this isn't just about being unpermitted, and some if, and, and absolutely not all vendors, and I'm very sensitive to that, but we do see aggressive tactics, liquor being sold to minors, and blocking sidewalks on public and private properties. And while I'm disappointed in the limitations of where we will proactively enforce, I'm going to support the recommendation on the floor, as it's critical to protect economic engines of the city like SAP, PayPal, McHenry Convention Center, Excite Ballpark, Plaza de Cesar Chavez, schools, farmers markets, and special events. But I have a few questions. On page two of the March 3rd memo, bullet number one, requires food peddlers to obtain and display a valid permit from SJPD and county. So what is the plan for non-food vendors? Like, you know, the gnomes and stuffed animals, flower vendors and the like?
Thank you very much for the question. Working with the non-food vendors, permitting is somewhat easier. They're great candidates for working with Prosperity Labs. They, the work with the county isn't required. The work walking through the city's permit process is what's needed.
So they, they do get permitted?
Not all of them are, but we're trying to work with them, Prosperity Labs is working with them to get permitted through SJPD.
But that's not part of the ordinance, and it's not part of what's on the floor today?
What's in the ordinance already is sufficient.
Okay, cool. So in the food vendors, where can we expect to see displayed permits? And will the placement be consistent, or it'll be like, you know, a lot of us with our front license plates, Chief, or we got them in our trunk, or our, you know, dashboard somewhere?
They're on, they're on the cart. I don't know that there's a uniform application, but they should be displayed on the cart.
Okay. Can we, I know we're not asking for further direction, I mean, that seems to me like, if we're asking them to be displayed, that means they need to be available, readily available to a police officer walking by, or a health inspector coming by, right?
Correct.
So perhaps on the, the box itself, or whatever the apparatus and, you know, that they're using to sell their items?
And we can follow up and, and understand from PD's point of view what the specific language is.
Okay. On bullet two, no peddling is allowed within 500 feet of a city permitted temporary special event. Does this include private property owners cooperating with community organizations, business associations, and promoters using their property to host events?
Thank you very much for the question. This is a focus on public space.
Okay, so if, you know, somewhere on the Alameda, there's a special event in a private property that is, you know, fed by a sidewalk, a public sidewalk, if vendors came onto that private property, this ordinance would not apply to non-permitted vendors?
So if the vendors went onto private property without permission, then they would be trespassing, but if the vendors are on the private property with the consent of the owner, in other words, the owner invites them on and is desirous of having them there, then we would not be taking enforcement, actually.
All right, so you walked right into my question. So what do private property owners do if they experience unwelcome vending on their properties?
They should, they should call us.
They should call the police?
Yes.
911, 311?
I would call the non-emergency number 277-8900, because that wouldn't be an emergency unless it escalated to some other level of, you know, violence or something like that, but it would be a trespass. I mean, you can't go on any property without permission, whether you're a vendor or not.
And just FYI, this is a very common complaint that we're hearing at our district office. So I just want to make sure we're able to then turn around and let people know, and I understand this is not a, you know, a number one priority, but nonetheless, people need to know what their rights are in those cases. So, all right, I got another one for you. What if someone is pulled over on the side of the road with their trailer barbecue, open flames next to trees and bush, you know, literally like right on the side of the road, which I see pretty typically in one particular area, and then people have to, you know, park illegally to get to that vendor? What do we do?
So there's a whole bunch of issues there. So if, all these things would apply in terms of requiring a permit from the city to be a peddler, or a vendor, rather, if that's the term we're using, and I, and they would have to have a county health permit if they were serving, selling food. If they're parked illegally, there would be parking regulations. If their customers parked illegally, they would also be in violation of, of vehicle code sections related to parking. So I mean, all those things you mentioned bring up potentially a host of potential violations.
So that's a 311, non-emergency call?
Not, so remember, not, 311 is not going to get you to the police, and I know that's a branding disaster.
Sorry, I don't know why I keep saying 311.
But 277-8900 would be, would be appropriate.
I've got two, I've got 311 on my mind, not that we're going to add this to our, you know, one of our buttons necessarily. All right, so did you have any more on that?
I was just reminded that if, if there was a fire hazard, that would escalate it, obviously.
Yeah.
You could call 911, and, you know, the fire department potentially would need to be involved if it were a fire hazard, an open flame.
Well, we're getting to that time of year when it may be, if they continue to be in this one spot, it will definitely be a greater fire hazard. So Nancy, I know you're kind of running out the door at the end of the month, but what can the Office of Economic Development do? You have so many client relationships with our small business community, which are a lot of the businesses that we hear from, who are like, I think, council member Duane just pointed out, you've got a vendor who's 50 feet from the front door of a brick and mortar building that is a restaurant, paying tax and, you know, wages and so forth. What do they do? We heard one of the things from the chief about what they do in case they come on their private property, but can we help educate our small business community what their rights are, and what our small business property owner rights are? I think it should be in the toolkit somewhere about what they, what they have available to them.
Thank you very much, council member. We agree. There are outreach efforts, staff who sees vendors who are in that situation, we do speak to them, and then when there are events, as there are more staff out, those efforts intensify.
So then I think it also would be good, because I think OCA and events fall under your shop as well, to make sure that those applicants that are doing events on private property, that they understand what their rights are relative to, they have an event hosted on private property with a city permit, and unpermitted vendors, or vendors that are not sort of paying into their, you know, their event, show up to sell. I think that would be a helpful, you know, kind of piece, too. Mayor, am I out of time? My light is broken.
Go ahead, let's finish this.
All right, just one more thing. On page two of the actual ordinance, I don't know if it got changed, but it listed a Villa Stadium, not PayPal Park, that should be modified. And, you know, I, I know I've been hard on this topic, but I do want to point out that we're, you know, the proactive work of Armando and Mimi at Prosperity Labs. know, the proactive work of Armando and Mimi at Prosperity Lab, I do want to recognize the effort to try to help small business folks legitimize their business, you know, helping them understand, you know, health code, getting them permitted, and giving them an opportunity to be small business entrepreneurs. I applaud you for the work, and will continue to support that. So with that, I'll be supporting it, but those are my, you know, big concerns about these issues. Thank you.
Appreciate all the thoughtful questions. Let's go now to Councilmember Kameh.
Thank you, and thank you for working through a very difficult situation. I know that there's a lot of progress that has been made, and, you know, at the end of the day, it is about safety and security for all, all of the, everyone involved. So I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the partners sort of coming together. I'm delighted that the Health Department is also a partner in this. I share some of the same concerns that have been mentioned in terms of, not just in these particular areas, but throughout the city where brick-and-mortar, I've gotten a lot of complaints from those who, right in front of their establishment, has someone in the right-of-way, public right-of-way, you know, selling things that, you know, no one comes to respond or say anything, and, you know, I do understand that it is a matter of resources, but some of them are extremely blatant. I have vendors in the parks, and some of you know very clearly what I'm talking about, because this vendor is so blatant, they bring their own porta-potties, and establish themselves over the weekend, so they're there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it's sort of like, you know, you tell them, you know, you can't be here, and for the moment, they'll say, okay, okay, okay. But, you know, it's a constant vigilance, constant vigilance, and I know, I appreciate the rangers that have come out, and I think that, you know, the good news is that so far no one has gotten ill. But we don't want to wait to the point of having someone ill, and then all of a sudden there's some kind of incident or breakout or whatever. So I want to appreciate Prosperity Labs, because I think that, you know, you do provide the pathway to compliance and permitting, so thank you so much, and, you know, I know that you and Mimi have done quite a bit of work, and going back to what Councilmember Ortiz said, you know, we really have to look for removing the barriers to being legal, and, you know, working with some of the vendors that, you know, have these barriers. So I think that that is a good pathway. But I also know that it is important in large areas where there are lots of crowds that we need to focus on, but there's this emerging number of vendors in the public right-of-way that I think we need to curtail, because I don't know how it is in other districts, but it's growing in my district, right? And I just, I just think that we need to, and I will continue to give out the Prosperity Lab flyers, and informing those who are out there that, you know, you need a permit. And we'll work through those channels, but I do see it as a growing thing, and I think that we need to continue to let the word out that, you know, there are ways to get, to be legal, and not go through this, because if something does happen, and we know that they're there, I think that that becomes a problem. So I will support this. I know that there's a lot of work that's been done, and I appreciate it. I mean, the pictures are stark from '23 to '24, so thank you so much for working together. And Nancy, thank you so much for all of your work, and certainly everyone involved.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me turn now to Vice Mayor Foley.
I really can't add much beyond what's already been said, but I think it's really important that we make sure that we're focusing on the safety of people who are coming in and out of the various venues that we're talking about, where the protecting the small businesses who have permits, who have brick-and-mortar, we need to make sure that they thrive, too. So, but I am concerned about how your police department will be able to police this activity, because it could be a lot of work, particularly during the holidays or graduations. We see a lot of vendors at graduation parks when they're selling things that the schools are selling, too. So there's a lot of competition going on from permitted, unpermitted, I don't know. But I do have a question about permitted vendors still blocking entrances, blocking egress and ingresses, even though they have a permit, they're still not allowed to do that. So the venue can pick up the phone, call you, and say, do something? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. That would be the second bullet point under the third section, the 6.54, 0.405, blocking or obstructing the free movement of pedestrians or vehicles, or blocking a path of egress from a building. That would, I think that would cover the circumstances you're describing.
Yeah, I think this is really an important ordinance. It's really important that we move in this direction. So I want to thank you and Nancy for being here. Nancy, in particular, I want to thank you, because this is your last presentation, I think, and it's truly been an honor to work with you over the past few years that I've been here. You've accomplished so much with the city. I hope you really enjoy the next chapter of your life, whatever it is. And as a D9 resident, I hope to continue to see you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Salas.
Yeah, Chief Joseph, I just wanted to ask you. Councilmember Mulcahy brought up the fact that people are selling alcohol. That is, that's already against the law, but have you prosecuted any of those? I know it's happening downtown quite a bit, and some of these street vendors.
Yes, Councilmember, so any law violation that's not strictly vendor-related, we still have the ability to enforce criminally. So selling alcohol is a criminal violation. If they sell marijuana without, you know, not in a licensed dispensary, that would be a criminal violation, something like that. So we can still take criminal enforcement action, and we have in those cases.
And you actually have, in other words, if they've got it hidden in their cooler, and then they open and close it, are you able to challenge them or not, realistically?
We are. It's something that's a little more challenging, because they're not going to do it typically in front of a uniformed police officer. So they either have to be unaware of our presence, and we see them do it, or use undercover officers, which we have done. We have different details that work in plainclothes, and they have made those arrests.
Okay, thank you. And then one question. Nancy, you're leaving. I'm so sorry to see you go. It's been great working with you over the years, even before I was in this position. But I did want to ask you a question. Another thing, Councilmember Mulcahy called me about two weeks ago and said, you should see Cesar Chavez Park. It is packed with these illegal vendors, but they have tents up and electric lights. And I went down and checked, and it truly is like, almost like a strip mall food court. Is there any law against the generators that a lot of these illegal vendors can pull out? Is that, and I ask for two reasons. One, because there are some pretty big situations going on at times, but also, we fashion ourselves as a green city, and every time I see a generator, smell a generator, and listen to a generator, and I know that it's more emissions-intensive than anything in this city, I just wonder, has that ever been dealt with?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Vending and generators is something that, through the permitting process, if there's a checkbox for that, and if you're going to need a generator, there's a fire review? So there should be, and you're right, as part of the analysis, a lot of conditions proliferate. But there is a process. This regularly comes up at Japantown for Oban, to make sure, and the fire department is very engaged, so that there is a path for that.
Is that on their permit? In other words, if they have a generator, but the permit shows something on it that says that, in addition, it's been approved for the generator?
On the application for the...
But not on the permit that the police see?
I don't know the answers to that.
I wonder if you could work on that, just in the last day or two. No, but I mean, for staff, that would be pretty important, because, I mean, even, there should probably be an additional fee, because, you know, greenhouse gases have a value, and there's, those things run 24/7 sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate you pushing. You're going to make Nancy earn every last dollar with her remaining hours here. That's good. All right, Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I really appreciate the comments about how important outreach before enforcement is, especially to save these small business owners, you know, their profits, and so really want to emphasize the work that we're doing to ensure that there is appropriate and sufficient outreach before enforcement. I'm also curious about when we might be able to hear an update about this item. I saw that there is funding, as I understand it, an allocation of $20,000 to support efforts of folks maybe losing money. Is that what I'm understanding here? On page five of the memo, when there are food or flammable items that must be disposed of immediately, there is an allocation of $20,000 from the unpermitted peddler pilot budget that has been provided for this effort. So is that funding going to people who lose profits or items as a result of SJPD involvement?
Yes, I think we're going to, Councilmember, call our subject matter expert, Kalen Kenny, to answer that particular question. I do know that we had $20,000 set aside for our specific enforcement efforts at SAP, to make sure that we had the funding to take the equipment and to actually store it, and I think that funding was associated with that. But Kalen can confirm or correct.
Thank you, Kalen Kenny, Assistant to the City Manager in the City Manager's Office. Thank you, Councilmembers, so much for the question. So that $20,000 has been used to set up the infrastructure necessary to impound the equipment, so we've used that for a storage container to house the equipment that we've impounded. We're also using it to facilitate property reunification with folks, so that funding is not going directly to those folks who are having their property impounded, but they are receiving information for how they can collect that property. So when the police department, you know, folks are very well aware beforehand that this is a potential consequence, right? The folks that have been working with us in the police department have been out there for months, and have built a really great rapport with the folks who are coming to SAP Center to vend. So those folks are very aware of the efforts there. The majority of folks have since, you know, ceased that behavior, but the folks who are still around and continuing to pose these dangerous actions, if their card is impounded, they're given information about how to reclaim that card, and they're able to do that at no cost for 90 days. And so we have had one vendor come and retrieve their card back at no cost.
Thank you for the clarification on how that $20,000 is spent. I thought the slide that shows how much vendors have lost was quite jarring, and so I'm curious if there will be an update to this presentation after, you know, time has passed to, again, see where we're at with the outreach efforts, and if it's been able to save some of these vendors, because it demonstrates we've done a good job in outreach, and there are more people who are becoming permitted, rather than losing their items by being unpermitted.
So, Councilmember, we will be, staff will be presenting to the CED Committee, I believe, in June, as part of our annual downtown report, providing an update on these efforts, and we can share any new information with you at that time.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Dwan, did you have your hand up again?
Yes, I do. My brain just went off there for a moment. I lost the question. But anyway, we'll just move forward. Sorry, I had it in my head for a moment there, and it's gone.
No problem. We've had a full agenda. Okay. I think we've exhausted questions and comments. We have a motion on the floor. Tony, let's vote. Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you again, Nancy. We are on to our final agendized item of the day, which is item 3.5. This is a public hearing on the status of the city's vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and obstacles in the hiring process pursuant to Assembly Bill 2561. We, I have a brief script I need to read, so, actually, I just read the first part of it. So this public hearing is now open. We understand that city staff plans to limit their presentation to approximately 10 to 15 minutes, and then each of the city's recognized employee organizations was asked to do the same. So we will hear first from the city's Human Resources Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Aram Kyung-jun. I'm the Director of Human Resources in the City Manager's Office of Employee Relations. The reason for this public hearing is a change in the law, or the adoption of a new law that became effective earlier this year. So this is the first presentation of its kind that we are making, but it will be an annual ritual that we will have to comply with moving forward. The bill that I'm talking about is Assembly Bill 2561, which is built around a number of findings that the legislature made, including that job vacancies and local government are widespread and a significant problem, that they impact public service delivery, and subject employees to heavier workloads, and that there is a statewide interest in making sure that public agencies are staffed appropriately. So in light of those findings, the legislation makes for mandates, including a requirement that the public agency hold a hearing prior to the adoption of the budget to discuss the status of vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, as well as any obstacles in the hiring process. If for any bargaining unit the vacancy rate exceeds 20%, additional requirements for information sharing are added. And finally, recognized employee organizations are allowed to make presentations in the course of the hearing. The main slide I want to talk to you about today is our vacancy rate, which as of December 31, 2024, was 9.95%. And as of today, is actually slightly lower. We have made additional gains, and it stands at 9.42%. This is impressive on a number of levels. It's rare to see a city of this size, or any meaningful size, boast a vacancy rate below 10% in the post-pandemic era. Frankly, I wish I could take credit for this, but I only got here last month, so credit really belongs to the City Manager and her leadership, to my predecessor, Jennifer Shembry, to the City Manager's Office of Communications, and all the stakeholder departments that collaborated with HR, the Assistant Director for HR, Kim Jackson, the Deputy Director, Rashid Hurd, Lynn Lee, Division Manager of Employment, Randy Perry, the Project Manager over Learning and Development and Pipeline Activities, and of course, the mighty HR Department. This is impressive for two main reasons. First, in order to move the needle on vacancy rates, you have to do better than your attrition rate, which is your separation rate. So as people are departing the organization because of retirements, resignations, or terminations, there's already a certain number of vacancies that need to be filled. So in order to bring down the... So, in order to bring down the vacancy rate, you have to hire above the separation rate. So, that's one challenge that the city had to overcome to reach these numbers. Secondly, and a factor that is not talked about as much, is that not only are you compensating for separations, but if the city adds positions, you are additionally having to account for the added positions, which also include, which also increase vacancy rates. And over the course of the last few years, the number of positions that the city has added has been in the hundreds. So, in order to reach this number, the 9.95 number, and now the 9.42 number, all of those obstacles had to be overcome. The other thing that I want to mention in terms of the work that the HR Department does that isn't even recognized in this rate is the internal hiring that gets done. The promotional hiring where folks leave one city position and move up to another, and then they have to be backfilled. That's not even captured in this rate, and neither are all the temporary, as well as seasonal, employees that we hire in order to provide additional services for the, for city residents. Now, how did this happen? This did not all happen magically or accidentally. It was thanks to a comprehensive campaign directed by the City Manager. It was coordinated by HR in conjunction with the Office of Communications and Stakeholder Departments. And its main focus was setting hiring goals, specific hiring goals, that departments were accountable for, along with HR. And the approach wasn't just singular, but multi-tiered and multi-pronged. It included digital and social media, radio and print advertising, partnerships with groups, educational institutions, and trade associations, and a very healthy amount of in-person recruitment at college and career fairs. Now, turning to the other aspect of the law, which requires disclosure as to groups, bargaining units that have more than a 20% vacancy rate, I'm thrilled to say 10 of the 12 bargaining units have vacancy rates that are far from 20. They are actually below 11%. Five are below 9%, and a couple are even in the 5% and 6% range. With regard to the two units that have vacancy rates over 20%, these are smaller bargaining units. IBW has 79 FTE, and Peace Officers, Park Rangers Association has slightly over 16 FTE. So, some of the vacancies, some of the high vacancy rates is due to the fact that there are very few allocated positions to begin with. So, even a single vacancy can have outsized effect. If we look, for instance, at the Park Ranger vacancies, there are 11 budgeted positions, and only three are vacant. Or Senior Park Ranger, there are three positions, and one is vacant. So, automatically, that accounts for a 33% vacancy rate, but it's really one FTE. Sorry, the other area in which we have had challenges are with the IB classification of electrician. But there have been a number of efforts underway to fill both the electrician classes and the Park Ranger series. So, the electrician classes have been filled at the airport. There are active recruitments happening for positions in public works and transportation. And there is a longer-term solution being contemplated, which is the establishment of an apprenticeship program. And conversations are already in progress with regard to that. With the Park Ranger, there have been multiple recruitments completed, and we are starting a new cycle, pretty much with Park Ranger as well as Senior and Supervisor, and all of those will have opened by the end of this week. Speaking broadly about recruitment and retention efforts, I will categorize them into three main buckets. The first one being marketing and outreach campaigns. And these, as I mentioned, have been multifaceted. They include digital and social media presence, not just Facebook and Instagram, but specialized tools like internet, I'm sorry, LinkedIn Recruiter, print and radio advertising, and other terrestrial forms of ads like bus backs, the partnerships that I mentioned with trade and educational organizations and associations, and various in-person events. The second bucket of focus for competitive recruitment and retention efforts is wages and benefits. And the recent cost of living adjustments that the city has negotiated with its bargaining units have been on the higher side, with many bargaining units receiving 6% in the first year of their deal, 5%, a combination of 4 plus 1 in the second year, and a guaranteed 3.5 in year three. There have also been salary adjustments to more than 50 classifications to mitigate either being out of market or there being compaction between classifications. That means the separation between a class and the next higher class becomes too narrow. We also offer a very generous benefits package, including 15 paid holidays, a bevy of insurance coverage, medical, dental, vision, vacation and sick leave, paid parental leave, and wellness and retirement plans as well. Finally, the third bucket has to do with internal process improvements in order to make retention and recruitment more competitive. A new hiring system, automation through NeoGov to ease the application process, updating class specifications in order to make them more relevant for vacancies and operational needs, reducing the number of clearance points or friction points between central HR and departments, and finally, a number of temporary positions in HR in order to bolster the vacancy reduction campaign. The legislation asks us to identify obstacles in the hiring process. And I want to identify some that are very broad and some that are very specific to this city. The broader shifts in the labor market have been coming for well over a decade, starting with the gig economy, the revisions to pension reform, as well as the effects of the pandemic and the great resignation. There's also an unspoken fact that has been materializing in HR, which is that the labor pool is shrinking, and this is a matter of fact. There are simply a higher number of jobs today than there were 20 years ago, thanks to new industries like AI, gaming, and a whole host of technologies. And at the same time, the available pool of workers is shrinking due to lower birth rates, due to the effects of the pandemic, due to reduced immigration rates. On a more local level, fiscal challenges are obviously an obstacle to hiring, depending on where the city budget is and how much allowance it does, and whether it requires slowdowns in hiring as we're in right now. And what I mean by impact on pipelines is if we slow down those processes and if we stop those processes, it is difficult to ramp up when the budget situation improves and the city is ready to hire at a more robust pace. Staff, HR staffing needs need to be considered. As I mentioned, there are a great number of responsibilities on the HR Department that are not captured in the vacancy rate, including seasonal hiring and filling vacancies that are created by promotions. And of course, competition with the private sector, particularly in the geography we find ourselves in and some of the tech industry that surrounds us. So, where does this leave us in terms of moving forward? Our focus is going to be on broadening the digital recruitment infrastructure that we currently have, becoming more of a presence on social media, and developing themed campaigns for hiring, doing further work in modifying job specifications to make them up-to-date and relevant, launching a new learning management system, or an LMS, that will provide a digital platform for a whole host of trainings, including a library of over 1,000 courses that is built in, meeting employees' wellness and safety needs by expanding the city's wellness program, and of course, doing all this with the cohesion of the One Team values, employee engagement, and championing employees. That concludes our presentation for today.
Great. Thank you, Aram, and to the entire city team for presenting. We are now going to hear from the recognized employee organizations. I know we have a number of them that plan to present today. So, we will proceed with, I don't know if there's a, I'm not aware of any preordained order. I believe in my notes, we have MEF first, actually. So, I was wrong about that. John, do you want to kick off? Okay. All right. So, whenever you all are ready, you may begin. John, your mic is, there you go. It's on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And thank you to the state legislature for giving us this unique opportunity. We're all new here, so bear with us while we figure this part out. Okay. I think we wanted to start off by saying, and I think you saw this in Aram's report, that we believe that Staff Up San Jose, the campaign that rallied so many of our city employees, is working, and that we need to keep up what we're doing there. I think we'll talk more a little bit later in our presentation about the importance of an investment in city employees. But we wanted to stress that this, what, the investment that you all made in city workers is starting to have an impact, and we're starting to see the benefits of that. And so, we want to keep that moving forward.
I think that's me. So, in this slide, we can see our vacancy rate since 2007, 2008. And if you look at the two yellow bars, you can see that our vacancy rate has dropped below 10% for the first time since 2012. So, just, you know, piggybacking off of what John said, it's a really tremendous thing to see our vacancy rate be below 10%, but especially considering the fact that it was up to 17% not only five years ago. And this just speaks to, again, the level of investment we've been able to make in our wages and benefits and being able to have good staff here. I think, next slide.
Yeah. And although we've made great strides in our vacancy rate, there's still more progress to be made around staffing. As shown in the graph below, we only started seeing vacancy rates to this degree beginning in 2012, when the vacancy rate more than doubled. Since then, the vacancy rate has averaged around 12%. Next slide. Moreover, based on data obtained from the Annual Report on City Services, the number of vacant positions in fiscal year 2324 were close to 700, which is still a significant number despite the lower-than-average vacancy rate. Next slide.
I want to pause here for a second also and just point out that, you know, we've had a lot of back and forth with the city over the years about how to accurately measure this number. And we want to just specify that these are, so, 693 FTE equivalencies, which is a distinction that the city prefers to make, but that the unions don't because we believe that this number is actually quite a bit higher when you're considering we have over 1,000 part-time employees and budgeted part-time positions that are, or a huge chunk of these vacancies are coming from. Those positions are equally as important as any other city worker. There are, there are rec leaders and our summer camp people, and, you know, there's a lot of folks that do a lot of important work, our lifeguards, that are part-time, and they're still suffering that vacancy crisis, but we're not capturing that with these numbers. But that's just only looking at FTE equivalencies, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And another piece to highlight as well is that the city of San Jose remains thinly staffed compared to other agencies. Again, according to the Annual Report on City Services, the city employs the fewest FTEs per 1,000 residents than any other large city for the 12th year in a row. And at the same time, the city employs 441 fewer full-time positions than 20 years ago. Next slide.
We didn't have the advantage of seeing the city's presentation that you just got a little bit earlier today, ahead of time. So, we looked at the, a previous version of this, a similar report that you all got around recruitment and retention strategies from February 1 of '23. And we wanted to walk through what we believe are some concerns that we have and some issues with that. I wanted to pause here for a moment. This is a quote that I think says a lot, and it's from that report and from, that after five years of service, the city is retaining only 60% of its employees. Or said another way, the city is losing about 40% of staff after five years of service. And I think that we're duly having a lot of important conversation around recruitment, which is important, but we're not having a very good conversation, I think, about retention, which is the same, the other side of the coin that is equally a part of this equation. So, the cost of getting retention wrong, sorry, is there a missing slide here? Yeah, well, it's okay. The cost of getting retention wrong, and this is according to documents cited by the city, and, you know, we're not, we're not making this up, or we're not cherry picking our sources. These are the sources that the city used. But according to NeoGov, which you just saw in the city's presentation, that each employee who leaves costs about a third of their annual salary, just in the burn and churn, the recruitment efforts to get new people in there, the training that has to happen after someone arrives, and all that. But best estimate is that that's calling about a third of the person's annual salary. So, if you take all of our vacancies and going back again, this is equals about, according to the city, we have a turnover rate of 11% per year to a recent report that, so, the cost on that, if you do the math, is about $36 million a year in turnover costs. We've asked the city in the past by way of an information request, how much are we, we've asked for this number, and they've said that there's no way to, they don't track this, or that it's not a number that is easily figureable. But according to their own sources, we think it is, and this is what we think it is. And that's $36 million a year, which is a pretty remarkable number. And it's a number that's pretty close to the budget shortfall that we're facing this year. And, look, there's no expectation that we're ever going to get to 0% turnover, right? But we can certainly do a lot better than 11%. And whatever you think the number is, whether it's 36 million or more or less, it's significant. And it's something that the city has a responsibility to do better with respect to retention. Oh, yeah. So, this was, this was...
Always go back to the previous slide.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And since we, yeah, so since we're speaking about turnover, we wanted to add another pain point towards recruitment and retention. And that is that the city is the only agency in the region that includes a non-pensionable rate in employees' final compensation calculation at the time of retirement. Both Local 21 and MEF members have a 5% non-pensionable, and IAFF has a 1%. This means that for a Local 21 member, for example, at the time of retirement, 5% of their final compensation is not calculated in their final compensation is not calculated into their pension. This is, of course, only if an employee chooses to stay with the city. If an employee decides to move to a different agency, the 5% nonpensionable disappears, but the city of San Jose still burdens the full cost of years of service, which quite literally incentivizes our staff with the most experienced to leave the city. And although the city has portrayed this as a cost-savings measure, the reality is that it has produced very little savings, and the only significant result is incentivizing staff to leave.
So this was the, this was a list presented to the city council recently about the city's retention strategies. I agree that they gave a slightly different list today, but I think that was also focused on, a lot on recruitment. But we just wanted to go through one by one of this list, because I think this list is designed to elicit from the city council that, hey, we're doing everything we can on retention, and we're working hard, and we have a plan, but we want to dig into this a little bit more. And obviously, so, sorry, of course, number one, we agree with, right? Of course, we do. General wage increases, investing in employees on the primary reason that people come to work every day and don't leave is important. On the special salary adjustments, you just heard the city reference those. Of course, those are important too, but we wouldn't be having to do so many of those. I think they referenced over 50 in the last year, and I think there were 50 the year before that. We wouldn't be having to do those so often and playing this whack-a-mole game if we were adequately just keeping up and being a leader on wages and benefits in the first place. I think, Krista, you got a few things?
Yeah. And I, just looking at the special salary adjustments methodology too, it only takes into consideration vacancy rates in the classification. So we could have a classification that experiences a ton of turnover, say 50%. If the vacancy rate is below 10%, the city doesn't evaluate or consider it as a candidate for a special salary adjustment. So we really are advocating that retention be considered as a part of the hiring efforts. You can't have, you know, it doesn't matter how many people you hire if you can't retain them, and we want that to be also considered when we're looking at classifications that need some more support to have them filled on a more long-term basis. Part of that, too, is just making sure we have institutional knowledge in classifications. And when we're churning people, or turning people over and over and over, we just don't have that essential information or essential knowledge being built out, and that really is a detriment to the services that we are providing.
I think finally, too, our special salary adjustments and the way that the city does them, we believe is flawed. The city only compares base wages and doesn't compare a review of total compensation, or at least does so so infrequently that it is not useful. In fact, it has remained a part of the city manager's report on collective, or, report on negotiations, I forget the exact title. You all have just approved it earlier this evening without any questions. But in that report, it includes every year, year after year, that part of what we should look at when comparing wages is a review of total compensation, not just wages. Yet, I can't point to the last time the city actually did a total compensation classification survey, which looked at, how do we compare with other cities, not just by base wages, but with everything else involved. A flexible workplace policy. We agree wholeheartedly that this is part of a good recruitment strategy. Unfortunately, only 18% at least of MEF staff, and I think probably less if we looked at the entire city, are able to take advantage of this. And we also would include the idea of 980s or 410s, different sorts of schedules, as key in being able to allow people the flexibility to have a work-life balance, address climate issues, relieve traffic congestion, and a lot of issues. I understand that the Silicon Valley Leadership Group has a, it's the recent buzz floating around to return everyone to work so that folks will go out and buy lunch at downtown restaurants. But I think if you compare the cost-benefit of that to the benefit of the worker having this benefit, we're already hearing, I know both of our unions are getting a lot of emails and communications of people talking about leaving and going to work for other places. If we pull back on that remote work, it's just the benefit that is afforded to people and quality of life is, can't be overstated.
Yeah. And our telework policy as it stands now, one of the major, or at the very top of the document lists that telework is an incentive for people to come work for the city of San Jose. It's also listed on our website as a way to attract people. I know we've talked a little bit about competing with the private sector in terms of benefits and wages, and telework is considered to be a major benefit and why people would want to stay with the city. You know, we also want to point towards the 2024, 2025 Cost Control Measure memo that went out in December that was from the CMO. And it indicated that office and space renovation should be paused as a means to save money. And we just want to call attention to the fact that if we do transition people to work in the office more days a week, more likely than not, we would have to reconfigure office spaces, cubicles, and that would cost money. So if we're being mindful about how we're entering this next fiscal year and being mindful of a potential budget shortfall, then we also want to be mindful of any additional costs that we would shoulder if we have to return people back to work more days.
Strategy four from the city is a mentoring program, and the city's claiming that its staff mentoring program is part of a retention strategy, but only 29 staff, according to an information request that we did, or less than 1% of staff are participating in this program. So we just have to call into question the, you know, how real is this as part of a retention strategy? Although, wonderful program, we wish more people could take advantage of it. Strategy five pointed out by the city's team on a retention strategy is the new employee orientation, which frankly leaves us scratching our head a little bit about how this is a retention strategy. You know, onboarding people and getting them familiar with their benefits and showing them where the bathroom is is important, but as a retention strategy, it's not exactly anything that I think all of us could agree is rooted in any sort of real retention strategy or way to do that. Number six is employee experience conversations, and I think this will be part of our ask to you at the end, but we've asked the city, why are people leaving? Do you do exit interviews? And the city says, well, we don't do exit interviews. We do have hundreds of city leaders who are trained in employee experience conversations, which are similar to a stay interview, which is, you know, a newer HR sort of catchphrase thing about having ongoing conversations with staff and seeing if they're happy in their careers or what else they can do to provide, you know, mobilization, whatever that may be. This is all great stuff, but none of it is being tracked. So we don't know how many of these conversations are happening or if they are really at all. And then we're still not tracking what is, why people are leaving. And I think what gets measured gets done. And if we're not, if we're not tracking why people are going, we have no idea how to accurately or strategically or put any thought into at all how to retain them. And again, if we're looking at that $36 million a year lost in the burn and churn of that, I think it's important that we do that. And again, there's been a lot of conversation about having dashboards and metrics and data-driven policies, and we support that. We think that we need to find out why our people are leaving, and we think we know some of the answers, but we may not know them all because we're not asking. Strategy seven, which is Human-Centered Design Learning Lab and Innovation Academy. We think that these are also really cool and important things that some employees are able to take advantage of. We asked how many folks were able to be a part of these things, and it was 38 and 79, respectfully, at least of our union, who were able to take part of this. So again, just 3% of city workers. Important, yes, but as part of a broad strategy on retention and stopping 700 people from leaving each year, I don't think it's going to do much. Strategy eight, we're also confused by, it's claiming that Trauma-Informed and Resilience-Oriented Culture Building. And we certainly agree that culture is an important reason why people thrive or stay or leave in a workplace. But this Trauma-Informed and Resiliency is something that, again, I think only a handful of departments are utilizing this, and it's important, again, it's how people interact with our unhoused communities who are coming to libraries and those sorts of interactions. But it really has little to do with the culture of the workplace and has more to do with how we interact with members of the public. And again, just broadly speaking, has very little to do with anything relating to retention. And then finally, I think finally, strategy nine, which is Wellness and Programs. Of course, we have to do these. In fact, the Affordable Care Act practically makes it the law to have these programs if we want to have affordable healthcare. So we do, and we should continue to do those. And I think the city pointed out they wanted to expand those, so, you know, let's do that. We fought, obviously, really hard to include an eight-week paid family leave benefit for new parents, and we're happy to have won that fight and that you all agreed to that. But again, looking at, according to NeoGov, and again, this is the city's document, this is the real reason why people are leaving. Top three reasons for employee turnover, and it's obviously higher-paying job opportunities, retirement has spiked, the great resignation that was mentioned, and then it goes on down.
Yeah. And it's important, too, that we address these issues around turnover and retention and recruitment, because as we can see in this graph below, when we increase city staff, we also increase resident satisfaction. So based, again, on the data obtained from the annual report on city services, we were able to graph resident satisfaction, which is the bar graphs, and staff per 1,000 residents, which is the shaded area. And as we can see, as budgeted staffing levels drops and vacancies grew, residents reported less satisfaction with city services, and only recently are we seeing that resident satisfaction is going back up.
And despite the fact that our vacancy number is dropping, we also want to be mindful of the future. So we have some major problems on the immediate horizon that if left unaddressed, it will balloon into insurmountable negative effects for resident services. So one of those items is a great resignation, like John mentioned. We have a significant number of employees who are eligible to retire in the next five years, and when they leave, they take a vast, vast amount of expertise and institutional knowledge with them. We want to make sure that we are training people to fill those roles and that we have a pipeline for people to promote within the city, and we, again, can build out that institutional knowledge. The second thing is a retention emergency. So we're spending untold millions on rehiring and retraining 55% of our workforce every five years. That is quite jarring. We want to make sure that we can keep people beyond five years. Part of the reason why we see folks leave after five is that that's when they vest, and we, like we mentioned earlier about that 5% nonpensionable, we practically incentivize people to go work for another public agency so that they can recoup the 100% of their compensation towards their pension benefit. The last thing on this slide is recruitment efforts from other agencies. So we hear a lot from people who leave the city that they were poached by nearby agencies. I see it all the time, from Sunnyvale, Cupertino. They leave where there is better work opportunities, the pay might be higher, the workload might be lower. But all in all, we really do have a significant number, significant amount of other agencies who come to steal city of San Jose employees. And part of that reason is because we've become sort of a training grounds for other Bay Area agencies. So we're making the investment in staff. We want to make sure that we simply can keep them around longer than just those five years. All right. So how do we, how do we go forward? So I know wages are definitely one of the ways that we can invest in our staff and invest in services. So in order to be competitive, we have to offer competitive wages. It's, really, it's as simple as that. But we also need to make sure our benefits compete with other Silicon Valley employers, and we are attractive to newer professionals. So that means, you know, looking at our comparator agencies, but also means looking at the public versus private benefits that are offered in this region. You know, I think in the heyday of the 90s, we, people would, if they worked in Silicon Valley, you had a spouse that worked for a public agency, and the public agencies would offer really great benefits, really great healthcare, there was an amazing pension. Slowly but surely, that's been chipped away at, and we lose compared to the private sector when it comes to our benefits. We also want to make sure we retain existing staff, so that means providing incentives to keep people. It's not enough just to say that we really care about staff. We have to make sure that we offer things to keep them here. When we're competing with other agencies that can offer better benefits in health or in terms of healthcare, retirement, professional development, we, you know, we'll end up losing staff. We also want to look at union-specific enhancements and make improvements as a turn by each union and their respective contracts. So each of the bargaining units have a subset of problems that they might encounter, so we want to make sure that we are making, that the city and the unions can work together to address those concerns as they come up, especially during negotiations. Last but not least, we want to stop the staffing problem from returning. So by putting metrics and processes in place that stop classifications from becoming understaffed and addressing where it becomes an issue. So we want to be more proactive in how we're addressing, you know, our, you know, vacancy rates. So let me back up. If we know that we have classifications that have a 20% vacancy rate issue, we want to think about how we can prevent that problem in the first place, that way we don't have to, you know, come in and fire, extinguish a classification that's, you know, on fire or is underwater. So I think we can go to the, oh, so I'll also mention that we want to make sure that as a part of this, we have some more transparency around vacancies, recruitment, and retention. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in the next slide.
Yeah. So something that we want to ask the city explore is a public-facing vacancies dashboard to ensure transparency, again, as Krista was saying, around vacancies. And so here we have an example of a public, or a dashboard that will be public-facing in San Francisco that tracks vacancies by classification each month. And so this is just an example that the city could possibly use to implement something similar. We just think that it could be very useful in tracking these vacancies and ensuring that we keep track of those. And then, yeah, here we can see the vacancies split up by month as an example of what San Francisco is planning to do.
Great. And I think one other thing we want to mention, which I think teased off Jerry's portion of this presentation, is the, our concern around workplace safety and making sure that's a part of the consideration about how we can successfully hire and retain staff.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. How's everyone doing? You guys okay? All right, we're almost there. Promise. All right. Do I just press this thing and it'll start going?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I don't do that.
Oh, sorry. I thought you controlled everything up here. All right. All right. Here we go. So first off, I want to start off by thanking each of you. You've all reached out to us after the fires and what we've been doing, and I wanted to say thank you personally for acknowledging what we do. It's a hard job, and you never know, you show up to work and what you're going to encounter, but that's what we've sworn to do. Our members love what we do. We love serving this community. And so this presentation, to me, is just about perspective, right? It's not about pointing the finger or saying where we're necessarily falling short and who's at fault for that, but it's how can we do better? And that's what I think this is, and this is what this coalition's trying to do, is how can we improve not just our membership and not just for the city, but specifically how that'll improve life for our residents here. So I want to highlight a PIS-FIS memo that I really encourage all of you to look at, especially the newer members. This is actually a great document. Thank you to our staff up there, Fire Chief's office. I think he did a phenomenal job. He doesn't hear me say that enough, so thank you, chief. This document has a lot of great detail into where we're at, so I just, I want to highlight that work that they did on this. So if you look at this bottom right-hand number, that's more or less where our actual staffing number. So that's how many people we have that we can put on a fire engine today when there's actual emergency, okay? Natural disaster, major wildland urban interface fire, anything, that's our actual number. And that's the number that I really want to highlight today because that's where we're at in the nation. You've heard a lot of noise, which you've heard me call it, or people call it, about what I'm saying. But we are the, one of the lowest metropolitan-staffed fire departments in the nation, and so I want to hammer that number. In the bottom left-hand corner, the 723, that's the authorized position numbers. Obviously, that's if we're fully staffed. But as you can see, based on that right-hand column, we've lost positions, or excuse me, we've lost staff over the years, and so we're not keeping up with attrition. And I want to point that out. And I want to point that out that that was something that Iran brought up earlier is how do we keep up with attrition? So this is from the PIS FIS memo, not my number. So thank you for pointing that out of where we're at is that six forty seven number. Next, you can kind of see based on our comparables around us, where we're at staffing and population to our residents. And again, we see this one number at seven twenty three, so we know it's it's not that. It's closer to six fifty right now. So what I'd like to see moving forward in these is some accurate data that we can actually look back on and where are we at? Not actually what's budgeted, but where we're technically at right now that we could put on a fire engine if there's an emergency. Not a not a number that if we're fully staffed. So you can see we are well below the average Sunnyvale. They're actually public safety, so they're fire and police. So they're very confused every day what they're doing over there, but just kidding, they're a great department. So here we go. This is the big number that I want to highlight is we go down to where we are in comparison with the top fifteen plus metropolitan fire departments in the nation. If you do take that number down to closer to six fifty and we're sitting at nine fifty six, it's probably closer to a million, based on our estimated population, based on the county pockets that we serve as well. So it's just not the city of San Jose, but the also part of our mutual aid and automatic aid agreements that we that we serve. So I mean, the proof's right there. I think all of us can agree we need more firefighters, but I really want to hammer that home that 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 number is significant. And really where we're at is, in my opinion, is where that kind of a staffing crisis for our fire department, providing the best services, especially in a major natural disaster. I think that's something we can all see. We need to increase our staffing and we need to continue to build up this fire department from where it once was. So just a little background on how we got here, and this is why I think this is important for historical context. I picked up a dusty yearbook the other day from nineteen ninety two, and one of the first pages was talking about our staffing model was seven hundred and seventy members. That was from nineteen eighty five to nineteen ninety one. That was a year before I was born, which is pretty wild. But we had more members then than we have now. So that's very concerning. And you can imagine our call volume from thirty seven years ago, what that looked like. I guarantee you was probably a lot lower than it is today. Obviously, we that was the chief said today, we're at a hundred and ten thousand calls. So we're continually creep up tremendously. And if you actually look in comparison to other fire departments, we do more firefighting here than a majority of our comparables. Like, we are very busy in that sector of our job. So yes, medical and ALS and BLS is a huge portion of what we do, but the reality is is that we do fight a lot of fires. And I'll get into why that's important later. In two thousand and ten, obviously, after some some turmoil here, we lost seventy five positions were eliminated. Two thousand and eleven, we started to downstaff a lot of our fire trucks, which had five people on it. Now they have four. The reason why that's important is because the more firefighters that you have on a piece of apparatus, the more work you can get done. And that's the type of model that we've always had since inception of this fire department. So when you start to eliminate positions and you start to pull those levers and eliminate resources, it really impacts what we're able to accomplish on scene. In two thousand and eight, we really started to go through a civilianization of our our fire department. And I personally feel like this is where things really start to get watered down. These FTE positions were critical for our infrastructure and also for the future of our department. You guys are about to see with the from today, especially with the the public safety fee. When you have a PIO that's a sworn member, you're going to see exactly what needs to get done from our side and our view and what's important to the public. And that educational component is something that that you can't replace having that experience. Our facilities captain, one of our council members happened to work in that position, critical position with an aging infrastructure in our stations. That position itself was so difficult, they had to add two more people into that position. Apparatus captain, as most of you know, right now, private equity firms, it's actually a great Wall Street Journal article, private equity firms are buying up these fire apparatus production companies. And so what that's doing is they're trying to turn a profit on building fire engines and building fire trucks. So it's really critical for us to have a robust reserve fleet because it's taking a lot longer and costing a lot more money for us to buy and purchase equipment, specifically fire engines. And as of right now, our fleet is hurting. It is in a critical position where we need more funding to build up that fleet for when there is a big natural disaster, just like you saw in LA. When we call people back or we preposition our members to be here for a critical wind event, that we have enough reserve apparatus to do that. And unfortunately, we're in a position right now where we don't. So having these positions is very critical. What we're doing is we're pushing off this work on other people, and that's creating impacts on the rest of the organization in the ecosystem that we live in. Last one and most recently, the Med thirty elimination. Med thirty, all most of you, all of you know, I appreciate your support on that. But Med thirty is like the critical utility player in our field. We need them every day. They do more than ninety percent of the people in this city know about, and it's something that we need to continue to support. Won't speak on that. The last thing I'll close with is three apparatus that are technically permanently closed or cross staffed. Truck three, which is downtown District Three, that is permanently closed. That truck is not open. Engine thirty three, Station Thirty Three on top of Communication Hill in District Seven's first due is permanently closed. There is no one there when you call nine one one in a growing neighborhood up there. And then our hazardous incident team, which is very busy now, especially with development of in the future of lithium ion batteries and data centers. They are cross staffed, meaning that if that truck is out on another call, any other call, vehicle accident, fire, medical aid, our hazardous incident team is not available until they clear that incident. So a population of over a million has essentially a standby hazardous incident team. So these are all critical cuts that we're still dealing with and we're trying to overcome, but that's more of the historical context. Jump into the rest of the program here. This is a little bit older slide. I'll adjust the numbers. But the current eligibility for our statewide eligibility list, our department uses a program called FC TC. There's a hundred and seventy different departments who use this program. We currently have, and this is from the March numbers, the current eligibility list has about thirty two hundred EMTs and five hundred and sixteen paramedics. So that's an updated version. The reason why, oh, the other one didn't make it in there. The reason why that's important is because if you look at who's available to work as a paramedic in the state right now, we currently have an eligibility out of that close to five or four thousand people who are eligible to apply for San Jose. Only eleven percent of them are paramedics. And so what we're looking at is a very, very small supply of paramedics that are competing with every other fire department and every other paramedic agency across the state. And so we have to have a mindset if we want to continue to hire paramedics from this pool that we have to have a robust recruitment and retention division where they can essentially keep people here from going other other places that have better compensation and are are able to retain their paramedics. So it's a very competitive space. With that, right now, we have a thirty four percent firefighter paramedic vacancy in our department, meaning that we have three shifts in the San Jose Fire Department, A shift, B shift, and C shift. We are essentially missing an entire shift of paramedics. Now, we have supplemented that shortcoming from our hiring by instituting a support paramedic program, which the chief has talked about, where our members and our labor have essentially stepped up for our paramedics to help them out. Because as of right now, they're getting mandatory for ninety six hours. They were getting crushed during the pandemic. They were missing their birthdays. They were missing their kids' events. They're missing everything. So we're in extreme, this is an extreme number to me, and we need to do something to fix it. That being said, one of the in the same PIS FIS memo on page twelve, at the bottom there, you see that the city said they wanted to consult with a recruiter essentially to see what the best industry practices were to hire women in the fire department. Why are we spending money on a consultant when we can look at all the other successful fire departments around us who have a successful hiring practice and retention practice with a recruiter? Shocking the, I guarantee you, the consultant is going to come back and tell us, we need to hire a recruiter, a sworn recruiter, someone that's going to the events where we want to do CPR, someone who's going to the job fairs, someone who is doing the follow up. All of those steps are the way that we actually get people to come here. It's not sending the civilian who works for the fire department there who's never done the job. It's someone who's been in our footsteps and can talk on what that is. So recruitment is very, very important. And if we're not taking that step to put someone who's been doing the job into that space, we're missing several opportunities to connect with those people. I want to say eight point one from the budget message last week, from the mayor's budget message, was discussing community and economic development and essentially workforce development. Every time when we have an opportunity to go into a classroom, to go do opioid education, to go do CPR in the community, those are all opportunities for us to touch members in the community who take interest and come back and have a connection to be able to start that recruitment process. So I think that's something very vital that we need to continue to discuss and elaborate on, and and I suggest that we move in that direction. And also, part of this memo that's concerning to me is, yes, we need representation of women in the fire department, hundred and ten percent. There's no doubt about that. But what's also concerning to me is in this memo, we do not talk about what is concerning, which is we have less than two percent of our fire department who's African American. Two percent. We have one in senior staff and one only in senior staff. That is it. And there is no, no mention of that at all. And if now is not the time to speak up for our brothers and sisters and our neighbors, we have to address that. Also, we have less than six percent of Asian Americans in our fire department. And for the city where we are, we only have two people, one in senior staff and one in upper management. So we need to continue to do proper recruiting and retention through recruiter. And it's, we can see based on where the numbers are with the department, we're not doing that. We're not achieving that. And we continue to do the same type of recruitment, and we're not getting different results. So what are we going to do that's different when we're thinking about getting different results? It doesn't add up. So we had five hundred and twenty eight people apply for our department last year in this memo. In comparison, when I took the test in two thousand and seven, ten thousand people applied. So we are in a way different time where people want to enter the workforce, especially for a fire department, a blue collar job that's hard. But going back to the eight point one workforce development, we have an opportunity to build people from this community, get them opportunity to be recruited and join this workforce. Some of the downstream's impacts of not doing the proper hiring lead to a over hiring essentially of EMTs. I'm an EMT. I'm proud to be an EMT. But what happens is when we don't have enough firefighter paramedics, we end up with extra EMTs. Those extra bodies have to go somewhere. And what we do in this organization, and you'll see based on these comparables nowhere else, we put people with four years on in a day and put them in as an acting captain. I mean, we call it higher classing. We put those people in that position. Now you can see on this slide, the taskbooks that you're supposed to have that everyone else does, we don't do that. The minimum requirements that the city has set, based on that minimum requirements to have that position, we do not hold people accountable to meet those minimum requirements. So you have people sitting in your district representing your constituents who have no training. The minimum requirement to be an acting captain is four years on the job. Not one hour of required training. They have no minimum experience. The minimum experience to actually be a captain is five years. So we're falling short a whole year on what the actual minimum requirement is to take the captain's test. And then there's no approved supervisor recommendation if this person is ready to be a company officer. So to me, this is one of the most dangerous things we do, and this is one of the most challenging things that our membership looks at every single day. You're putting someone in the position as a company officer, which we have less than forty of in the city a day, I should say about forty five. And you're sometimes putting in this position to lead a crew and make the determination between life and death. And you can tell by our comparables, no one else does that. And we continue to do it, and we continue to try to change this in negotiations and try to change this internally, and we can't. And this is a huge liability on the city, hundred and ten percent. This is something that is extremely liable that the city is going to have to own because there is no proper training that meets those minimum requirements. As you can see throughout the year, we can look at how higher classing increases. Obviously, when the most critical time of year, we higher class the most because higher classing can only be done in short term vacancies when you're on sick leave, vacation or disability. So we're up to forty six thousand hours a year of higher class time. And when it happens to happen, it's probably the most critical fire danger time in our year round that we go through. So at some times in the city, we have ten over ten people higher classing in the middle of summertime to protect all of our constituents. That's a quarter of your company officers in the city making decisions, life or death decisions, in the most critical fire danger time that do not have the proper training to do their job. So obviously, very concerning, I get very fired up about it. As you can see, over the last ten years, the increase in higher classing has become a new norm in a staffing model. As you see up to twenty twenty three, that increase in amount of time in the higher class seat is just become the norm, and that's what our members are expected to do now, unfortunately. What this list is essentially a remove the employees names, but it's the amount of hours that they're higher classing when they come to work. So you can see their eligibility date. When they hit that four year mark, you can see that from that member, what, from ten six twenty three all the way up, those are brand new members who are eligible to higher class. And it's showing that when they show up to work, thirty seven percent of the time, up to sixty three percent of the time they show up to work, they're working as a higher class captain. And like I said, they're not qualified to do it, but we put them in that position and we're not supporting them. The ones who have the line through them, those are members who actually meet the minimum requirements. And what I want to say is we do, we support higher classing, but we want our members to have the minimum requirements. That's all we're saying. Give them the training. Give them the tools to succeed. Give them the positive encouragement and reinforcement. We want them to have that. Next slide is also, you know, contrary to to popular belief, especially after COVID, what we've seen is if you look at the first slide on the top or the first column on the top is our our current paramedic availability. And this actually comes from the state EMS authority. This was from December twenty five or twenty four, excuse me. We see in twenty twenty, there's twenty three thousand paramedics on the right hand column there. If you go down to twenty twenty three, there's twenty five thousand four hundred and one. So contrary to popular belief, we're increasing the amount of paramedics that are in the state. COVID was a factor for one year, but all of those schooling, schools that provide the paramedic programs have increased the amount of paramedics they're putting out into the community. So the state has plenty of paramedics. The the purpose of this graph is to show that they're available there. We are just not getting them to come here. We are not doing the proper recruitment to get them here. And so we need to really focus on that. And here's a breakdown of what this paramedic population looks like. So we kind of have two paths to look at. We either invest in recruitment and retention where we're looking at our members specifically who are here in the community, give them opportunity, send them to school, maybe hire them as EMTs, send them to paramedic school. That's how we can increase these numbers. We also, like we've all talked about, we have a population that is aging out. If you look the forty one to fifty and fifty one years of age, that's over thirty five percent of the workforce is going to retire in the next five years who are paramedics. So we have a huge wave coming. Our nineteen ninety five class that we first hired paramedics here, they are all aging out and they're about to retire. So we're going to lose a lot, a lot of that institutional knowledge and a lot of the people who are working that overtime right now for the the paramedic vacancy. Now, same thing here. I, it's really evident, I think, that if we want to help change this focus of getting more people into the workforce that look different, that have haven't had the same opportunities, that are a different gender, we have to focus on doing that ourselves. It's not happening on its own. It, we don't have a population that is as interested in this job, so we have to create opportunity. So we have to create opportunities, like I just said, to get them involved. And I think this is kind of my last, last point. So I'm sure everyone's done hearing me talk, is these are some of the barriers that we have to deal with. We have a three-hour living requirement. And I know a lot of people look at that and like, yeah, of course you should live three hours away. And, and I'm, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, but the reality is, is that this job is very difficult on your family. When you get mandatory at the last second and you don't have childcare close to you, how are you supposed to do your job? How's your spouse or significant other able to put their job on hold because you get forced to work here? And so, my point of this is that cost of living here is so high and it's so difficult to keep your family unit here, that we have to create an environment where our workforce can have a sustainable family system around them so that they can be successful here, so that they can work the overtime, so that they can work the mandatories. That's something that is a barrier because other departments don't have a living requirement. And you know what, if someone comes in from a couple hours away, that's okay. Because if they have the, the support at home, they're able to do their job. And they have less stress from home that they're bringing into work. So I think that's something that we should really evaluate. We're also subject to the ninety-six-hour force mandatory. We work forty-hour shifts, we a lot of times get forced to work another two days. That's something that a lot of other departments are going away from. They're, they're noticing that being at work for ninety-six hours shockingly isn't good for you. So we got to be, start thinking about the health of our members, start thinking about how are we going to take care of this workforce as it ages and also be competitive in that same space? Like I said, I don't need to talk about anymore, no recruitment division. We know that's hurting us. One of the things I'm really excited to talk about hopefully in the future here is sworn-down payment assistant loan program. If we want to keep people in this community who are from here or even want to raise their family here, this is something that other cities are doing. They're let, they're essentially creating programs for their first responders to live in their community. That's something I know all of you did growing up. You probably had a cop or firefighter, a nurse or teacher live in your neighborhood. And those are people that we want to keep in our communities and they're being pushed out. And I think this is a great opportunity to recruit people to come to the city. Another big one that we need to talk about that's on the horizon is San Francisco just paid, just passed pension reform, Measure H. Measure H lowered their retirement for two and a half years. We are now losing people from San Jose who are going up to San Francisco because they can retire earlier. So we have less of a competitive edge now, and we're going to continue to see that fallout from that. So that is going to be a big lift at some point, but it's something that we need to know that's, there's going to be a continued exodus from here because of that change. And they're going through a lot of the same issues we are. So they're going to be competing with all the other fire agencies that are out there as well. And then the last thing, I think a lot of you know that I'm very passionate about cancer and the cancer initiative and cancer screening. And so, and I want to say thank you to all that who've supported that. But what other departments are doing is, they are offering full-body cancer screening. They're offering full-body MRIs, they're offering the ultrasounds, the compress, comprehensive tests for metals that we're dealing with all the time in our job. And so I think when you have a more informed group of people coming to this workforce, they're realizing, hey, I want to work for an employer that has these things. It's almost like an additional benefit. So if we want to continue to bring people here and have a supportive culture and keep people here, these are the type of things that we need to do together as labor management and continue to push what we consider some of our, our biggest hurdles in our occupation and, and do that together. So I just want to close with two things. This, this job, we love doing this job, it's the best job in the world. I think a lot of us know that. You talk to a firefighter, everyone loves who works here. But the reality is, is that we need to have an environment where we're supported. We need to have an environment where we can continue to see people stay here and not leave. And with all the other things that are external to us right now, we have an opportunity to continue to build this fire department together. So I appreciate you guys' time and thank you for listening.
Hi, counsel, mayor. I, I rep, my name is Nate Morris. I'm the assistant business manager for IBW Local Three Three Two. I represent the electricians of the city in the four departments, Public Works, Department of Transportation, the wastewater treatment plant, and the airport. As of this morning, I think our vacancy rate came down a little bit. It's, it's still at twenty-point-three percent. I think everybody here touched on the, the biggest problem coming up is the aging workforce. Of our sixty-three employees that I represent, thirty-eight of them, sixty percent are fifty years or older. And there is plans, and, and we're working with the city to create an apprenticeship to, to try to fill some of that, that void that's coming. But in the meantime, the city's managing the shortfall with, they're hiring out of our union hall some of our private sector electricians at a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. The employees work in a lot of overtime. And, and then they're also hiring retirees. So, one problem I saw this morning, I checked, the city doesn't have any job openings posted for electrician. So one thing I'm afraid of is, is that these vacant FTEs might go away. I hope that's not the, the case because a lot of these electricians are overworked. And then, I'm not sure how far we are from, from getting the apprenticeship, but even doing a five-year apprenticeship, it doesn't teach these new electricians everything they need to know to take over the city once the sixty percent retires in the next ten to fifteen years. So that's about all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did all of the employee organizations who wanted to present get a chance to do so? I believe we got to everybody, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you sharing your perspectives with the council. We now have an opportunity to hear from any members of the public who would like to speak about the city's vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts and obstacles in the hiring process. Tony, would anyone like to speak?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Thank you. The
I have that for, I have two for open forum.
Yes. We'll get to that right after this item. Thank you. So we're going to come back to the council. The public hearing is now closed, but the council has an opportunity to weigh in if, if we have any questions or comments. And then we can take action to accept the staff report on the city's vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts and obstacles in the hiring process. Let me come back and turn to colleagues. I'll, I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, I appreciate it. First, first I just want to mention, you know, how great this is to actually have our bargaining units together, presenting here. I don't know if, this is probably the first time in San Jose history, I don't know that this has ever happened, but it's, it's truly, as an elected official, I think it's extremely vital for our elected officials to meet, whether you're a school board member or, you know, a council member, to meet with your bargaining units. You know, if you're only meeting with administration, which is important, you're only getting one side of the story. And so I just appreciate hearing from those who represent the individuals actually doing the work, who are out in the field, who are actually moving the needle on providing services, responding to fires, responding to emergencies in, in our community. And I just want to thank staff for hearing them and being attentive. I know unfortunately, historically, there's been an adversarial relationship with bargaining units and administration. But there's no monopoly on good ideas on either side. And so I just want to make sure that I said that and, and just thank you guys for being here and, and presenting to us. Appreciate it. As San Jose continues to work on its workforce policies, it's essential to take data-driven approaches to recruitment, retention, and compensation. I know we've talked about competitive pay, sustainable hiring practices, and then as well as employee retention, it's very similar to like our whole conversation around the unhoused. We can house people, but if we're not making sure that they're staying housed, then that is an issue. And then of course, you know, all critical factors in maintaining a high-performing workforce can effectively serve our, our residents. I do have a few questions that I, I hope I can ask. So ensuring that San Jose remains a competitive employer, it's essential to make sure we're able to retract, attract and retain top talent. And we've heard just some of the things that other municipalities are doing. I think reducing the age for retirement, you know, obviously some other cities have, you know, are wealthier, they're able to pay staff at a higher rates. Or, you know, in the electricians division, how the private sector, right? Where we're competing with the private sector when it comes to making sure that we can hire new electricians. So I just wanted to hear, and I know that we've talked about this in the past, I guess I could have a question for administration. Looking at our roles for San Jose employees, how do we, the, the pay rate for the roles, how do we compare with, with surrounding cities?
So every time we go into negotiations, we would do salary surveys, what's called benchmarking for certain classifications to see how we're faring with regard to other agencies that would be comparable to us either because of geographic location or size or composition. So, so there is that done on a periodic basis. In addition, as I mentioned, with the fifty-six classifications that were adjusted, when specific problems come up, where we are realizing that we are out of market on a particular class or where we get compaction where one class pushes another in terms of the salaries becoming too narrow between, say, a supervisor and a subordinate, then we can take a look at those specifically as well.
Do we also, thank you, appreciate that, that answer. And I guess we don't have an answer right now in regards to our levels in comparison because we're not in bargaining? Is that the current situation?
Right. So we, I mean, we, we can do, we can do salary studies. I mean, they're, they're kind of intensive work. So we typically do them when issues come up or, or during bargaining.
Do we do the same thing like with benefits in response to some of the things that, you know, the bargaining units were saying regarding, like, like I said, reducing the age of retirement, which I, I guess with our senior workforce may be a double-edged sword. But like, are we looking at other benefits to make sure that we're competitive on things that we may not be able to budge on like pay or something like that?
Yeah. With, with salary surveys, usually we look at aspects that lead to total compensation. So if there are pay differentials and things of that nature, then we would definitely look at those. With regard to non-economic benefits, we would look at those on a policy basis. So would it be, would it behoove us to do X or, or make this offering? And again, typically, a lot of those ideas can surface in, in bargaining sessions as well.
Okay. Thank you. I, I, I appreciate that. I wanted to ask, because we heard a lot about turnover. I think there was a comment saying that some people work for our city for like a couple years and then they kind of see it as a stepping stone and go to other municipalities or agencies or the private sector. Are we keeping track of turnover regularly? How, how often does the administration review that? And do we also identify, because we lose a staff member, right? It's not just the fact that we lost a staff member. We have to hire, we have to go out for hiring, and then when that staff member gets hired, then we have to train them. Do we look at the financial cost of turnover as well?
I really appreciate that question, councilmember, because it's a, it's a very important issue and I do want to make some clarifications. The, the, I, I think eleven percent per year rate was cited. That is not what my figures show. My figures show much more normal rates. So for the last fiscal year, it was seven-point-eight percent of turnover. The year before, that was nine-point-four. The only time it has exceeded ten percent in the last five years was at the height of the pandemic and it only went up to ten-point-six. Turnover rates are never going to approach zero, nor do you want them to. Typically, even in, in normal times, pre-pandemic times, frankly, you would, it would be very, very typical to see turnover rates of six to ten percent. And, and that's because people are simply aging out by retirements. People's life circumstances change regardless of competition. Somebody has a sick family member on the East Coast, relocates. Some people don't do well on the job. They are, they are either unsuccessful in the probationary period or they misbehave and, and need to be terminated. So at some, some percentage of turnover is actually necessary and healthy for an organization to rejuvenate. And, and as, as some of the bargaining unit representatives have acknowledged, when you have an aging workforce, you actually face the other danger of having a mass exodus of retirements all falling upon you at the same time. There's also the issue of succession planning. So you want the turnover to be a steady rate so that you are absorbing new people into the organization and passing on institutional knowledge without it being a dramatic event.
Okay. Thank you. Really, really appreciate that. And so, it sounds like you guys are, because I think there was mention that we do have an, an aging staff. There is plans in, in regards to replace them in an orderly fashion?
Yes, this is reviewed on an annual basis.
Okay. All right. So there's an annual plan that you guys update?
Correct.
And that, is that shared with the bargaining unit?
I am not sure, I would need to check on that.
Okay. Just quick questions for the bargaining unit. How do, a lot of your data, is that from Freedom of Information asks or are they sharing that information?
The eleven percent we got from the city, it was the, I'm sorry, staff report.
No, go first.
I, I, it, no, you, you go ahead, it's your, it's your slide.
Ladies first, come on.
I, a lot of our data is coming from publicly available reports from the city. So that eleven percent turnover rate is actually from the annual report on city services that the city does every year. This, the eleven percent rate was for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay. Make sure to cite that too when you, when you say it, just so that we can go back to that.
Additionally, councilmember Syed, with respect to Aram, I know you're probably not interested in a back and forth here, but to our knowledge
Please don't back and forth, but yes, say the same.
To our knowledge, the city has not done a total compensation survey since, I think, two thousand and seventeen. So it's not, it's not done regularly.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
A to, a review of total compensation, which is where we're, we're comparing apples to apples with other cities, full benefit packages, the five percent nonpensionable, looking at the entire package has not been done, to my knowledge, since two thousand and seventeen. That's what I mentioned in my comments earlier. It's in the city manager's report on annual negotiations every year that the city should look at that. And we agree that the city should, but it has not done that in a long time.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that, John. And then, in regards to, just real question again, to go back to administration. When we look at turnover, right? I know you said that the number's lower than what was mentioned. But are we looking at specific departments of where turnover may happen? You know, are, are we looking at any data in relation to that to determine if there may be issues?
Slightly differently, we would look at high vacancy rates in, in departments that have worrisome rates of vacancies. And I think, as I mentioned in the presentation, when the campaign was started to, to bring the vacancy rate down, specific departments were targeted because their vacancy rates were particularly high. I believe PRNS, planning, similar departments had specific assigned targets that, that were meant to be achieved.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your answer. I want to, you know, let you know you're doing a good job for, I think this is one of your first presentations on the council?
This is the first.
This is the first one? Well, pretty, pretty tense first one. But, but thank you. And of course, thank you to the bargaining units and administration. I know we're doing everything we can to work together and I hope that we continue this pathway forward. Appreciate it.
It's our first two.
You're guys' first two, thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's go to councilmember Campos.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you to all of the folks that we heard from the presentations today. I really appreciate the wealth of information that you shared and provided. And I have no questions, just some comments to share because there's a lot that resonated with me from this presentation. I think the, the biggest thing that I'm hearing, one of the biggest challenges we're facing, is an aging workforce. Last week, we discussed adding a fifth objective to our OED work plan that relates to workforce development. And this presentation demonstrates exactly why it is so important that we address our workforce needs. Because if we want a workforce that is representative and reflective of that diverse communities that we serve in San Jose, we need to work on ensuring that we have a pipeline of talent ready to join our public agency offices, whether it's FIRE, at City Hall, et cetera. And so, that, that to me was something that I, I thought was worth noting because a lot of what was covered today is well within our wheelhouse of being able to address and, and work on. We know that access to jobs and employment is necessary for homeless We know that access to jobs and employment is necessary for homelessness prevention. Just last week, I was at Rue Ferrari, doing a tour of the new expanding sites there, and one of the missing pieces in helping folks move on to, you know, their next phase, is opportunity to jobs, is opportunities for workforce development. And so, you know, if we want to be serious about reducing unsheltered homelessness, then we need to be working on the issues that we know are going to address the root cause of the, you know, reasons that our city is facing such a homelessness crisis. So there were a lot of asks, and some of the opportunities that I see, that are well within the wheelhouse of our council, is to create an environment that allows for better employment opportunities through the development of workforce and senior housing, because we do need a sustainable living environment for folks to be able to work in the city of San Jose. When we are talking about the next generation of workers, we're talking about my generation, my generation that is literally leaving the area, leaving San Jose, leaving the Bay Area, because we cannot afford to live here, we cannot afford to start and raise a family here, and we're hearing our workers with the same woes, describing the uphill battle that we as a public agency will face, if we cannot compete to improve our workforce landscape in the city of San Jose. So I really appreciate all the time that everyone took to come and help share the importance that it is to work on policy, make the investments, and address our housing, childcare, and commute woes, that our city workers, and quite frankly, every worker in San Jose, should have a right to be able to live and work comfortably in this city. So, thank you.
Thank you, let's go to Vice Mayor Foley.
I just want to conclude by thank everyone, thanking everyone for their presentations, particularly Aram, for your first time here, and for all the others who it was your first time in the box, and I will move acceptance of the item.
Great, do we have a second? Okay, Councilmember Casey, thank you, let's go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the bargaining units, you know, out there to come out and kind of give us your side of the story, and what your perspective is. I do have a couple questions for our local 230. So when you have the number of the 650, I'm sorry, let me recall here, the 647 firefighters that are available, ready to go, if there is an emergency activation, now that doesn't including our supportive personnel up in admin, right?
Yeah, that is correct, just sworn personnel.
Now, with 647, comparatively to the chart you stated here, that, where did the authorized position is 723?
That's correct.
And within that, do you know, is our department is actively seeking to have lateral recruitment from other departments?
It's a good question. The lateral space is very competitive, obviously, it's a shorter timeframe, where you can hire employees essentially in a recruit status, in a compressed timeframe of about 10 weeks, some departments do it in four weeks. We did a national outreach essentially for laterals, our last one, I actually sat on that board to do interviews. I sat through that process, out of the 14 slotted positions for people to go through the interview process, only five people we actually interviewed, and in that total process, five of those individuals, in going through backgrounds and everything, made it to their department, and only three of them actually passed the academy. So there are actually only three people out of a nationwide lateral recruitment search actually graduated, and are technically working on the line now.
Do you happen to know the reason why we got such a low applicant for the lateral?
Yeah, I always, when I discuss this, I always look at our comparables, and I always see what our brothers and sisters are doing in other cities and around us, especially in this area, and like I said, it goes back to being, having a competitive recruitment division. If you look at San Francisco, if you look at Alameda County, if you look at Oakland, even if you look at our neighbor Santa Clara County, they just put 14 firefighter paramedics in academy, and they're hiring additional 20. And so, we're allocated to have 60 positions a year, that's two academies, 30 positions in each, and we're literally failing, we're not keeping up with attrition. I think the largest academy we've had graduate is 18, so we currently have 25 in the academy now. We'll see what that number ends up, but what we continue to see is the numbers of, oh, we're counting the eggs before they hatch, essentially, so that's the data that I'd like to see cleaned up, to see where we're actually at, when we have people available to actually be sworn, and be on a fire engine or fire truck.
Thank you, and then, I'm going to go forward to the higher class. So my understanding, majorities, higher class are without qualification, meaning they have no mentoring ship, no qualifying classes, and what else do you think they need beside those particular area?
For higher class, I mean, essentially, what the city has made a minimum requirement is a company officer certification from the state of California, California State Fire Training, that's nine company officer classes. They also have to meet what we consider in the industry is NFPA 1021, which is a recommendation, but that's what all the other, essentially, all of our other comparables and surrounding agencies do, as well as have, you know, what the city has deemed the minimum qualifications, which is five years on the job, and to have that company officer certification, and we're currently not doing that in order to higher class.
So what is the total hours in order to accomplish that company officer certification?
I mean, usually, depending on the amount of time, they're usually a week-long class, so it's a Monday through Friday, usually a 40-hour class, so depending, some are shorter, some are more compressed now, the state fire marshals changed some of the curriculum, so it might be a shorter timeframe.
So it's around 360 hours, that's not including any, what you call, training mentoring program or sheet that they have to follow?
That's correct.
Okay. Last question for you, is, do you think it's viable to have a safety officer who is a civilian?
I think based on that, if you looked at those top 15 agencies, metropolitan departments that have, essentially, serving a population of over 800,000, every one of those has a sworn safety officer in their department, it's a critical position, safety is something that we should never take an exception from at all. Obviously, in my opinion, we're doing that right now, and I will give credit to our current safety manager, I think she's doing a phenomenal job, but not being in the field, not actually being at the incidents, and having that opportunity to highlight where we're coming short, we're not, we don't have that part of our critical feedback loop. So someone is going to get hurt eventually, someone is going to get killed eventually, so we have to be really mindful of what we're doing as an organization to prevent that, and I think having a sworn safety officer is critical for that not to happen.
So if a safety officer is a trained career firefighter, would be able to recognize lots of these particular dangers, because in order to become a full-pledge firefighter, you have to go through all the education and training, and then with the experience in order to spot those unsafe situations? Prior to having a non-sworn safety officer, or sworn firefighter as a safety officer, do they climb on the roof, they go inside of a structure, sometime with the crew, or do a 360 to assess the situation, to see any type of unsafe condition?
Exactly, there's essentially another set of eyes and ears for the incident commander, so the person who's making the critical decisions to say, hey, should we go inside, are we able to save this life, or is this something where we have to reevaluate, it's another set of eyes, where we get an opportunity to have another safety measure there, so it's part of our checks and balances. When you continue to move positions like the safety officer, like Med 30, when you continue to dwindle down and water down our sworn fire department, this is when you run into issues, and obviously, not having a sworn safety officer, it's a huge concern for us.
Well, thank you very much, and I think in the end, I appreciate both the fire chief and local 230 working together, in order to get the resource that you need, in order to support our constituent, thank you. I do have a question for our city attorney. When we have an unqualify, or a higher class that did not meet the parameter that the city put out, does that open us, open the city up for liability or litigation?
It would depend on the circumstances, and what, if anything, occurred, but the chief and the administration of the fire department, or any other department, are those who are making those decisions, and are using their best judgment in terms of higher classing, and sometimes the details of that is negotiated also, but it really is up to those folks to make that decision, and consider the safety issues.
So let's say a firefighter that was high class without any qualification, go on scene, the house is fully involved with a possible rescue, he didn't call for extra resource, the citizen die, wouldn't that open us up for litigation?
That's a hypothetical, and I don't know that I can answer it just with those facts, and there are, you know, the city, as you know, has a number of immunities--
Yes.
--and ability to defend itself, and decisions made by senior staff.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm not an attorney, but I think that that would open us up for some liability and litigation, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Councilmember, I know our city manager had a quick point of information.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little piece of good news here with our, with what the chief has done with the hiring, the numbers, that 647 number that was being discussed was as of June 30th, 2024. As of today, we have 675, so it's moving in the right direction, and our most recent academy has five women, which is about 20% of that academy, so that's also, again, in the spirit of increasing diversity, and yes, we have lots of different types of diversity we need to increase, but we're going in the right direction.
Thanks for sharing that, Jennifer, let's see if other colleagues have questions or comments, Councilmember Candelas?
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate the presentation from staff and our employee organizations. I had a quick one, a question I had was actually asked by Councilmember Ortiz, but a point from the employee organizations, from IFPT, when they said we don't do exit interviews, maybe, is that, can you speak to that for staff? I'm looking at our wonderful HR director.
So we don't have a citywide exit interview system, whether departments do them on an individual basis as a matter of protocol, I would have to research a little bit further. As I sit here, I do not know the answer to that, but that is something that we can follow up on.
Great, no, thank you, every organization I've been a part of, whether it was the state legislature, Valley Water, or even Stanford, there was, you know, an opportunity to, you know, learn from the experience from the actual employee, so I think it would be beneficial for us to be able to assess, and, you know, qualitative information to help us make quantitative decisions is always beneficial, so I would, I would think that's helpful.
I just want to chime in, I don't know, Jennifer Shembry, if you could help with this particular one. We started a training for these employee, these experience conversation, that we started training all of our managers to do, it's not been, it's not been rolled out citywide, but we did start an endeavor to understand that, and so Jennifer, could you give a little bit more color to what we've been doing in that arena, rather than, and try to make it a little bit more insightful than, and more universal, and consistent of what kind of questions we're asking our employees?
Sure, hi, Jennifer Shembry, Deputy City Manager. First, I wanted to clarify that there actually are a lot of departments that do exit interviews, we just don't have a citywide standard one that we do, but departments do them individually, and how that happens varies by department. But we have been moving towards employee experience conversations, which is something, the idea is, is that getting feedback at the end, when someone is leaving out the door, is a little too late, and so we should be getting that feedback throughout their employment, and so we've been training supervisors on how to have those conversations, and departments looking at that information to see if there are things that they can change. Randy is the expert in employee experience conversation, she's over there, so she can be happy to answer any technical questions you have on that.
Got it, so we do, but it's just not a standard, Jennifer? I know it's late, we're tired, I'm tired, I get it, but bear with me on this, we, so we do, we have an informal process that we have across the organization, that's not, that's not essentially mandated, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, you know, given, and to the, I guess there was a number that was attached that was a 30% turnover rate that IFPT mentioned, I mean, there's obviously several factors that go into that, but, I mean, helping to understand why folks are leaving, I think that we have some anecdotal comments that point to that, I don't know, I don't know how solid that is, but, I mean, is that, is that something that we could consider, or maybe getting an idea, and, I mean, I completely agree, if you want to, you want something while an employee is working with the organization, not after they're leaving, but after they're leaving, people tend to be a little bit more honest, and then in the middle, while they're, you know, while they're working at the place, that's just from experience.
So whether or not, is the question whether or not we should start collecting--
No, 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 I'm just, I guess, I guess, how can we get more managers, and how can we get more people, or more folks using or doing an exit interview as a form of practice, rather than just, oh, we have it, you know, it's on individual, it's on individual departments to be able to institute, in other words?
So I think with a new HR director, you have a great opportunity to kind of evaluate the things that HR has, or hasn't been doing, or departments have, or haven't been doing, so I would definitely look to him, you know, as he gets involved with the city more, and understanding their practices and processes here, to give us advice on that, and if it's something, you know, hey, we should be doing something like that. We'll tell you also that HR, a long time ago, did do an exit survey, we just did it like through Survey Monkey and sent it out, and we got very, very few responses back, so the data wasn't very helpful because of the limited amount we got back, and that was a really long time ago.
It was a mailchimp or something, right?
Yeah.
I'm kidding, no, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, Jennifer.
And I want to pipe into, annually, I think it's a very important thing to look at, is our voluntary resignation, so obviously, not the ones that are retirement, or they're termed out because they're, you know, they're having difficulty performing the job, and we have been having fewer voluntary resignations each year, and I take that very seriously, that I'm trying to lower those voluntary, and it's about the culture, it's about many, many other things, and that are on our one-team wheel, but Aram and I have not had the ability to have the conversations to start doing deeper dives on that yet, but I do want to have something a little bit more part of practice as we move forward. Now that we've got our, I think we've done, we've really wanted to concentrate on our hiring, and now we're really working on that retention piece of it, but that retention piece has to be part of the hiring, because you're actually just hiring for, you know, for not, you just keep constantly, it's a circular problem, but I have been monitoring that, I've been reporting in my annual performance evaluation, and we are doing better each year on our voluntary resignations going down.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you, thank you for the help, appreciate it, and I look forward to Aram fixing that problem, I'm just kidding, I'm-- No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the, for the, for the help. Appreciate it. And I look forward to Aram fixing that problem. I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember, come in.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, um, having been here only a little bit over two years, I, I want to say that leadership does matter. And, uh, I want to thank all of the presenters today, uh, for your leadership, um, you know. And what I have seen, at least in my limited two, two years and three months, whatever, uh, is that. We're moving in the right direction in terms of getting things better. I mean, this conversation today to me, uh, means a lot in that we're hearing all of this together. And it's not perfect, you know, but, but I think that there are ways in which we could try to figure out how to get to that better place. Right? Like, how can we, how can we make this the best place to work and appreciate our workers? So, um, I look forward to the continued conversations as well as things that we can do to move forward. On, on all sides. And I think that at the end of the day, we're serving our community and we're doing really good work. So I just want to appreciate everyone today because I think that these are the conversations that we need to have before things. Get to a point where you don't have the conversations and then, you know, things kind of deteriorate. Uh, but I do think leadership matters and so I want to thank you for your leadership today.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let me go back to Councilmember Ortiz.
Just so much to cover. Uh, and, yeah, just a lot of things were said during this, uh, meeting. Real quick, I guess, questions for Jerry. Um, you had talked about, uh, and I know you, you only spoke to it for, uh, a brief moment. But you had talked about individuals, I guess, being like acting, like in the acting role promotion, right? Of individuals who've only been here for, I guess, a shorter period of time. What's the, I mean, what have you seen on the field? Like, have you seen, what's the shortest, I guess, and somebody's been here until they've been placed into a position in which they may or may not have the experience to carry through?
So based on our, our current, essentially our staffing model, the, the way what's in our contract right now and what an agreement was based on history. Is when there were short-term vacancies, they're willing to put people in the higher-class position to captain. And that minimum qualification was four years on the job. Now, that was very infrequent from a historical perspective. What's happened though is because we have too many firefighter EMTs, uh, we have to put those people in a position, which are short-term vacancy spots. Which is a sick vacation and disability. So when there are these massive vacancies, especially in the summertime, because that's when, you know, people take off or happen to be off. That's when we see this gradual increase in usage of higher classing and, and you see a majority of the people who have that are four years on. And so it's actually a, a process of people with four years being put in those positions because they have the lowest seniority or the highest seniority member. Because they have the seniority, doesn't have to work up in that position. That's the way the contract currently reads.
So it's like they drew the, the shortest straw and so they have to do that type of?
Essentially, yes.
And so what, how long is the training required for these positions that they're being pushed?
So if it was department-sponsored essentially, um. This is like, um, Councilmember Dwan said, about three hundred and sixty hours. But the reality is that we have established captains lists right now with people who meet the MQs. We have thirty people right now who sit on the captain's list who meet those minimum qualifications. We can plug them in right now, but the way that we do our staffing and the way we put people in those positions, uh, is not happening correctly. And so essentially we're drawing down from that four-year person, um, into that position. So it, it's, it's part of the contract.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. I, I appreciate that. I guess I have a question for, uh, HR then again. Do we have standards, I guess, in, in the law enforcement, uh, divisions on required training to prevent something like that from happening? Are we waiving those requirements? I'm assuming like if somebody's not a surgeon doctor, we don't get, you know, a foot doctor to just do a surgery, you know? Because there's no, you know, surg- surgeons. So like what, what sort of protections do we have, uh, when it comes to, um, you know, law enforcement? To make sure that we're not putting our staff members in a situation that they may or may not be prepared for?
Thank you. I, I, I want to answer a little bit more broadly. I don't want to, uh, answer on behalf of either the police department or the fire department. Because those are operational consider, considerations and I don't want to overstep.
You can't just make it a policy from the HR level? It has to come directly from the, the chief then?
So if we were to make it as, uh, so here's the consideration. It's actually a little counterintuitive, but, but, but there's a rationale for this. It's not a matter of no qualification. So you still have to have qualified to be a city employee in order to serve in the higher class. And presumably as you're being placed in a position, somebody, uh, in the supervisory ranks trusts you enough that you can handle the role. Where we run into problems and, and, and this is a challenge for people who are seeking to promote. Let's say, um, you're at a non-supervisory role and you want to become a supervisor. If we have ma- minimum qualifications that say you need two experience, two years of experience as a supervisor in order to qualify. Where are you going to get that experience if you're a frontline worker? So the higher class is in a way an opportunity for you to develop some of that experience. So it helps, there's a whole, um, I'm sorry, there's a whole group of employees that, that it's helpful for and it's designed in that way. And it is not giving you rights in the higher class. It is a temporary assignment and you don't get vested, uh, as a permanent employee in the higher class.
You're learning while you're doing the job kind of thing.
That's a, that's a technical term, uh, so I wouldn't use that, but, but the idea is correct. Yes.
So everybody who is in these, I guess, I forgot what the term is, the heightened classification, they want to be. These are people who are seeking a promotion. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, it, it would not be, it would not be forced.
It would not be forced. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I'll look forward to continuing to talk to the department and to the bargaining unit on that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. And I'll be, I'll be very brief. I understand we've, we've had a full agenda and a long evening, but appreciate all the comments. I just wanted to ask a couple of very quick questions. I, my main question was around something Councilmember Ortiz asked the first time around, which was this, uh, turnover rate. And I, I think we would all benefit when the time is appropriate, uh, to better understand kind of a more holistic picture of employee retention and turnover. I think it's a relevant issue. Um, at one end of the spectrum, you can have turnover that is, um, it's very costly and bad for the culture. But as, as Aram was saying, at the other end, um, you, you're never going to be at zero. And there is a, there is a healthy level of turnover for a wide range of reasons. And we want people, um, to compete to get here, to want to be in this job, to be excited to be here. Um, we also have to acknowledge people retire. And so there's going to be some amount of, of natural turnover. I was digging through the Bureau of Labor statistics earlier and found it notable that average jo- job tenure in the U.S. has been dropping, um, over time. And so people are spending less and less time in their job over time and having, uh, multiple careers in their, in the, you know, working in different industries. And, um, changing jobs more frequently. Median, uh, number of, uh, years in the same role is now, um, at three point nine years. And in the public sector, it's actually just over six years, which is higher, but maybe lower than at least I would have expected and maybe some of us would. So I think we would benefit, Aram, from at some point getting a holistic view of what is our average tenure? I suspect San Jose is actually better than the average even for the public sector. What is our turnover rate? And then to the city manager's point, breaking down why. To the extent that it's retirement after a long and happy career here, um, you know, I, I wouldn't necessarily ding the administration for that. And you're right, there are moments where we hired a lot of people and then we hired fewer. And so it will, it will come in waves. Um, I, I also think it's, um, just the reality that people are going to move, uh, jobs and change careers more frequently in this day and age. And that may not be a bad thing, though obviously when we invest a lot in training people, we hope to retain them, right? So, but we're going to have to grapple with the changing work environment and, uh, make sure that we're looking holistically and, and comparing ourselves to the right benchmarks. Um, on the mentoring program, I know there's some dispute over the data here and I just wanted to see if we could clarify it now. Do, do we only have twenty-nine folks in our mentoring programs? How do we quantify that? And is that something we can clarify? I was surprised by how low that number is.
Uh, I'm not sure what the source of, uh, that number was. I hope it wasn't our department. My numbers are considerably higher. Over the last three years that we've been tracking, uh, they've been just above two hundred each year. And then there are, of course, these are the mentees. There are also mentors. It's not always a one-to-one ratio because some mentors, uh, have more than one mentee, but, but, uh, there's a significant number of mentors participating as well.
Okay, that's helpful. And then when we were looking at turnover and vacancy rates last year, and we dove fairly deeply into that. I recall our vacancy rates, um, overall, looking at all of our comparator agencies being, um, good. Not as, not as low as we would want and we're continuing to work to get them down. We've made progress in recent years. But I was surprised by the data we saw this evening about San Francisco. And I'm just curious, are vacancy rates in San Francisco actually substantially lower than in San Jose? And what's, uh, what's the story there?
Uh, there, there is a story there. Uh, so San Francisco's vacancy rate was twelve point one, according to their workforce report in, uh, twenty twenty-three. So I was taken aback by this dashboard as well because it is, it just, it does not compute that a vacancy rate would fall so precipitously in just a year and a half. So, uh, if you look at the actual dashboard, it's accompanied by a number of definitions. So the city has redefined, uh, budgeted FTEs in a very, very unusual and unorthodox way. So they're defining budgeted FTEs as the difference between positions reflected in their salary ordinance. And the budgeted attrition savings established at the departmental level. So if a department is looking at a vacancy as something where they're not going to fill it, either because of recruitment issues or, or budget constraints. And they're going to consider it as a salary savings position, they're not counting it as a vacancy. So it is an artificially reduced number. We do.
We do. Okay. So those numbers are not apples to apples.
They are not.
Okay. That's useful. We should make sure when we're looking at these numbers that we're getting the apples to apples analysis. Since you mentioned vacancy savings, I don't know that it came up, but we've had a lot of conversations in recent years about the rate of vacancies and how much savings are available. Uh, we have made steady progress in both thoughtfully where appropriate, eliminating long vacant roles that were, that were not needed. In order to fund other roles that were more pressing in the council's view. And then we've also improved hiring and brought down vacancy rates. I'm curious what the status, if, if we have, I don't know if we, if this would be a Jim Shannon question, but, um. Given, given that we are in the budget season and we're still facing a modest deficit this year, I'm more worried about next year, to be honest, just to, just, you know, level set with everybody, given the current projections. Could you just give us a sense of, do we have a bunch of vacancy savings at this point that we can deploy? Or have we pretty well constrained those at this point?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mayor Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. Um, so I, you know, I think the, you know, the actual amount of vacancy savings we get every year is, is actually pretty low over a ten-year period. It's like, uh, one point four percent of our personal services budget. Last year it was about a half a percent. We do anticipate this year maybe to have a little bit more than, uh, last year because we do have the hiring freeze with some limited exceptions. So we do expect the, you know, the, the hiring to slow in the second half of the year and some savings to accumulate. And I think as we go through the budget process, we'll be evaluating, you know, to the extent that should be continuing in the following fiscal year. So I think we'll have a little bit here, really again, just to, uh, buffer the shortfall, um, of the lower sales tax revenues that we've been experiencing so far in the year. So that's one of the strategies to make sure we're buffering that as well as to make sure that if we did have a, a tougher budgetary, uh, solutions, we would have spots for, for folks to bump into if it had to come to that. You know, it's looking a little bit better, but, um, so we do expect to see a little bit more probably than we did last year, but not a huge amount.
Okay, but we're, we're at that kind of one percent level.
I don't expect to be higher, much higher than where we've had.
So there's not a lot of wiggle, there's not, I mean, that's on the order.
Yeah, there's not a lot of savings out there just from vacancy savings.
A few million, four or five million dollars, I would assume, something like that.
Yeah, we had about, um, for last year, we had about five million dollars of savings in the general fund from, from personal services budget.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of level set that for everybody since we're in the budget process and Aram was mentioning vacancies.
And Jim, can you just really quickly explain, uh, why, uh, even if our, we've, if we're sitting at, you know, nine and a half percent vacancy rate? Why we only have one or so percent? Could you explain that to everybody to make sure everybody's on the same page about why we don't see those material savings?
I've hit that button too many times. Yeah, so you have very good question. I mean, we do have that vacancy rate, but the, the idea is that really, even though we do have vacant positions, the work still needs to get done. And so there's a variety of ways that departments deploy resources to make sure that the work gets done. Uh, so, uh, especially when we look at public safety departments, so if we have those vacant positions, we are backfilling a lot of that with over, overtime. That occurs in other departments too. Um, there is also use of temporary hires or retired rehiree positions that we, um, are, are using across the organization. Um, in some instances, there's some contractual services, but we're essentially taking the vacancy savings that's accumulated in the personal services budget. And redeploying that for overtime or back, backfilling or higher class pay.
And then we also have a budgeted vacancy factor. Can you speak a little bit about that? So we actually expect to have vacancy savings that we pro- program into each year as part of the budget, as an ongoing, as a source of, of funding. So can you explain that as well?
Sure. Yeah, we have a, a vacancy rate that ranges from about zero to three percent depending on the department. So that's sort of built in. So even though we count the full budgeted, we count the full FTE as part of our, uh, FTE count, on a budgetary basis, we are assuming some level of savings in each department on a zero to three percent. So that savings is actually built into our budget itself. So our budget actually comes down by that, by that, uh, you know, zero to three percent in each departmental budget.
That's good context for us as we head into the, into the rest of the budget process here. Thank you, Jim. And Jennifer, appreciate that. Okay. Well, I think we've exhausted the council's questions for this evening. Once again, I want to thank our, uh, employee organizations for being here and presenting. City staff, thank you very much. We are on to, oh, I'm sorry. We had a motion to accept the staff report. Tony, let's vote. Thank you all very much. Okay.
Motion passed unanimously with Cohen absent.
Okay. We're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, I believe we have a couple of comment cards.
Um, yes, Zee Koon Lee and Churchill.
Okay.
Come on down.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Long meeting today. Um, just got a couple of quick minutes here. I'm the Executive Director for Silicon Valley Climate Action, uh, by help lead a, a group of youth who are empowered to work on climate change. Specifically on education initiatives and then also being actively engaged on, um, climate policies. So here just on a couple of quick things here. Um, you know, it's always hard for our students to be here on a weekday, especially, uh, going into a weeknight here. It's a long meeting for you guys. It's not easy to come speak here. Um, but just want to represent our students. Uh, we have about a hundred active students working on climate change policies. I just want to extend our gratitude for the mayor's office and, uh, council members who have met with our students in the past couple of months. Or are scheduling or responded to us. Um, and we definitely hope that, you know, I think we're still missing three more council members. You know, hoping y'all can respond back to the students and meet with them, um, because it really helps with their civic engagement process. And then also on a really exciting note for us as well too, uh, this year, we're actually co-hosting our annual Youth Climate Summit with California League of Cities. Thirty-six cities, um, from San Francisco all the way down to, uh, South Bay. Um, council members are going to actually come and interact with our students. Uh, we certainly hope, uh, you all can come and join us. It's going to be, uh, August ninth, uh, at the Campbell Heritage Theater. Um, it holds eight hundred people. Um, so it's going to be a great event. Hope you guys can, uh, join us. Um, when we actually have a flyer, um, we'll send it to you all and hopefully you can, uh, join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there, sorry, uh, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My, my name is Elena Churchill. I'm your new face of homelessness. I want to give you a little bit about my background. I spent twenty years in the electronics industry in this area. Moved out of, uh, county to pursue a career as a psychiatric technician. I graduated from Mission College. I was sponsored by Ag News Developmental Center that had closed in two thousand and eight. So I have an extensive background, thirty-five years of extensive history. That is very valuable. So I have an extensive background, 35 years of extensive history that is very valuable. You got a very serious problem with your public service, namely your fire departments and your police departments and the manner in which the public is being treated by them. They're being intimidated, bullied, and harassed at levels that are unseen and unprecedented. It is unacceptable, unacceptable. My issues really pertain to a company called the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, where I spent 15 years working. I'm being retaliated against. I'm being obstructed. My communications are being intercepted and interfered with. In October of 2024, I received criminal threats, criminal threats, from a correctional sergeant, Norman Elcorn. It was reported to the San Jose Police Department, and I'm waiting for ADA to contact me. That was supposed to be on March 14th of 2025. I have yet to hear from anybody, including the mayor, including Pam Foley, including anybody that can help me with my current arrest or my warrant out for my arrest. I'm reaching out to you because it is a serious public safety issue. I have two boys that are involved that I have not seen in three years that I care about deeply, and I want to be reunified with them. Thank you very much.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.